Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order an information session of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, September 18th, 2025 at 6:04 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at Austin ISD's central office to conduct this meeting. The meeting is being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum, Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you for joining us. Next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the Board. This time allows speakers to comment publicly on any topic of their choosing directly to the school board. We have time for up to 60 speakers. And as a reminder, the district also provides time during the regular voting meetings of the Board to hear from the public about agenda items for consideration and vote. This is an opportunity for the Board to take part in listening to our community. While we wish we could respond or provide feedback, Texas law requires us to limit our questions to requests for clarification or follow-up directly to the administration. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public comment portion of our meeting called a dedicated Austin ISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio-record their remarks. Tonight, we have 11 people who signed up to speak in person, and we have 49 who left a recorded message. We will now move to in-person testimony. In order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period at this meeting, each speaker will be allotted one minute. No substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted. Callers who signed up to speak in person are welcome to come to the microphone when their name is called. As you come to the microphone, please press the button to turn it on. There is a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time. When the buzzer sounds, please make a final thought in one sentence. Again, we ask that whether you come to give a complaint or praise that you reference the staff member by position or by abbreviated last name. We ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for all others at all times. Our in-person speakers tonight, the first three, are Lauren Smith, Steve Swanson, and Lindsay O'Madez. And I'm sorry, Lindsay, if I pronounced your last name wrong.
That button? I got it. Okay. Hi, my name is Lauren Smith, and I'm the proud avid site coordinator at Beddychek Middle School, the district's first avid national demonstration school, which will be closed or restarted with new staff next year. I understand the Board and the district are facing tough choices, but it's important for both entities to acknowledge the circumstances that led to those choices. This is a partial list of things that happened leading into my first year that my campus earned an F. One assistant principal and one counselor position were cut. Many teaching positions were cut as we received many new transfer students. The position for our principal job was not posted on time, delaying the hiring process, which left two administrative vacancies not fully filled until October. The outcomes from these choices led to high turnover and a need for rebuilding in the 23-24 school year. Our culture and climate improved dramatically that year. Going into last year, we again made sweeping changes to focus on Domain III, which ended with a 16% increase in student growth. Our principal did that. Our staff did that. Most importantly, our kids did that. But it wasn't enough to clear our accountability rating, and that situation could have been avoided had the district made different choices going into 22-23. Please avoid these choices moving forward. Our students deserve better.
Steve Swanson, good evening. We are here today because we care about our students and the future of AISD, but we must face a hard truth. The Texas Education Agency, TEA, is failing in its duties to support our schools. Instead of empowering communities, it's imposing top-down mandates that ignore our rights, especially our students. Do you know TEA's A-through-F performance rating is F? We must stop school turnaround planning, and TEA must turn itself around. For decades, TEA has neglected its responsibilities to train and support our communities in meaningful, student-centered planning. AISD lawyers honoring their professional creed can help TEA turn around. Let's demand better. Let's demand and help with the turnaround where it is truly needed with TEA. I welcome your questions.
Hi, can you start over with your mic, please? Yeah, thank you so much. We want to be sure we hear you.
I urge you to request an extension for Winn-Montessori closure or consolidation. Under Texas law, the commissioner has discretion to approve turnaround plans where there is credible progress and a strong plan. Winn has both. Winn serves a historically underserved community with the unique model, Montessori and dual language. Closing the school now at such a critical stage of our students' academic journey would be deeply disruptive. If we truly want to break the cycle of underperformance, our kids need stability. The growth already underway is clear grounds to stay the course. We are not saying the school shouldn't be held accountable, but the timeline is rash and extreme. Principal Farr has led remarkable progress, stronger student growth, staff morale, and parent trust. Winn is also highly sought after with a 200-student waitlist and over 40% transfer requests. Families want this school. In a district with shamefully high concentrations of poverty and racial segregation, Winn stands out as a bright spot, a wonderfully diverse school. Winn is moving in the right direction. What we need now is stability and investment, not disruption. Please commit to a three-year runway for Winn.
Thank you. Our next three speakers are Alejandro Maldonado, Helen Miller, and Cheryl Bradley.
Mi nombre es Alejandra, y soy la mamá de Sofia, quien va a la escuela Becker. Para las familias inmigrantes como yo, que hablan español como la mía, Becker no es solo una escuela, es un refugio, un segundo hogar que nos abrió sus puertas cuando más lo necesitábamos. La comunidad Becker es tan unida que se ha convertido en la familia que yo no tengo por ser una inmigrante. Es esa red de apoyo que muchos inmigrantes perdemos al dejar nuestro país. Aquí el bilingüismo, la cultura de nuestros hijos no solo se aceptan sino que se celebran como un tesoro único. Los maestros y los padres somos uno. Cada día nuestros niños aprenden empatía, respeto, al compartir tradiciones y convivir entre culturas. Becker demuestra que la excelencia académica y la inclusión no se contradicen, se nutren de la una a la otra y crean algo extraordinario, algo único. Es tan maravilloso ver cómo los niños de familias que no son hispanas empiezan a hablar español. El idioma en el que yo nací y crecí. Eso es increíble. Cerrar Becker no solo sería cerrar un edificio, sería romper el corazón de una comunidad. Por eso hoy le suplico, protejan a Becker, protejan este modelo de éxito multicultural que es ejemplo para todos. Gracias.
Sorry. Victor O'Dre is interpreter for AISD. Oh, well, okay. No one told me that we needed it, but I'll do it.
It's a broken, more broken English.
That's fine. I can do it. My name is Alejandra. I'm the parent of Sofia, who attends Becker Elementary. For immigrant families and those who speak Spanish, such as mine, Becker is not only a school, it's a refuge, a place for refugees, I'm sorry, a second home for those who opened the doors when we more needed it. The Becker community is so united, it is being converted into a family that I don't have here in Austin. This is a network of support that many immigrants have lost when we've lost, when we've left our country. Here, the bilingualism, the culture of our children is not only accepted, it's celebrated as a valued treasure. Teachers and parents, we're all one. Every day, each day, our children learn to empathize or empathy, and respect, and share traditions and cultures. Becker demonstrates something extraordinary, academic excellence and inclusion. They're not contradictory. It is nurtured once and again, something very extraordinary. It's so marvelous to see children, families, that are non-Hispanic, starting to start to speak Spanish. The language is what I was born with and I lived with, and this is really incredible. Closing Becker will not only close a building, it will close and break a lot of hearts of community. It would be taking from our children a place where they feel secure, valued, and capable of dreaming large or big. It would be losing a community, an environment, a unique environment, that gives wings to prosper. Therefore, I ask you.
I beg you.
I beg you, okay. Please protect Becker. Protect this model of multicultural success that is an example for everyone, for our children, and for the future of our community. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent. We are in a crisis. Our message tonight is simple. We urge the Board to declare a moratorium on all school consolidations and closures to allow all of the district's energy and resources to focus on providing focused assistance and support to all of our schools in academic trouble. The district must right-size its academic programming before it right sizes its facilities. TEA requires investments in teachers, leadership, curriculum, and families, not buildings. Therefore, we urge a moratorium on the consolidation and closures and ask the Board of Trustees to devote all of their attention to the academic improvement needed to elevate our lowest-performing schools and hire a chief of academics with a proven track record of elevating high standards for all students. Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Bradley.
First of all, shame, trustee. Oh, my gosh. Okay, so that means I have a couple of people I need to get a hold of before I leave here. Good evening. AISD, we are in crisis. Our message tonight is simple. We urge the Board to call a moratorium on any school consolidation and closures to allow all of the district's energy and resources to focus on providing focused assistance and support to all of our schools in academic trouble. If the facility changes are not due to go into effect until 26-27 school year, there is time for a postponement to get the academic ship on firm ground. This current Board has a majority of educators. How would you feel if you were at any one of the schools? Whether it's the 12 with the three Fs, or the ones with the two, or the one? And all you are hearing is the distraction of school closure and consolidation. It's not fair to faculty, it's not fair to principals, it's not fair to staff, and it's definitely not fair to students. So you have to take students utmost first before we start doing anything. And District, AISD, have a lot of work and not a lot of time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Quitlaua Guerra Mojaro, Amy Moore, and Amber Welsh.
My name is Quitlaua Guerra. I'm a parent of three Austin ISD students. I was told by the Chief of Communications that the reason there is so little time between the October 3 date of the plan release and the time that the Board is expected to vote is because of a Board policy that says parents must be informed by December of any changes to their child's assignment the next academic year. So I'm asking the Board to suspend or change that policy to give them more time to evaluate this proposal. This proposal will fail, however, if we do not right the ship. There has been a failure of academic and instructional leadership in this district for the past five years, as far as I can tell, and it will continue to fail unless we center the most important things, which is instruction, academics, and learning. The buildings and the facilities and the budget don't teach the kids. And this administration has failed to put forth an academic vision, a baseline plan, and is going to continue to move forward in a consolidation and closure plan without doing so. I urge the Board to hold the Superintendent and his staff accountable for making sure that we are given something to fight for, something to vote for, and that's an academic vision that stops the inequities, stops doing what we've always been doing, which is providing a high-quality education for some and a poor education for others. It's time to lead with academics, not buildings. Please hold the Superintendent and his staff accountable for establishing a vision and a baseline. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees, AISD admin. Thank you for your service to the community. I'm Amy Moore, parent of three Austin ISD grads and a longtime Austin resident. So many things converging into my head this month, so bear with me as I try to get this all out. I'm here to ask that the TAP development process for our next 12 campuses be vastly improved over what we saw happen to Burnett, Dobie, and Webb in the spring. What unfolded then was harmful to communities and cannot happen again. I'm also a resident of Barton Hills. Our principal, teacher, and staff at Barton Hills Elementary were heroes last week. They kept kids safe in the midst of confusion, fear, and broken communication. I believe all AISD campuses would have reacted the same way because that heroism isn't unique to Barton Hills. It's just being a boots-on-the-ground educator. Those school voices need to be heard in all discussions that affect campuses and the people inside them. Whether it's a TAP, safety protocols, testing windows, or school consolidations, please listen to your boots on the ground. Thank you.
Hello, I'm a parent at a campus rated F for the last three years, and I'm asking that you take me seriously and not write me off as someone is like expected pushback to consolidation. We all know that F does not tell the whole story of a campus, but the fact that we have so many multiple-year F campuses tells us we have a serious issue in our system that requires urgent attention. Campuses need help, our campus needs help. We need district staff and Board to prioritize getting this TAP development process right and ensure it is done in partnership with teachers and parents and community members, and that engagement is not a checkbox but truly a partnership of actual collaboration based on improving student outcomes. Plus, we know academics should be driving facilities and not the other way around, and I ask you to act in that way. And I'm asking you to pause the consolidation process for a short period of time and prioritize thoughtful TAP development process without redirecting significant resources that are currently tasked with implementing campus improvement plans. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two additional in-person speakers, Laura Smith and Annie Killam.
Do I press the... Oh, I got it. Okay. Okay. Thank you so much for visiting... Thank you so much for visiting my classroom on the first day of school. I really hope you saw the truth about Webb Middle School. Please also give consideration for acknowledging the recent relocation of students from other locations because they have different languages, yes, and not just Spanish. We need to make sure that they can understand and can talk about the things they need to say. During the closed-door session, the consideration for having other public options like libraries was a regionally perfect option I really would like to hear more of. My students are life skills special ed. I'm so glad you saw my classroom because none of the... Our oven, our kitchen supplies, our bathroom, our machine wash, our clothes washers, everything, they don't work. And we can't, we have no option, no opportunity. If we were in a regular campus and if we had a higher amount of money, then they could give us money to get these things, to teach these kids how to use them, but we just don't have them.
Thank you very much.
I am a proud parent of three at Winn, our district's only public Montessori option. I urge the Board to pause consolidations, enclosures, and focus on support. We request an extended turnaround timeline and an innovation plan that keeps our principal and teachers while providing the extra district support TEA requires. Principal Farr began three years ago with 11 teacher vacancies and no AISD support after the first or second year UA rating. By her leadership, this year we are fully staffed with a 200-student waitlist and a 40% transfer-in ratio. Principal Farr has increased student growth, created a strong campus and community culture, and integrated a thriving Montessori model with a two-way dual-language program in our economically disadvantaged and underserved community. Last year under previous rubrics, we would have received a C, while overall state and district scores have declined. Students need stability, not disruption. Replacing current staff would undo years of progress and further fracture our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you to all of our in-person speakers. We will now play the recorded messages for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
I am Aura Houston, a 1961 graduate of the original LC Anderson High School. It's imperative that the Board has an understanding of the historic nature of Yellow Jacket Stadium and the people who for years did their best to maintain the field because of its importance to the Black community. There was an agreement with the Anderson Alumni Association prior to 2019, which was changed by the Facilities Master Plan Group. There were no alumni or members of East Austin included when their decision was made. Running clubs from across the city have taken over the field, making it difficult for historic neighbors to exercise. Yellow Jacket Field is much smaller than House Park or Nelson Field and should have never been included with them. Our request is for the Board to understand the importance of this issue and protect the resources of a community which has historically been marginalized at times by the district. The field needs to be maintained by the district but not included with the others. Thanks so much for understanding and being responsive to our issues and concern. Have a good night.
This is Roxanne Evans from District 1 to talk about two broken promises. The first goes back to the 1971 closure of the original LC Anderson High School. If the district does anything short of meeting community expectations and honoring voter approval of the 2022 bond for the Yellow Jacket Stadium upgrades, that broken promise will reopen old wounds. Second, the promise and covenant between parents and the district risks being irreparably harmed by rushed decisions related to closures and consolidations. I urge the Board to call a moratorium on consolidations and closures to allow all of the district's energy and resources to focus on providing assistance and support to all of our schools in academic trouble. Thank you.
Hi, this is Barbara Spears Corbett calling regarding the Yellow Jacket Stadium. I'm a community member of District 1. Austin ISD Board of Trustees, the 2022 bond designated funding to support the preservation and enhancement of Yellow Jacket Stadium with initiatives including turf upgrades, improved lighting, additional seating, press box, expansion of the track, and official recognition as a historically significant site. These efforts aim to ensure the stadium continues to serve a broad and diverse community. However, compared to other AISD district stadiums, Yellow Jacket Stadium continues to experience challenges related to insufficient bond funding, disparities in amenities, and unfulfilled commitments. The fulfillment of the community aspirations for the stadium would contribute substantially to addressing past grievances from the 1971 closure and foster renewed collaboration, trust, and constructive engagement as the district considers school consolidation and closures.
Alicia McLean, Becker parent. Dear trustees, thank you for allowing our voices to be heard. I am a parent of two Becker children, and we are considered a heritage family. Just in case you're unfamiliar, these are families that have parents that speak Spanish, but not necessarily their children, or these families lost their Spanish the previous generations due to discrimination and the pressure to assimilate. Heritage families actually make up over 62% of Becker's population. I'm asking you today to please keep Becker open. Instead of dismantling Becker, use it as a model school to mentor other dual-language campuses soon to be erected at schools around Austin, serving our very deserving emerging bilingual students. This will help to ensure that these programs are successful rather than failing due to lack of guidance. Becker has demonstrated strong academic outcomes, has low operational costs, a very strong community of staff and teachers, and dedicated parental involvement. Please consider this option when making your decision.
My name is Wendy Heatherington, and I'm sharing my perspective regarding any potential revisions to the AISD transfer policy as part of the consolidation process. We are the parents of a seventh grader at Small Middle School. Our son Towns was accepted into the Green Tech Academy, Smalls Magnet Program, through the priority transfer process. Towns is thriving, earning straight A's in all accelerated classes, taking high school credit courses, and receiving support from a certified dyslexia therapist, which is not available at our zone school, O'Henry, at the time of his sixth-grade enrollment. For our family, it's critical that students be allowed to complete the highest grade at their current campus. Forcing a mid-program transfer would disrupt academics, relationships, and access to specialized instruction. Looking forward, we also hope Towns' younger sister will have the same chance to pursue magnet or specialized programs in Austin ISD. Stability and opportunity are what help our kids succeed, and we ask that you keep these priorities at the center of any policy changes regarding transfers. Thanks for your time and commitment.
Hi, my name is Abby Milan. I'm a Cherrywood parent. I'm calling to urge you to save Maplewood Elementary and its dual-language program. We specifically bought our home near Maplewood for our two-year-old daughter's future education, and the school's over-enrollment clearly shows its value to our community. Instead of closing successful schools like Maplewood, I believe AISD should invest in them. The dual-language program is especially important to our city, where nearly one-third of residents are Spanish speakers. Our family is already participating in school events like Peace Day. Please support families like ours by preserving this vital neighborhood school and its bilingual education. Thanks so much for considering. Bye.
Hi, my name is Amy Moran. I'm calling as a potential future enrolled, a future enrolled student at Becker, and concerned about the potential of the closing and the dual-language program being removed. We specifically moved to Bolden Creek to enroll our daughter in the dual-language program at Becker. It's a huge asset. We have been learning Spanish with her as she has been taking an immersion pre-K program, and it's been a great benefit to the whole family. There's a huge influx of new young children in the Bolden Creek neighborhood. I think at least 80-plus families with children under the age of four. And so I'm not sure where these kids would be going to school if the program closed. And many mention the dual-language program as the reason why they want to enroll in Becker. If the school removes the dual-language program, I'm not sure that we would enroll in any Austin public school for our child.
Hi, my name is...
And we're going to pause this for a minute. We realize that we have one in-person speaker who signed up to speak, and we don't want to make you wait until we go through all the other ones since you're in person. It's Whitney Hazelmeier. I apologize that you were left off the list, and appreciate the chance to hear you. Thank you.
My name is Whitney. I have a child at Winn, and I'm here to ask that you give Winn-Montessori the time it needs to succeed. This school deserves families who have... This school serves families who have historically been overlooked, and it does so with a model that is very rare in our district, Montessori and dual-language. That combination is working. Winn has a 200-student waitlist and over 400 transfer requests. Families are actively choosing this school. What our children need most is stability. Closing a school mid-turnaround while progress is finally visible doesn't just disrupt learning, more importantly, it breaks trust with families who have committed to this community. Accountability matters, but it should never come at the expense of our kids, who are already showing that they can thrive when given consistency. The choice before you is not between accountability and... The choice before you is not between accountability and progress, it's between disruption and stability. Please choose stability.
Thank you. And now we will resume our recorded comments. Thank you.
This is Judy Sanders, and I represent my two children who attend Wynn Montessori Elementary School. I'm calling in support of the school to modify the turnaround plan recommended by TEA and to not consolidate the school. I say this based on a Texas law that gives the commissioner discretion to approve taps when the district can show credible progress. Wynn is an incredible school and has made extreme progress in the past three years. We have a strong principal who supports the student, the staff, and the community. Each year, the community and student population grows, and our lower levels up through third grade are strong, making a lot of progress, and the students are very well-connected to each other. The school needs more time in order to develop its strong foundations of Montessori and dual language, and I can guarantee that if the school were to close...
This is Carol Frederick. I'm a community member and friend of AISC, and I'm here again asking for Good Friday to be put on the 2026 calendar. Good Friday's been rejected in favor of Caesar Chavez's tour date. The documentation I've shared with you shows that the task force, principals, and board members were misled when they were told the draft calendars mirrored the previous year's calendar. They did not. Every calendar since at least 2010 has had Good Friday as a holiday. You were also misled to believe that there had been an open discussion on the calendar, when in fact Caesar Chavez Day had already been designated as a non-negotiable holiday. To prioritize Caesar Chavez Day over Good Friday under the assumption that it better represents Hispanics is racist and ignores the importance of faith to the Hispanic community. I respectfully ask you to respect all Christians in this district and get Good Friday on the calendar. Thank you.
Gregory Hayes. We are a young dual-language family of five living in the Bolden neighborhood, attending Becker Elementary School. We all know that in these difficult times of change, momentum matters, positivity matters, and working examples to hold its lighthouses for the district matter. Moving the wall-to-wall programs will drive an increased use of the voucher program, private schools, and families choosing neighboring districts for housing and quality schooling. I'm encouraging the district to not throw the proverbial baby out with the bathwater, but rather keep the attractive, unique things that Austin ISD has to offer. Wall-to-wall programs should be exploited by school collaborations, teacher exchanges, to bring new wall-to-wall programs online. Inevitably trying to move a wall-to-wall program will result in portions of the program moving. Partial programs will result in partial restarts, demolishing a lot of the hard work these communities have built over the years. After all, the success of Becker as a wall-to-wall dual-language program is not the success of Austin ISD alone, it's a collaboration success between Austin ISD and the community serving the school. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Grossert. I have a daughter that's a student at Becker Elementary. I just wanted to share that Becker has really given my daughter an environment in which she can thrive, learning from a wide demographic of children, parents, and teachers. I'm a first-time parent, and I was pretty trepidatious about kindergarten. She's been at the same bilingual daycare since she was four months old, and I was looking for something similar, an environment that is nurturing, warm, kind, thoughtful, and educationally rigorous is what she was coming from. She also struggles with change, and I wanted her to be really excited about learning and her own personal development. I've visited seven different campuses in AISC since we are not currently tied to a school that has a bilingual program, and when I left Becker's information night, I just knew this was the place. So while we're still very new to the school, I can wholeheartedly say it's been everything and more than we expected from an elementary experience, and this program and this school just continues to open up so many doors for her future, especially since she'll be fully bilingual.
Hi, this is Stacy Woodburn Henry, and I am a Becker parent. I'm reaching out because my understanding from all the conversations going around Austin right now is that our dual-language program will be dismantled and sold for parts, distributed around the district to hopefully bring up other campuses, and I urge you to please understand how illogical that is. We have an incredibly successful program with dedicated staff that could be used as a training ground for other programs. Breaking us up into pieces doesn't risk anyone else up, it just hurts our children. Please keep us intact. Let us remain a successful program that other teachers can come train in and take back home to other campuses.
Hello, my name is Jody Klopp, and I'm a grandparent with three children who attend Becker Elementary, and the purpose of my call is to urge you to keep Becker open as a dual-language campus. I'm a retired Spanish teacher and have been very impressed with the language proficiency of my grandchildren. Kirk, who was at, is now at Oh Henry, graduated last year, and he attended Becker during kindergarten through fifth grade. His family are not heritage speakers, they speak English at home, and his Spanish proficiency in speaking, listening, writing surpasses the proficiency of my former high school students after three years of Spanish. I am convinced that Becker's bilingual curriculum really works. I'm also impressed by the multicultural environment, which leads to a more successful and stable...
My name is Peter Johnson. I live in the Bolden Creek neighborhood, and I am the father to a four-year-old girl. I'm calling regarding the potential closure of Becker Elementary or the changer to the dual-language program. We moved to Bolden Creek specifically for the dual-language program at Becker Elementary and have been preparing our daughter for that with a dual-language preschool. We're hoping she can go to Becker. If not, we'll need to enroll her into a private school to get that dual-language experience. So calling to ask you to please not close Becker or to change the dual-language program, which we are very excited about. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Wilson, a Becker Elementary parent, and I just wanted to call to express my concern regarding the potential closure of Becker. It is one of AISC's most cost-efficient and academically successful dual-language campuses. In AISC's own rubric, Becker scored a one in cost per student. TEA rates Becker as a B school. Families and caregivers such as myself are engaged in staying in AISC because they believe in the power of Becker's dual-language curriculum. Our teachers chose to work at Becker over other schools commuting from elsewhere in the city and region. Becker is a welcoming and inclusive campus that serves and uplifts Spanish-speaking and heritage bilingual families. Our strong community values are reflected every day in our commitment to joyful, inclusive bilingual education. Becker is a model campus that should be replicated, not closed. Becker's success can benefit the entire district, not just one neighborhood, by offering a successful model for building dual-language programs over many years of efforts. AISC's Board of Trustees should continue to invest in what works and keep Becker open as a dual-language...
This is Tyler Vickers. My daughter is a student at Becker Elementary in kindergarten. Becker has given my daughter an environment in which she can thrive, learning from a wide demographic of children, parents, and teachers. As a first-time parent, I was a little worried about kindergarten, as she's been in a bilingual program since she was four months old, and I was looking for a place that was as nurturing, warm, and thoughtful about her education in Spanish immersion and experience as Becker is. She also really struggles with change, and I want her to be excited about learning and personal development. So I visited seven different campuses in AISC and chose Becker as my number one to transfer into. She is a transfer, by the way. I knew this was the place when I saw it and ranked it with all the other schools, above all the other schools. So while we are still new to the school as a kindergartner, I can say wholeheartedly it's been everything and more that we expected from an elementary experience and Spanish immersion experience, and I hope that we can continue to go in there and open more of these doors for her and toward her future of being fully bilingual. So thanks for listening and have a good...
Hi, my name is Anna Wong. I am a mom in the Bolden neighborhood, Zone 4 Becker Elementary School, and I'm calling to leave a comment in support of keeping Becker open. Becker is a really crucial part of our school, of our neighborhood. We have a super vibrant community of young parents, many of whom have kids at Becker, but then also actually probably an even larger contingency of parents who are looking forward to sending their kids to Becker. It seems like there is quite a large community of kids who are just under the threshold for elementary school but who have moved here in very recent years. A lot of people are very, very interested in the dual-language immersion and have been keen to experience that for ourselves, for our kids, really. We really, really want to strongly encourage you guys to consider keeping the school open. It's a huge asset to the community and just a wonderful experience for the children to be able to experience the wall-to-wall language immersion.
Good morning. My name is William Ward. Last name is spelled W-A-R-D. I'm an LC Anderson High School alumni. I graduated in 1968, and I was a member of the 1968 District 4 basketball championship team coached by the late Lawrence Britton. My call is to respectfully ask the AISC Board to preserve Yellow Jacket Stadium. I'm also asking the Board to designate the facility as the central facility and provide promised and needed upgrades. Yellow Jacket Stadium is one of the oldest African-American track and field stadiums. I understand that there was a 2022 bond passed that would protect the history and the future of the stadium, but the funding wasn't allocated as promised. My wish is that the AISC Board of Trustees would reconsider its commitment and allow funds to be preserved, to preserve the stadium with turf, lighting, and additional seating and bringing the track to eight lanes, just so the other districts benefited from the funding. This would be a commitment to the community for the damage that was done in 1971.
My name is Letitia Anderson, former trustee, calling in to express my deep concern about the way this consolidation process has been handled. What we are witnessing is a clear lack of leadership and accountability from this board. Your silence throughout this process has been striking. You have refused to engage with families, educators, and students who will be most directly impacted. Instead of honest communication, you have chosen secrecy. Instead of transparency, you have chosen silence. This is not how public servants should lead. Our community deserves clear answers. We deserve to see the data, to understand the reasoning, and to have a real seat at the table. By avoiding meaningful engagement, you have allowed confusion and mistrust to grow. Trust is fragile, and you are breaking it. If you cannot lead with integrity, transparency, and respect for this community, then you are failing the very people you were elected to serve. Thank you.
I am a Rich Top parent. Research shows that when schools are consolidated or closed, displaced students do not perform better academically after. In fact, studies have found they can experience up to a 10% drop in achievement. This show true independent of student socioeconomic status. The harm goes beyond academics. A UT-Austin study found that students expressed grief and loss when separated from their school community. Systemic reviews confirm that friendships and trust in teachers are directly tied to well-being and attendance. When those ties are broken, students face higher loneliness, more depression, and up to a 20% to 30% increase in disengagement from school. Attendance decreased for these students. One national study found attendance concerns for displaced students for three years after this closure. Tonight, I am asking the Board to please help us understand a little bit more about the research that you all have done in order to talk about the impact that this will cause our children. In the past months, we have heard about the financial impact, but not about what is happening and what will happen.
Hello, Trustees. This is Kristen Carney, a proud Becker parent of two. Becker is extraordinary because of its excellent dual-language education and community. Every spring, Becker brings the largest group of elementary students to the CAP-10K. Just down the street, the Neighborhood Library welcomes students after school with programs that spark reading and curiosity. Our Green Garden Classroom is another treasure. Parents like me volunteer every other week to teach STEM activities, getting to know the students and other parents. Because of these reasons and the excellent dual-language education, families from all over AISC choose Becker, driving extra every day so our children can grow up bilingual, bilinguistic, and bicultural. Closing or moving Becker would dismantle a thriving community that can be a model for what a successful dual-language program can be, helping all students in AISC. I want to recognize the hard choices that you have to make here. Thank you for your service, and I appreciate you listening.
Hi, my name is Natalie Betts. I'm a parent at Rich Top Elementary. I would like the Board to address three issues related to school consolidation. First, please reconsider the exclusion of portables in the data rubric. Excluding portables completely rather than giving them a weighted score compared to seats in a permanent building really distorts the real picture of over/under enrollment in our schools, and I fear will lead to misinformed decision-making. Please consider them as part of the temporary solution they are intended to be in order to achieve the minimized impact that AISC is aiming for. This is already going to be a difficult transition. Please do not remove or ignore one of the tools in your toolbox. Second, I want to implore you to keep our school community together if changes are made to our or other wall-to-wall dual enrollment, dual-language schools. I completely share AISC's goals to expand these programs to more emergent bilingual students, but you need to do that in real life with the people who make those programs possible rather than just on paper. Finally, please give this process more time. We need at least one more round of feedback before the vote. Thank you.
Alexandra Chavez, parent of Becker Elementary.
Santiago. Immigrant. If I may, in native language, nosotros hablamos español. I pido que salven nuestras escuelas. Por favor, salven nuestro lenguaje de español y Becker. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias.
This is a translation into English of Alexandra Chavez and Santiago's message. Alexandra Chavez, parent of Becker Elementary. My name is Santiago. I am in elementary since first. My family is immigrant. We speak Spanish. I ask you to save our schools. Please, save our dual-language and Becker. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I am a Rich Top parent. Research shows that when schools are consolidated or closed, displaced students do not perform better academically after. In fact, studies have found they can experience up to a 10% drop in achievement. This show true independent of student socioeconomic status. The harm goes beyond academics. A UT-Austin study found that students expressed grief and loss when separated from their school community. Systemic reviews confirm that friendships and trust in teachers are directly tied to well-being and attendance. When those ties are broken, students face higher loneliness, more depression, and up to a 20% to 30% increase in disengagement from school. Attendance decreased for these students. One national study found attendance concerns for displaced students for three years after this closure. Tonight, I am asking the Board to please help us understand a little bit more about the research that you all have done in order to talk about the impact that this will cause our children. In the past months, we have heard about the financial impact, but not about what is happening and what will happen.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Levy. My wife Christina and I have two daughters in Sunset Valley Elementary, third grade and pre-K 4. We're a half Puerto Rican bilingual family and transferred our girls into Sunset Valley so that they would not only be bilingual, but also become part of a Spanish-speaking community outside the home and have Spanish-speaking role models in the workplace. We love Sunset Valley's dual-language program and hope that the Board will be able to preserve it along with all other current wall-to-wall programs and eventually be able to expand them. These programs have been successful for so many years, so rather than dismantling them, the Board should consider creative solutions to build on their success. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steven Chan. I'm a parent of a third grader at Rich Top. I'm just calling to voice my concerns about the closure of the school after this year. I really advise against it. My son loves the school, loves teachers, loves the principal there. We want it to remain open. We don't want him to be displaced into another school and lose all his friendships and all his connection with the community. I love the school. Please do not close it. I advise against it, and I hope we can keep the school open, and we could do anything we can to help that. Please let us know. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Olivia Tannen. I'm a parent of a third grader at Rich Top. Research shows that when schools are consolidated or closed, displaced students do not perform better academically. In fact, they can experience up to a 10% drop in achievement regardless of socioeconomic In fact, they can experience up to a ten percent drop in achievement regardless of socioeconomic status. Attendance also declines. One national study found displaced students miss more school over three years after closure. The harm goes beyond academics. Research shows that when friendships and trust in teachers are broken, students experience more loneliness, depression, and up to a thirty percent rise in disengagement from school. A U T Austin study also found that children express grief and loss years after they experience a school closure. So I am asking the board, what research have you using to use these um guides to use these decisions? What evidence do you have to offset the academic, emotional, and social harm um closures causes children? As a parent, I chose Austin I S D because I believe the district used research to inform its practices, but this, in this process, I've only heard about financial efficiencies. Our community is there transparency, not just about dollar saves, but about the consequences for children's academic and well-being. I do not support the closing or consolidation of Rich Top Elementary. Thank you.
This is Sharon Vane, parent of two A I S D graduates. This consolidation's process cannot just be about building. It has to be about what we are doing academically for the children in them. I know there's work happening on a more detailed academic vision. Please don't come back here on October ninth and say that you're working on it. We need to hear something concrete now, something like by third grade, most of our students will be reading to learn instead of learning to read. Our students begin to learn the rudiments of essay writing in X grade and write five-paragraph essays by Y grade. Students who struggle to reach these goals are identified early and receive age and pedagogically appropriate targeted support in the classroom. Things like that. Synthesize and distill the TEACs, the Long Range Plan, the Equity and Special Education audits. It is something accessible so we know that we are making these hard choices to focus all available funds on providing this North Star at every single neighborhood school. Thank you.
Oh yes, my name is Matthew George. I'm a parent of a third grader at Rich Top, um calling to express my, um, you know, disagreement with the potential decision to consolidate, close um our school. Um, I think it, it's, the, the, the impact would be devastating to my child, my family, um, our community. Um, it would have impact for years. Um, it would, uh, you know, destroy my child's faith in the Austin I S D, um, you know, that he trusts in y'all to do what's best for him and this is not what's best for him. Uh, it's not what was best for his classmates, uh, the community that we've built and established at Rich Top. So I, I beg you to reconsider all options, um, and please do not close our school. Thank you.
Carla Perez, Win Montessori parent. As you consider consolidations, I urge you to request an extension for Win Montessori. Texas law states the commissioner has the discretion to approve turnaround plans when there is credible progress and a strong plan, and Win has both. Win serves a historically underserved community with a unique model, Montessori, and dual language. Closing our school now at such a critical stage of our students' academic journey would be deeply disruptive. Our kids need stability to truly break the cycle of underperformance. The growth already underway is clear and grounds to stay the course. Principal Farr has transformed our school community. The student growth is strong. The staff morale and parent trust is high too. Win is also a highly sought-after, two-hundred-student waitlist and with over four-hundred transfer requests. Families want this school in a district with high concentrations of poverty and racial segregation in elementary schools. Win stands out as a bright spot in an integrated school model that proves what is possible. Win is moving in the right direction.
Hello and good afternoon. My name is Ethan Guyan and I'm one of the head leads at the Becker Green Classroom at Becker Elementary School. I'm calling to ask that we keep Becker Elementary School open. The Becker Green Classroom is a staple in the community. It allows agricultural knowledge to be spread throughout Austin, not just for our parents and for our students, but individuals who want to grow veggies and herbs, to be able to serve community restaurants, and we are teaching at the level of biodynamic and permaculture at which Kingsville A and M is not currently teaching it. We have microbiology technology on site. We have composts and so many other great tools to teach both future generations and future communities how to grow their own food and serve their community with the best interests. This includes our connection with Saint Edwards University, who is testing our compost on a microbiological scale. I beg that y'all keep this open.
Hi, this is Davidina Hossab, calling to express deep concern about the proposal to close or relocate the Spanish immersion program at Becker Elementary. Becker is far more than just a campus. It is a thriving community that's a model of what education in Austin should truly look like. What makes Becker exemplary is not only the academic program, but the culture and the substance created by its families, its educators, its students, and the school is built on inclusive, an inclusive community rooted in things like diversity, language, and belonging. This is not simply a program that can be moved because it's a living ecosystem of relationships, traditions, and shared values that's taken years to cultivate. And Becker as a campus should be celebrated, it's, and not disintegrated. It's a unique brand blend of all these things that really is something that should serve as a model for other schools across the district. Closing Becker would not only disrupt hundreds of families, it would dismantle a community that embodies what A I S D should aspire to achieve, which is strong, connected, and inclusive schools. So we ask A I S D to recognize Becker's values and preserve its campus and lean on it as an example rather than erasing what's been so thoughtfully built.
Hello, my name is Dr. Danielle Duarte and I'm both a parent of two elementary-age children in East Austin Schools and an educator with more than fifteen years of experience. I urge you to call a moratorium on school consolidations and closures so that A I S D can direct its energy towards helping schools most in academic trouble, especially those on the east side that have been historically under-resourced. As you know, there's fifteen A I S D schools that have repeated F scores, yet no real support like staffing, interventions, or coaching have been provided. Schools should not be scrambling to write turnaround plans months after scores have been released. Second, Win Montessori is a model worth protecting. The principal is amazing and has grown Win from under three-hundred students to full enrollment with over two-hundred students on the waitlist. Families like me are drawn to the dual-language Montessori program, which is one of the few integrated models in Austin. There is a smarter path forward. Texas allows the, uh, the commissioner to approve turnaround plans with credible progress and Win qualifies. Please request an extension and provide at least a three-year runway and invest in stability, not disruption.
Uh, good morning. My name is Cheryl Finney and I'm a parent of a third grader at Rich Top. Um, research shows that schools close or consolidate, students don't improve academically. In fact, they often see a ten percent drop in achievement and attendance declines for years after. Uh, the impact isn't just academic. Closing schools breaks friendships and trust with teachers, leading to more loneliness, depression, and up to thirty percent increase in disengagement. A U T study found children still felt grief after a loss, um, years after closures. Um, so tonight, I ask the board, what research are you relying on to justify these closures? What evidence shows the benefits outweigh the harm to children? Um, I chose I S D because I believe decisions here are, were based on research. So far, I have only heard about saving money. Our community deserves transparency, not just about finances, but uh, the real impact on students' learning and well-being. I do not support the store, uh, the school closure or consolidation for Rich Top. We are zoned for that school.
Hi, I'm calling to express my disappointment at the, that you are considering to close Rich Top Elementary. My grandson has been a student there for the past three years and it has been a wonderful experience for him. I've attended school functions to see him and fundraisers, et cetera, and I feel like it is such a wonderful community and a bright spot in Austin and I'm disappointed that that it is one of the schools you are considering closing. Thank you for listening to my thoughts. My name is Jill George. Um, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristen Davis. My daughter is a fourth grader at Jocelyn Elementary School. I'd like to talk very briefly about the consolidation, closure, and attendance boundary plan and proposed changes to the transfer policy that are scheduled to be published on October the third. I would encourage the Board of Trustees to use the entire month of October and the first half of November to fully and actively engage both school communities and district staff in conversations regarding the draft plan and proposed changes to the transfer policy. While I appreciate the hard work and people hours that both district staff and trustees have already put into developing the draft plan and revisions to the transfer policy, I am concerned that there has not been sufficient public comment on the actual draft plan and the actual proposed changes to the transfer policy. Thank you.
Jeanema Aganesala, parent of A I S D student. My husband and I are parents of an emergent bilingual student at Becker Elementary. Becker is one of A I S D's flagship dual-language campuses with a proven cost-effective program that serves Spanish-speaking students, heritage speakers, and families like ours with joyful and inclusive bilingual education. Our story is deeply tied to language and culture. I grew up on the Texas border and my husband is from Puerto Rico, where we mainly speak Spanish at home. For us, raising our daughter where Spanish is celebrated is essential, and Becker has been everything we had hoped for, a place where she can thrive academically, connect to her heritage, and feel embraced by a caring community. We are also transfer family commuting from southwest Austin to downtown, and Becker's location makes it possible for us to stay at A I S D. Importantly, Becker is both academically successful and one of A I S D's most cost-efficient schools. It's a model that should be replicated, not closed. Please keep Becker open as a dual-language campus. Our family and many others depend on it. Thank you.
My name is Erin Mixick and I'm a parent in the I S D, starting in kindergarten. My daughter has been in a Spanish-speaking daycare since she was an infant. When we go to Mexico, she speaks fluent Spanish. I work in community care where all of my patients are Spanish and if, if I don't continue to send her to a Spanish-speaking school, she's going to lose this amazing gift. Dual-language programs are some of the most well-enrolled and cost-effective models in the I S D. Families stay in the I S D because of these models and kids that speak English in the dual-language models help the native spanners, Spanish learners, learn better English. And I just feel like the I S D needs to understand how valuable these programs are and continue to invest in these small schools that are offering such.
This is Allison Hanchin, parent of a, of two students at Win Montessori and A I S D. This call is to request an extension for Win Montessori's turnaround plan under the provision that there is credible progress and a strong plan in place. Win is the only school in the district that is Montessori and being such a unique school creates an exception. This exception should apply to the timeline of its turnaround plan as well. A critical look at the scores will reveal progress at the classroom level and this year will break the cycle of underperformance. Closing the school would not serve the student body or the community on the east side as a whole. Win is a unicorn of the school and under the brief tenure of its current principal, enrollment has improved year over year. It has a forty percent transfer in rate and an extensive waitlist showing its desirability and the progress required for passing is already underway. Closing the school would halt the progress made and will not meet any goals the turnaround plan claims to serve. Win is a beautiful, diverse, successful school and deserves the district's support in maintaining the current forward momentum. Thank you.
Marie, speaking as a parent, I'm a little tired of this district and its problems, so I'll just say it plainly. Everything in this bed order update is going to be a lie. Social education needs considered to protect students. There's no point in debating middle school scorecards. When we start warehousing children at age three, we should be building strong foundations. We need an academic plan and new leadership. Stop closures and consolidations. Cut and close headquarters first. Even Matthias admitted the only savings is in an admin salary. We could close fifty schools and still not match what's wasted by an ever-growing headquarters. Cut it and close it. L S G guardrails and scripted communications insult voters and elected trustees. The board isn't the problem. Teachers aren't the problem. Leadership is. Throw out the handbook you were elected to lead. Finally, on G F, false documentation and dishonesty persist. In Austin I S D, these amendments would shield abuse and neglect, think Ann Richards, abuse of three- and four-year-olds, et cetera, even of our youngest students. It would just shield it from board oversight. Do not approve these amendments. Thank you.
This is Tricia Kim. I'm an A I S D grad and public school advocate. I'm calling to read a letter that was published in The Statesman this week. Texas education law does not set limits on the number of simultaneous T E A imposed campus turnaround plans for a single public school district. A I S D is unlikely to be successful implementing fifteen turnaround plans at once while also conducting a normal school year, continuing to overhaul its special education system, and planning for school consolidations and closures due to budget deficits and declines in student enrollment. After having four superintendents in five years, Austin I S D's current leadership has the skills, experience, motivation, and common vision to move us forward. A T E A takeover of our district's leadership will not be more effective should the burden on the district be too great. State law needs to allow flexibility and an attainable timeline to work with campuses and families, support teachers, learn from progress, and apply knowledge gained to remaining underperforming schools. State law should support districts demonstrating recent successes, not punish or dismantle.
This is Nadia Khan. Advanced support for dual-language programs in fifty-plus schools is inadequate yet crucial to address underperformance and convey lifelong benefits. Ensure schools receive staff and support needed to implement this program effectively. D L programs best entered before first grade lead directly to advanced academic pathways, bilinguine, C C O's, lifelong social health and economic benefits. D L students outperform peers in every category by secondary. D L must be flexible to travel where emergent bilingual students live, expand and contract as populations change, and be free of application barriers if it's to serve those who can benefit from it most. Additionally, students in integrated D L classrooms outperform students in linguistically segregated ones. Integrated D L is the best model at closing the gaps for emergent bilinguals, E C O, D S, African-American students receiving sped services, open doors to integrated learning for emergent bilinguals at more schools, while welcoming historically excluded students to this advanced pathway. Support and expand D L in a way that does not, again, leave out students we are most trying to lift up. Thank you.
My name is Marilyn Pockner. I have three students in A I S D, two currently attend Becker Elementary and one is an alum of Becker. This school, Becker Elementary, has raised my children to be global citizens with empathetic worldview and wall-to-wall bilingual education. The education they have received in the community do not exist independently. They are one and the same, and therefore Becker is a model campus that should be replicated, not closed. Our success at Becker can benefit the entire district as a training model, not just affecting one neighborhood, but by offering a successful model for building dual-language programs that we have developed over many years of effort and dedication. We would like for you to continue to invest in what works, keeping us open in our current location as a dual-language school. We believe that dismantling or transplanting successful valued A I S D programs will not lead to improved enrollment or education outcomes. Thank you.
Hello Superintendent, trustees. My name is Robert Tibby. I've been involved in A I S D for many years. I have been trying to, as well as the community members, have been trying to get into Mendez to help our kids out there, and we have been turned away since the charter school took effect. Uh, I met with the principal and the director on August fifteenth and told them our concerns about the lack of communication, the lack of participation that we have. They promised me that they would get back to me. Uh, I emailed them last week because I haven't heard from them in a month. He finally emailed back and asking what kind of community input or communication would they, would we like to see. Um, yes, they gotta be. I'm appreciative of that, but that just goes to show if A I S D puts the effort behind Mendez, uh, like the charter school does, we, our kids can pass. We just need to have faith. We need to get A I S, uh, Mendez back to A I S D. We do not need charter schools in our school district. Thank you and have a great day.
Hi, I am a parent of a first and third grader um at Breaker Woods Elementary. Um, I wanted to make a statement about the court school consolidation process overall. Um, as parents, we feel that there is no clear data that proves that closing schools like Breaker Woods will in fact save the district's money. Um, the second note I would like to make is really around the fact that we have several failing schools in Austin A I S D and the conversation is focused on school consolidations and saving money, not on how we're going to improve the outcomes of the children across the board. in AISD, and how we are going to avoid a takeover by the state. Our school and parent community is advocating for delaying this process to really understand the data around what we will or will not save by closing schools, and secondarily focusing the board and AISD's energy on improving the outcomes for students across the board in Austin AISD. Thanks for your time.
My name is Jeremy Bergeron. I'm a parent at Brecker Woods. We have four children in Brecker Woods Elementary, two in kindergarten, two in second grade. I'm calling to ask the board to delay the consolidation process. Right now, this process feels rushed, and it doesn't really allow for true community engagement. Closing schools without fully exploring alternatives will not solve AISD's long-term financial or enrollment challenges. It will destabilize neighborhoods like ours and harm families. Trustees have a responsibility to make sustainable, well-informed decisions that require transparency and collaboration with the communities most effective. Please, slow this process down and work directly with us so that we can help identify solutions that actually strengthen the district instead of quick fixes that create more problems. Thank you.
Dear AISD Board members, thank you for taking the time to listen to me. My name is Lawrence Reday. I am a parent of an elementary school child in the AISD school system. I'm calling to make a plea to you to pause the consolidation process that you're undertaking right now for three main reasons. First, there is no data that has been released to parents or the community about how closing any of these schools in the AISD school district would save us any money. Second, there still hasn't been any data from the last round of school closings in 2019 to indicate that such savings would be likely. And third, and potentially most important, there is a lot of evidence that the Texas Education Agency is very much ready and rearing to take over AISD, and I would really urge you to focus on that bigger threat to our intellectual community here in Austin. So please, if you would, concentrate on that threat and pause the consolidation process that you're undertaking right now. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all the hard work that you do for public schools here in Austin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill Woods, and I live in Brecker Woods. Brecker Woods Elementary School is more than just a school for us. It's the cornerstone of our neighborhood, having been created the same year that Brecker Woods was planted in 1939. And while it has served admirably as an excellent elementary school, it has also served as the central meeting place and focus of thousands of neighbors over the years, including being the central meeting place for scouts, our neighborhood association, church, and civic meetings. I urge you, please, to focus on the immediate threat and stop getting distracted with questions about the age of buildings. We need for you to halt the consolidation process and focus on what matters, that is saving our schools from TEA takeover and allowing them to remain the anchor for our neighborhoods. I know this is not a decision you take lightly, and I wish you wisdom in making your decisions. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
My name is Jasmine Wind, and I'm a parent at Wyn Monasori. I urge you to request an extension for Wyn Monasori's turnaround plan. The truth is, closing Wyn right now is premature, and it ignores the real credible progress happening every day. State law gives the commissioner the flexibility to approve turnaround plans when progress is clear, and we know Wyn has met that bar. Wyn is not just another elementary school. It's a one-of-a-kind dual-language monasori program serving a community that needs stability. The east side deserves a program like Wyn, and pulling the rug out from under these students now would be devastating. If we truly want to see our kids succeed, they need continuity, not disruption. The community is begging for this school to stay. We've seen incredible gains in student growth, staff morale, and parent trust. We have a 200-student waitlist. My family included has sat on the waitlist hoping and praying to be admitted. Families want this option for their children. Wyn is a huge bright spot for AISD. Please don't shut down success. Give Wyn the time and stability it has earned. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes public testimony. Thank you very much to all of our speakers and all of our callers for sharing your input with us. At trustees, do we have any questions or clarifications? Trustee Hunter.
My apologies for being late. There were several callers about the Yellow Jack Stadium. Do we have a resolution or a plan for the stadium?
So, Trustee Hunter, so to be clear, from the original agreement that I was a part of many, many years ago, even prior to the 2017 bond program, we've been committed to working with the alumni to not only identify space within Eastside College High School, but also invested in Yellow Jacket Stadium. Because of how the bond in 2022 was communicated, the funds for it were tied to Eastside College High School. We don't have a resolution regarding the track because the track expansion is really, I think, what is kind of the root issue that we're trying to address, to make it a UIL competitive site and truly make it able to support a regional UIL competition. It would need that additional lane, which is not something that was part of the original budget. So what I can tell you right now is we do not have it resolved. I am aware of what the issue is. I don't necessarily, I can't provide an exact timeline. I can tell you that we are working through it. I'm also aware of the overuse of the site and kind of the lack of controls, given how it's been used by folks that maybe don't have the proper approval. We've noticed that. Jeremy Strifler, our real estate director, is involved. Athletics is involved. We've begun to add signage and control that a lot better. So we are aware, I can't tell you that we have a resolution to that specific issue, but I can tell you that we are working on it.
Thank you. I have an additional question. For the process, there has been a call for data, are the data that you're using not available on the site? I thought we set up a site and that all the data going through the consolidation will be available for families.
So for the consolidation process, I believe the data that most folks were referring to are just kind of the progression of the process. So the rubric which has been released, that was a starting point. At that time, and we've committed to do this, is to take a deep dive and really evaluate all the things that were discussed in the last multiple work sessions with the trustees. You know, how can we look at boundary changes across the entire district to ensure alignment and reduce the number of splits between elementary, middle, middle, and high? How can we look at identifying areas of surplus seats? So that is really kind of intentional work. There's lots of iterations. That kind of work isn't posted because it is all draft. It's back and forth with our demographer. But as we have presentations, we post those. As we have milestones that will meet, we'll submit those and post them. But there isn't like the iterative work in between when we're evaluating and working with a demographer. That isn't uploaded, and we don't have a way to distribute that. We wouldn't be able to.
Okay. Okay. The final sort of request I have is, there's a lot of source of data with TEA, like individuals are speaking with TEA, individual groups or whatever. I would request that we request from the commissioner or his people or whatever, what actually can happen in a turnaround, and print that and post it. Because people, I know what you're telling me. I know what people are telling me. I know what I can read on the internet. That information, if the commissioner is going to approve several different plans, then let's have him say, yes, I'm willing to do that. If he's like, no, I've told you what I want you to do, and this is what you need to do it, I would like people to be able to know that.
So, Trustee Hunter, what I can commit, what I can communicate to our trustees and to our community and staff is that we do have regular conversations with the agency. The commissioner isn't, I mean, it's a large agency. We're not directly communicating with him. It's his staff that oversee much of this work. And so as we explore different strategies to be used in each of the turnaround plans, whether it's a three or a two UA, we are getting feedback. What I can commit to doing is providing an update, I would say probably in the next week. We do have a couple milestones set where we kind of are able to talk to the agency. It's part of the process. Any school district in the state of Texas that's going through this process has a meeting with the agency where they share with us their understanding. We share with them where we are and the work that we're doing, and from that, we could probably produce a document. I don't know that I would be able to have the agency sign off on it, but it would at least be our understanding and takeaway. But as far as the strategies that can be approved by the agency, we're happy to upload that and share that with our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? I just have one, which we had some callers ask for a better understanding of the expected savings, and I know that's something we've talked about. Is that possible, certainly at the next time we talk about the consolidations plan, but maybe also posted on the consolidations website, really showing that work and helping people understand, get a realistic understanding of how much and where those savings come from?
Yes, so we've shared presentations in the past, and we can probably, you know, create another piece of collateral that is easier to distribute that shows kind of the types of savings that occur when a consolidation does take place. One of the things that Katrina Montgomery, our CFO, and I are working on is the parallel model, financial model, so that as we explore scenarios and ultimately, you know, come to a plan that is released, we'll be able to show kind of what that actually looks like from both other direct cost reduction as well as a staffing reduction. Our plan is always going to be to transition staff, make sure, because of our size, we're lucky in that we can absorb and really support staff in different ways that smaller school districts can't. And so, yeah, we're happy to provide that. I will tell you that Katrina and I are working on it now, but we can go back and share and maybe promote what we've already shared, which is kind of where the costs come from. The other thing I want to respond to, just because it's kind of tied, is the conversation around the focus on accountability versus budget and the thoughts around slowing down. What I want to be really clear with our community is that the risk regarding our budget is very, very similar to the risk regarding accountability. Not being financially able to make payroll, not being able to meet our obligation is something that I am not willing to do, but the agency has stepped in in many, many instances across the state of Texas because of financial distress. And so, it is not as known. It's not something that we have been notified of by the agency because we've been proactive, we've been doing this work, we've been doing this hard work. But I can tell you that there are many examples, and it is very, very possible for a school district to get in trouble with the agency because they are not managing their financials appropriately. And for us, we've been very intentional about doing the hard work. This is a part of that work. We've made a commitment to the board to not go below 15% unassigned fund balance. We have strategies to get out, and we've communicated for the better part of a year that this is one of those strategies you have to go through. But that risk is very real, and it's just one that I don't want to be maybe said separately than accountability because they are very much aligned. Additionally, not having the resources to deploy to our campuses is going to keep us from being able to actually invest where we need to, to ensure that our students get what they need to be successful. So they are very, very much aligned for both those reasons.
Thank you. Any additional?
I have one question. Several of the callers were talking about schools being on closure lists, and my understanding from a timeline was that a plan would be prepared and then publicly released prior to our next board meeting. So did I miss a list, or are people accessing a list that doesn't exist? I mean, where are these ideas coming from that we're closing particular schools?
So we have not released a list. Our timeline has always been at the board information session in October. When we upload those documents, that'll be the first time we have not only the boundary change, program move, it'll have consolidations, everything. One thing I'll tell you is I'm anticipating, because of the expectation of getting aligned feeder patterns to where over 90% of the boundaries in AISD will be impacted in one way or another. So we have had conversations with the wall-to-wall communities. We value dual language. It's something we're committed to doing. We value the wall-to-wall programs, but we wanted to be honest about kind of where we are in the process and communicate that the emergent bilingual student population, we know where they reside in our attendance boundaries, and we also know that the transfer in rates to these programs is growing and growing and growing. And so to have stable programs for years to come, which is an expectation I understood from the board, we have to have these conversations. But there is no list. We will be producing it and uploading it, but we have been having these conversations so that our community understands where we are in the process.
Right. And just note, I did see on our public documents on the consolidations website, it does include a reference to potentially moving the wall-to-wall dual-language programs. But there are a couple other schools brought up that I don't understand why that community feels that their name is on the list, but it's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or clarifications? All right. Thank you again to all of our speakers, and thank you, trustees. As a reminder to our community, you may share any general comments or questions with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org and with individual trustees at emails on our website. Next up is the president's report. As part of the agreed order with the Texas Education Agency, the agreement requires that the board shall, at the first board-authorized meeting each month, publicly report by reading to the record the percentage of time invested in student outcomes during the prior three-month time period as described by Lone Star Governance and our agreed order, and the total time spent in closed session during the prior month. The June, July, and August three-month average board meeting time spent on Lone Star Governance defined student outcomes and special education monitoring was 66%, which means we've exceeded our target of 50%. For the last month, August 2025, we were at 79%, and the board spent 283 minutes in executive session in August. I also really want to thank all of my colleagues. I know people have been at many, many community meetings, meeting with people about consolidations, going to meetings at campuses around the turnaround plans, really investing time beyond the board meetings, meeting with community. And I know, you know, people sometimes don't know this is an elected volunteer position unpaid, and I know we are spending lots and lots of hours making sure we're hearing people, listening to people, and understanding the situation, and I want to thank you all for what you're doing. Our next item is part of our commitment to discuss student achievement, and we have a presentation on scorecard goal for Algebra GPM 4.1, sixth-grade advanced math. That report will look a little bit different going forward based on feedback that we have gotten from our Lone Star Governance coach. Before we hear our presentation, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete, and we have some specific questions to help us determine if the monitoring report is complete or not. The first question is, does the report clearly show which specific goal and interim goal is being monitored? Does the report show data for the three previous reporting periods, preferably on a line graph? Does the monitoring report clearly show the current reporting period? Does the monitoring report clearly show the target reporting periods, including annual targets and a deadline target at the end of the period? Does the monitoring report clearly show the superintendent's current view via a defined set of indicators of the system performance relative to the goal? We've been talking about that as on track, off track, or developing, I believe. Does the monitoring report clearly show supporting documentation as evidence of the superintendent's understanding of the performance and the status of that goal? And if we're not on target, or the superintendent's understanding of what's happening indicates things are not on track? Does the report clearly describe the systemic root causes, the responses of the administration, including why those responses have been chosen, and any needed next steps? So just as we're looking at a revised report, really just want to go through those things because we have to affirm that they are there. So given all of that, does anyone have evidence that the elements are not present? All right, thank you. So now we will turn the floor over to Superintendent Segura for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, President Boswell. Joining me tonight, we have Dr. Mary Ann Maxwell, Assistant Superintendent of Academics, as well as Danielle Perico, Director of STEM. So as you mentioned in your opening remarks, we do have a new monitoring report for our community and staff following along. Our previous reports were a little lengthier, and after an evaluation of the first year of reporting and based on some feedback we've gotten from our coach, we made some changes. A couple that I'd like to call out is that it's a little... A couple that I'd like to call out is that it's a little shorter in length, about five pages. We did add several graphs to show longitudinally just how we're performing over previous years and as we move forward. And so you'll see that change, but I also will call out one specific change as I walk through the first section of this report. So this is goal progress measure 4.1, which is supporting Goal Four. Goal Four states, "The percent of annual eighth-grade class members identified as economically disadvantaged who successfully completed the Algebra I course by earning course credit and achieving meets grade level or above on the Algebra I EOC will increase from 8% in June of 2024 to 14% by June of 2021." The goal progress measure that was adopted, the sixth-grade accelerated mathematics, GPM 4.1, states, "The percent of sixth-grade students identified as economically disadvantaged who enroll in accelerated mathematics and persist to course completion will increase from 21% in June of 2024 to 39% by June of 2029." As always, we have initiatives within the organization that inform much of our work, and it's important that we communicate kind of how this goal monitoring report is supported by that. And this one is most aligned to the middle-years-forward initiative, including engagement, staffing, funding, scheduling, and support. So the next section is a little bit different, so I want to call our families and staff's eyes to it. It's a section called Evaluation of Progress. Here is a section where the superintendent takes all the available information presented in the report, as well as any additional information that helps determine, I guess helps me make a determination whether we are on track. So I'm pulling not only the actual data, but also looking at historical trends, perhaps looking at different systems that are in place, and coming up with a determination whether we're on track both in short term for the annual goal, but also for the five-year horizon. And if there's a differentiation, we want to make sure that's clear because you can be on track in year one, but honestly be off track in year five. And the inverse could also be true, where you're off track in year one, but it's because you're kind of calibrating, you're going to expect a decline, but you expect to recover in year five. So an acknowledgement of that change, the statement here is that the goal progress monitoring provides evidence, "The district is on track to meet the middle-school Algebra I goal. 24% of sixth-grade students identified as economically disadvantaged completed the introductory accelerated course at 2425, and increased from 21% in 2324. Data meets the current year targets and suggests implementation is in line with structures for both SB 2124 and pathways to Algebra I by eighth grade. Next steps include better building tracking tools to progress monitoring students at the campus and district levels, providing additional district programming for students, and targeting professional development for staff." A couple of other things that I'd want to call out that kind of fed into this statement are just some other operational changes. One is that sixth grade at many of our elementary schools in last year, in 2425, have now moved to the middle school. And so when you think about the different options for course selection, an elementary school is not going to have the same opportunities that a middle school would have. So we know that more students are going to have the ability to participate in these accelerated class courses. Another one of these is that the way that we calculate this, it's every student that enrolls over the course of the year. So the denominator is a very large number and doesn't necessarily change, and we don't change it based on students that may move out of the system, may drop the course before we actually get to snapshot. So if you can imagine that the denominator that we're capturing over the course of the year is actually smaller than what we are reporting, then it gives me just more confidence that we're meeting the target, even if we already are as a percent of. The other thing is, what's really great about the goal progress measures and just the way that we've built up these scorecards is that it's allowing us to really understand how our system is working and making adjustments appropriately. One of those is that there are other accelerated math courses that aren't coded, it's just seventh-grade math, right, when you're a sixth grader. Another example of that that we were talking about last week was IB at Mercusin. There's a math course there that would qualify, but we're not counting it. And so there, as we kind of go through the process and build out the tool and continue to improve, it's given me, I guess, a clear understanding that we are on track for this specific goal progress measure. So not only from a percent perspective, but all those other things also kind of reinforce that, I guess, position that I'm sharing with the trustees. It's a new section, so if I'm fumbling my words, that's why. But with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Maxwell and the team to take us through the rest of the report.
Thank you, Superintendent Segura. Good evening, President Boswell and Board of Trustees. We're pleased to bring you this report this evening that does identify progress for students in the goal progress measure towards algebra. As Superintendent Segura was describing, sixth-grade students that are in the accelerated math class, which is a blend of all of the sixth-grade standards and about half of the seventh-grade standards. And that is a pretty good indicator in connection why we've chosen this as a goal progress measure, because most of our students are in this course. While we have other courses and other ways for accelerated math, this is a pretty good chunk of students. It's the most traditional pathway to taking algebra in eighth grade. And so we're pleased to also report that we did meet the yearly target, as discussed when we're talking about being on track. This is providing us some early evidence of some positive trends, some of the work that we've done around New Mercy, really at the elementary and middle school level, and Senate Bill 2124, which grabbed a larger group of students based on their fifth-grade STAR results to be identified, to have the capacity to be successful in accelerated courses. So that is a big part of why the enrollment is increasing now, and we expect to see continued increased enrollment as STAR scores continue to improve in New Mercy and elementary schools, and as we continue to identify courses that really support students in accelerated math and put in some other supports in place. So some of the things, too, we'll talk about this evening are what we'll do looking ahead, including some MTSS structures in courses, because this evening's discussion really is a look at the end of year, it's a full completion of how students not only did, how much they enrolled, but also how they did in the courses and completed with passing grades, so which is the ultimate goal. We want them to enroll, but we really want them to be able to persist to completion and be successful in this accelerated course so that they're successful in the accelerated math pathway after this. And part of that is making sure that we are providing some MTSS structures in these classrooms if students are struggling in the class, and so we want to make sure we're not missing those students just because they're an advanced course. They may need supports and scaffolds, and also discuss tonight some targeted professional development for teachers that would support them in providing those scaffolds. And then, as Superintendent Segura mentioned, looking forward, creating some additional tools that really help us better track our progress and do the same work moving forward. So overall, this goal, as discussed, is really middle-school algebra. The board goal is on algebra. We know that we want them in that accelerated pathway, that the traditional path where most students will enroll is the eighth-grade algebra accelerated pathway. We know we want students in accelerated math. We know that has a large impact, gives them more opportunities for continued math courses and accelerated courses in high school, and it also makes it much more likely, if they start on this accelerated math pathway and take advanced math, to enroll and persist in post-secondary education and obtain post-secondary degrees. So it's a big difference maker. For this particular GPM, we've narrowed the focus on economically disadvantaged students because we want to make sure that we are providing this opportunity to the historically under-stirved students, and we're increasing that enrollment and persistence to completion and not just an overall number of students with SB 2124. So you can see as we look at the goal progress measure, I'll speak a little bit to this chart and our line graph incorporated into the chart. The light blue on the left-hand side, speaking of course completion, is really how historically we've done with students who have enrolled and persisted to completion of the course. And then on the right side, you can see the yearly targets. So that is where we wanted it to be, 2425, and then continuing on for the next five years for this goal progress measure. You can see above the school year for 2425, the actual number that we met at the end of the year matches the number that we wanted for the target. So the target was 24%, and we did meet that target. What you see in the middle are the numbers for progress monitoring that came earlier this year. So twice last year, we reported these numbers in progress monitoring. We wanted to point out some of the differences that we saw in progress monitoring with the final number. So we discussed some of the ways that we're pulling this data and tracking it, and what we found was, as we looked during the year, so once in November and then again in April, we took a snapshot of the students that were currently enrolled in the course, so active enrollment in the course. And at that time, it was 25% in November, 30% in April that were economically disadvantaged. And then you see that number drop when it comes to the final enrolled in the course and persisted to completion. It may look, at first glance, that that means that many students did not persist to completion. That's not what that number is telling us. What Superintendent Segura was describing earlier is that when we take a snapshot for active enrollment, it's all of the students that are currently enrolled, and when we take the picture at the end of the year, it's any student who was ever enrolled in that classroom, whether they are currently enrolled or not. So if you ever came into the classroom, even if you've left now, you are included in that snapshot, that picture at the end of the year, so the denominator got bigger. So to use just simple numbers on this, if there were 100 students that were enrolled actively in November, and 25 of them were economically disadvantaged, that gave us the 25%. In April, if it was still 100 students, 30% were identified as economically disadvantaged. The way that we pulled the data at the end of the year, that number increased because of the number of students that came in and out. It included mobility rates. And so if that number increased to, say, let's say, 125 for easy numbers, even if the number on top was still 30 students, it decreased to 24%. So that's why it explains some of that difference in those numbers, and also, learning through the process, it would help us actually monitor a little bit better if we're going to change the way that we're looking at that data and pulling that data through the year. So it's a little more correlated to what we would expect to see at the end of year. And there were a small number of those students who also failed the course, and so both of those numbers together really contribute to why that 24% is lower than the 25% and the 30% during progress monitoring. And Ms. Perico will talk a little bit more about that as we talk about how the data was pulled. I just wanted to give that introduction and say, we have a line graph, we have a couple of bar graphs in the middle of the line graph to show that sort of mixed set of data. Ms. Perico?
Thank you. So before we dive into the data, I do want to give just a little overview of our accelerated courses. So as a reminder, sixth-grade accelerated covers all of the sixth-grade standards and then half of the seventh-grade standards. As our students progress into seventh-grade accelerated, then they receive instruction in all of the eighth-grade standards and the remaining seventh-grade standards that were not covered in sixth-grade accelerated. This is important to know because it's really important to understand that that curriculum, sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade math is compacted into two years so that students have the foundational skills that they need to be successful in Algebra I in eighth grade and beyond, because it's not just Algebra I, they need those foundational skills for geometry, Algebra II, and other advanced-level classes. So I just wanted to kind of level set on that before we now look at the data. And the table that we have here represents our sixth-grade students who are identified as economically disadvantaged that persisted to completion and completed sixth-grade accelerated math. I want to draw your attention, and we talked a little bit about this already, but to that yellow column, that really highlights the final data for our 2425 school year. And again, it represents the sixth-grade students identified as economically disadvantaged who completed that sixth-grade accelerated math course. So district-wide, as Dr. Maxwell said, 24% of all sixth-grade students identified as economically disadvantaged did successfully complete that sixth-grade accelerated math course. This was an increase of three percentage points from 2324 to our 2425 school year. You will notice, though, that, again, as Dr. Maxwell was pointing out in our previous graph, we do have some discrepancies between that data that was pulled in November and April, and that really had to do with how progress was measured. So that progress data was measured by enrollment or active enrollment, where the completion data at the end of the year was not just actively enrolled, it was any student enrolled, but also it did include or accounted for students who did not pass the course. So we did have some students that didn't pass, and that course failure rate did impact some of that progress monitoring. While only a small number, we did have an overall 98% passing rate for the course. It is disproportionate, the number of students who failed the course that were economically disadvantaged, so we'll talk a little bit more about what we'll be doing for that. So while we are proud of our overall progress and we've met that target, we do need to address some of the disparities that we are seeing. So we did not meet our target for two of the student groups. So we met our overall target, but for two of our student groups, we did not meet it. However, we did have an increase from prior years in all of our student groups, with the exception of our emergent bilingual and economically disadvantaged student group. We did not meet our target for Hispanic Latinx and economically disadvantaged student group. However, if you're looking at that table, you do see an arrow pointing up. The reason for that is we did make improvement. We did go from 20% to 21%. However, our target for that student group was 23%. So we know we still have some more work to do. We did have one percentage point decline for our emergent bilingual and economically disadvantaged student group. So in looking at our root cause analysis, we did determine the following: that access to accelerated math course was one of the barriers. Prior to Senate Bill 2124, typically, historically, our students that were involved in accelerated math courses were students that performed in the mastery level on fifth-grade STAR. With the implementation of Senate Bill 2124, we now have opened access to students. The Senate bill requires any student that scored in the 60th percentile or higher on the fifth-grade STAR is now automatically enrolled with the option to opt out. This does remove some of that access barrier. But now that we know that we've removed that access barrier, we need to take it one step forward and look at success in the course. What are we doing to ensure that our students are being successful in sixth-grade accelerated, continuing that success in seventh-grade accelerated, which then will continue the success in Algebra I? So we really need to couple that access that we're looking at and couple it with success in the course. So we did also recognize that leads us into that we do have some support gaps in our system. Students really need consistent support before the course, during the course, and even after the course as they're preparing for their next math course. So while, again, we did have an overall passing rate of 98%, students that were identified as economically disadvantaged did fall to passing rate of 94%. So to support students, we will implement tools around data tracking and monitor student groups throughout the year so that we can identify those needs in a timely manner. We want to really make sure that what we do in our grade-level courses, we're doing those for our accelerated courses, too. Our students should have access to Tier Two interventions, scaffolds, reteach, all of the things that we know are best practices in our grade-level math courses. We want to make sure that we are doing that with our accelerated math courses, too, to keep our kids on track so that they can continue to be successful in that pathway. Our data for Hispanic Latinx and economically disadvantaged student groups and emergent bilingual and economically disadvantaged groups tells us we do need to dig deeper, we need to look at what's happening. So those were our two student groups where we need to continue to do some work so we meet those targets the following year. One of the things that we are doing, we're collaborating with our multilingual education team to really focus on content-based language instruction with specific supports around mathematical discourse, and we're doing that through sentence starters and structured conversations in the math classroom. We know that mathematical discourse is really important in the math classroom because it supports critical thinking, conceptual understanding, problem-solving, and then ultimately using that academic language in the classroom, which is really important. Another root cause we recognized was data tracking inconsistencies. Dr. Maxwell talked a little bit about this earlier around the different course codes that were being used. We did recognize that some campuses were using a slight variation in a course code, so we didn't actually pull that into the data. So we have put together structures to really help campuses ensure that they're using course codes that align with our accelerated math course codes in order to help us be more accurate with tracking that data. We did also find that the way we were monitoring progress didn't tell us the whole story. It told us about enrollment, which, again, that's that first piece, making sure that we're opening access for students, but it didn't correlate with success in the class. So we're working really closely to find different ways that we can track success along the way to make sure we're not just meeting enrollment, but we're meeting success or providing success in the classroom. So we're working on that, and we'll continue to work on those structures to really help our campuses monitor that progress along the way. our campuses monitor that progress along the way. Finally, I do want to highlight, we have some campuses that we want to talk about: Merkison, Goriski, and Ann Richards, our three campuses that have shown some success with their monitoring. Merkison and Ann Richards had more than half of their economically disadvantaged students enrolled and completed successfully the sixth grade accelerated math course. Goriski had approximately a third of their economically disadvantaged students enrolled and completed the math course. And some of the they have strong systems in place to really support student success. Some of those systems are, they provided Tier Two interventions in their accelerated math classrooms, they had tutoring, they provided scaffolds for the students, avid strategies, they did writing across the content area, so lots of writing and connecting that again with that mathematical discourse piece. And also, they had student data tracking. So we've talked a lot about how we want to really have data tracking and have campuses focus on that throughout the year with our accelerated students. But when you couple that with students tracking their own data, it provides them ownership of their learning. And putting those together are really the two puzzle pieces that will really show our success in accelerated math classrooms.
So steps to continue this work and continue to improve our outcomes and our enrollment for economically disadvantaged students. As Ms. Perico mentioned, working in some areas with campus-level monitoring to really ensure student success. And so with that, we mean working with teachers. This goes hand-in-hand with professional development teachers and using current classroom data, their informal assessments, formative assessments that they're giving along the way. And the math team has also written curriculum-based assessments for the accelerated courses in addition to all of our on-level sixth, seventh, and eighth grade courses. So we wanted to make sure to include this accelerated group in those curriculum-based assessments. And those are assessments that are a little bit shorter in nature, but they only test exactly what has been taught up until that time. So it gives teachers pretty real-time information in whether or not students have mastered the content that they've just taught. And we're allowed to immediate from that, we can, we're, we have the capability of immediately putting students in monitoring groups to make sure that they're continuing to be successful in the classroom. That combined with those MTSS structures for the support, scaffolds, any interventions those students might need is really what will help us monitor closely, help teachers monitor closely through the year and provide that information to campuses so that they can do that that close monitoring of how students are doing and give real-time interventions. We definitely are providing targeted professional learning for staff regarding that. And also, that's not just teachers, that's administrators. So we've been focusing a lot already this year in all of our campuses, in our middle school campuses, in observation and feedback of classrooms and making sure instruction is really strong, students are doing grade-level activities. And in this case, that would be a combination of sixth and seventh grade standards and and that students are successful in all of that, and administrators have what they need at their fingertips to really give give good quality observation and feedback to teachers. That professional development is part of this work. Making sure that we're offering, too, that that district-wide programming for students, so Ms. Perico talked a little bit about, the supports that we're providing before, during, and after. So during, of course, once students are enrolled in that course and are giving real-time feedback and working with students as they're progressing in the course. Before references the bridge program that we did for the first time last year, 215 students were invited, 55 enrolled and attended that bridge program. And so we're tracking their progress throughout this year to see how they're doing in that course and whether or not that was a successful kickoff for them. Because their their math scores may have identified from fifth grade that they definitely had the capacity for accelerated math, we wanted to make sure that they felt comfortable beginning in the course, that they felt positive and ready to go in accelerated math by the time they enrolled in sixth grade. So that's what some of those before supports are after. And then towards the end of the year, as we're seeing the success of the students, making sure we even have some some other in-between bridge programs for success for students starting in different levels of the path, but making sure at the end of the year, as we're doing right now, looking at any students that were successful, that may have struggled, that didn't pass those courses, having conversations about if they could still be continuing in this accelerated course. And so we have that had that information for teachers right from the beginning. Did a pretty extensive job of looking at that data on our team and providing that to campuses, so they had that information ready to go. And then finally, of course, we've mentioned this, but making sure we're modifying our district tools to really help look at this and support campuses with this information and make sure that it's accurate information so that they have what they need to to support their students. And that will end our presentation for the evening, and we will open it up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all of this. And now we'll open the floor to for our monitoring conversation. Our questions during the meeting will be of strategic nature, meaning we will ask questions to help us understand how the reality of our students is aligning with our vision. And we may have noticed that many of you I know saw the email that Ashley Paz sent to us about monitoring before this meeting as a form of coaching. So ready for first question? Trustee Hunter.
Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned data inconsistencies, and you mentioned using the data to actually track students. My question is, how is the district strengthening data systems to address inconsistencies between enrollment and completion reporting in accelerated math? And how is that information going to be used to identify at-risk students early and deploy timely supports to ensure persistence and success towards Algebra I readiness?
So I think at the beginning that we're looking at is really, and for purposes of this report, we want to make sure that we're pulling data systems consistently so that we're reporting overall and we're making sure from the kind of high-level perspective that we either are on track or we're off track. So that's one. So we would need to align the way that we're pulling progress monitoring data instead of using active enrollment, taking the same, this may be what the way we do it, using all students at any time that have been enrolled in the course so that we have consistency. Also, we've provided in the second document that was attached this evening, which is the campus-level report, a little more information about other students who are enrolled in accelerated courses. And so some of the things I think that we've talked about that we might consider in the district data-level monitoring would be including that information so that we can see overall any student that might be participating in an accelerated math would be included in this, and we can look big picture at whether or not all of our accelerated courses are having the the effect that we think that they are. As far as persisting to completion, that's a data point that you don't get the completion part until the very end of the year. And so what we have done is, one of it is actually have a very, have an improved data system at the that it really has data at our fingertips. It's called Ediforia Aware that allows us to create monitoring groups with all of the formative data that the teachers have inputted and any additional assessments such as curriculum-based assessments that they have taken. Once you create a monitoring group for students, you can keep that same monitoring group and continue to run any sort of data through that group and look at it through the year. So that's more that real-time data system that we have in place that's at campuses' fingertips and at teachers' fingertips to help make decisions for their students and know when they need interventions.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate the explanation. My basic question is, have we fixed the problem so that moving forward? I heard you say, "We will do it." So have we done it so that the next data that we get will be true? Or more true, I should say?
I could say that if we continue in on reporting this and continuing to report for report on this goal and the goal progress measure, we would definitely come up by the time we report again, have it pulled so that it is consistent.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if that helps, but yeah.
Yeah, and I think, Trustee Hunter, the only thing I would add is, Ediforia and kind of the expansion of it was a recent change that we made within our own school district to address this part of this issue. It was just implemented this past summer, is the first year that we're actually rolling it out. So that's really an acknowledgement of kind of a change in what we saw in previous years. And so that's one change that we can kind of point back to just, you know, several months ago. And then the the way that we pulled the data, that's just a reflection of us of going through one year of the reporting cycle. So I do expect the way that we pull will be a better reflection. And so I think both those things will will help improve how we show the data.
Thank you.
Thank you. Secretary Gonzalez?
Hi, thank you. So you mentioned supports before in your main port, your main report in the root cause analysis, you mentioned that supports before, during, and after are insufficient. Can you talk about some of the systemic redesign that is going to guarantee particularly students that are at campuses that have received a D or an F, how they're going to receive non-negotiable supports rather than relying on campus-by-campus capacity or
So I think one of the things that we did was really implementing that math amp-up bridge program that was for rising sixth graders, and it was a pilot year. So we did invite students from our highest-need campuses at the middle school, like rising sixth graders. We did only have 55 attend, but I, as a pilot, we were, we were trying it out, seeing how it worked, and we're looking forward to really monitoring those students this year to see if they were successful and then hoping to expand that. So while right now it's not mandatory that they attend, that is one really important piece before, because sixth grade accelerated math is really fast-paced, and we really want, there's so many things happening when kids start sixth grade. So really encouraging and having more outreach, I think, will really help have our attendance higher and see how that will really impact students and set them up for success starting that sixth grade year in accelerated math. I think, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing what the data shows this year and then hope that we can get more students attend and expand it for next year.
Yeah, good evening. In addition to that, we have principal training for all principals. Danielle was just involved in that training yesterday at our first level principals meeting this school year. We're all middle school principals, met at Gritsky Middle School. We looked deeply at the data, did data dives, and then we talked specifically about not just Trustee Hunter persisting to completion, but going beyond completion, like, were they actually successful in the course? Excuse me. So we noticed that it's not just having a high enrollment of students that represent certain student groups in the course, but what were their actual, like, scores, student achievement level, that data? And then at what point did we know that students were not successful? So we've been having deep coaching with executive directors, looking at data specifically at our DNF campuses, but at all of our campuses at the middle school level, and having those hard conversations with principals and admin teams. So we noticed that about 30% of students that were enrolled in algebra were not successful at the middle school level at this campus. At what point did we know there was a problem? And then what supports were provided to persist along the way? So it's not enough to have students enrolled, but we want them to be successful and to achieve in those courses. One of those things is data protocols that we're putting across all campuses that are required. Now, there are campuses that already have their own protocol, some campuses, but we are identifying, like, key essential factors and elements that must be included in whatever protocol we use. So just a baseline factor, we've heard the community, you know, asks Law &amp; Clear for some academic baseline points, and these are baseline points we're putting into place when it comes to progress monitoring, data protocols, looking at students that are in courses, and ensuring that we have pathways of completion and success for them, ensuring that parents and families are informed about that progress, that students know how to data-track and monitor that individual progress as well. And then lastly, learning labs. So Learning Lab is new for our secondary schools. We have about seven schools outside of our Office of School Improvement schools that are included in these learning labs. And these may be schools in the past that may not have received that type of deep-level support. We're talking about Keylink, a part of our learning lab, Libbey Middle School, as well as Beddicke, Dobie, Burnett, Martin, Paretta, Covington, a wide array of schools that are immersed in this deep learning. We met at Marshall Middle School, which is our lighthouse school, for our first meeting last week. And principals were able to dive deep into that and do instructional rounds with coaches around what it looks like for effective instruction, and then how to coach administrators, principals, and teachers up to that level to ensure that we're all using high-quality instruction materials, that we're progress monitoring, that we are committed to data protocols that are standardized across campuses, and that we are constantly talking about supports, progress monitoring, and being able to scaffold students to that intended level of mastery. Yes. We have a huge teacher training next week, next Monday and Tuesday at Austin High School. We have about 100 teachers, about 200 total, maybe, but in math and reading that are coming for all of our learning lab campuses. Every math or reading teacher is required to attend, as well as our instructional coaches, assistant principals, principals, and our executive leadership team and academics team. So we'll be engaged in that learning on Monday and Tuesday so that we can move as a system across the bandwidth.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, I have another one.
Oh, yeah, go for it.
Unless you want me to stop.
I do not want you to stop.
I love our summer bridge programs, and when done well, they, they, they're just great sort of positive accelerants. So I hadn't picked up on yet, and so with my apologies, I didn't get that we were kind of piloted. I was wondering about attendance versus capacity, and I was wondering about participation rates of, say, African-American students. So first, like, how are we going to, where are we with that? And it seems like we're under-enrolled with some of our groups that we know we're underserving. So how are we going to kind of take a look at that and get up to a better participation rate among targeted groups?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think it's really about, one, communication. So communicating earlier with our campuses, making sure we have all the support and make sure we have all, parents have information. We did a parent meeting last year, but again, it was, we brought this pilot together really quickly because we saw the importance of it, but it was, timing may not have been on our side. But continuing to really look into that data, making sure now that we have Ediforia is really going to help us really look at that data, target students. Our goal is for it to be open to all students, but really targeting where is the biggest need right now and making sure that we are getting, getting out there, inviting, sending, you know, counselors, everyone is supporting to make sure that parents have the information. We did send printed handmade invitations to go home to the families because we know sometimes that, you know, different ways. We had multiple ways of getting around. We had campuses reach out to the families as well as providing that. But I think really looking at that data, targeting, making sure, we just continue to make phone calls and really try to encourage those kids. We had a lot of great feedback from those that did attend, so even getting some student feedback and sharing that to really hype up the the program. But ultimately, our goal would be having it at every campus. Might not be next year, but that would be our goal, is every campus to host their own, to bring in their own students to their school, to already start building those relationships, and then building on the the necessary skills to be successful.
Awesome, and thank you for that. And so I'm hearing about sort of communication, and I'm hearing about targeted communication, and I'm hearing about direct outreach, which are all, all great. And then, I guess, staying on this before I yield back, one of the advantages of something being smaller the first time around is that there's a greater pointed opportunity, you know, for learnings. And also, now we have a little bit of an on-ramp, or we have a ramp, because we're looking at next summer. So do we have a sense of how to make sense of the effectiveness side? Like, you know, are we, I guess, what are our plans to say, well, here are the kids that participated from different demographic groups, here's what happened the next year, and then using that to refine and improve the rollout for next summer? So what are we doing along those lines?
Thank you for that. So with our curriculum-based assessment data this year, that's going to really help us because now we can pull that in Ediforia, we can look at the students that attended and look at the things. So we focused a lot on proportional reasoning and fluency in that camp, so we can look at how did students do on those skills on their curriculum-based assessments throughout the year, so we don't have to wait till STAR data. Last year, we just looked at STAR data to see who we could identify to invite to the camp, and now we can, we'll have data from, elementarys are doing curriculum-based assessments, too, so we can look at fifth grade data and really target and look at where the biggest need is and look at trends. Maybe, it wasn't proportional reasoning, that's what we chose to do for this summer, but now we can look at all of that data and really decide what is the biggest need for that summer camp and make sure that we're we're targeting that.
Nice. So not only the data from this, from this year's, that camp attendees, we'll say, is informing next year, but what's actually happening in our elementary schools and what we're learning about where they are and their needs is going to inform the the lesson plans and the curriculum for the summer camp. That's really cool. Okay, thank you, and thank you, Trustee Gonzalez.
Okay. So in looking at the append So in looking at the appendix that you mentioned on the table that details the campus completion, there's quite a range for economically disadvantaged students on some campuses. It's excluding the ones that no longer have sixth grade this year. There are some that are lower than 10%, while others are above 60. How are you going to ensure that the lowest performing campuses are going to catch up rapidly rather than allowing this gap between campuses to persist?
So part of that is that active monitoring of data as it's coming in, in real time this year to identify those gaps earlier. And I think monitoring this and looking at having one-year completion data is super helpful with that to see where we ended that, the year, and looking specifically at economically disadvantaged. Part of it, though, is really using information from our outliers. So one of the things that really Dr. Wilson and Dr. Emerson are so intent on is having principals very intentionally share with each other the strategies that they are using that are successful, very open with data, very ready to talk about these things that are working well and, and pulling principals for those, to have principals talk about those processes that are happening on those campuses and then giving them some time to really internalize that work and figure out on their campuses how they might be able to replicate some of those processes. So it's really, I think it's just a little bit of both, watching, knowing where we are now from last year's data and then looking at current, but for sure giving principals the opportunity to share those strategies that they know are working. Because when we see like the kind of outlier, outlier data that we talked about where if you have, you know, 33% of students identified, but 67% students overall are the makeup of the enrollment, then you've done all of those strategies to really identify students and make sure that they're successful and that they completed the course.
All right, thank you. Additional questions?
All my questions have been answered by the report, thank you.
Thank you.
My questions have already been asked and answered.
Okay, thank you.
My questions have been answered, thank you.
Thank you. I have a few questions. One is looking at, you know, we're seeing improvement in all groups you pointed out in the report, except our emergent bilingual students with economic disadvantage. And I know we're seeing large differences, kind of large growth in some and small growth in others in addition to that one group that didn't grow. Do we have an understanding of why we're seeing the big differences among different groups?
Yes, we definitely talked about that in the report and always want to make sure that we're noticing where those gaps exist in student populations. It's a little, with the increased enrollment this year with SB 2124 and some of the new things that we've put in place, I think it would be prudent of our team, we've talked about this, to really kind of watch what kinds of interventions have been successful this year to help that kind of root cause analysis a little, a little more long-term on what might be happening with those populations. Again, we mentioned this too, some of the complications of when you're looking at a smaller number within Hispanic population, we've definitely seen some shifts in that population and just our overall enrollment and saw those shifts happen during the year last year. And so that may be affecting this, and so we might need just a little bit more long-term data to make those determinations.
Thank you, and yeah, I appreciate clarifying kind of what that shifting trend was, that it was just losing students during the year. So thank you for that. That's very helpful. And I think when we look at that enrollment versus completion data, and I appreciate the explanation of kind of what we're seeing and how that might come into better focus as we get a better understanding of this, so I'll be interested to see that. And thank you for the bars that, on the line that I think it explains what we're looking at, so thank you for that. What do we need to more fully understand within this data, kind of looking ahead, kind of who dropped the course, who failed the course versus who left the campus? Kind of what, what needs, what do we need to understand that better?
I'll start this with just an intro and hand it over to Ms. Perico too, because I know she's been working very closely with one of our coordinators on this specific data. We looked very closely at the students that did not pass the course so that we could understand not only what they, how they had been identified, how they and why they had enrolled in the course, any factors that, such as how they had previously performed on STAR, any assessment data that we found and various factors like that. Ms. Perico could probably name a few more to really dig into that, that some of that initial year data that we wanted to look at and be sure to share with teachers for the kids moving on.
Yeah, I'll just add, we dug really deep actually into that data and we looked at STAR scores from a couple of years ago to look for trends and patterns. And we noticed like some of our students, they mastered and then we saw a decline, like maybe they went down to meets and then approaches or, and then we had some kids that came in on meets and then they got masters. So looking really closely, what are some trends that are happening and then what, what are we doing on campuses to support? We did also look at students that actually were in the course that were in it due to auto enrollment from Senate Bill, and some of the kids that did not pass the course were not auto enrolled. So these, some of these kids actually did not meet on fifth grade STAR, but because we do have open enrollment, parents can decide, I still want, I want to challenge my student, I want to try to have them in there. And that's really where that progress monitoring is so important because we need to be monitoring them along the way, providing supports, and then having real conversations. Are these supports working? If not, what is the best choice for that student academically? But it was really interesting to see what students were auto enrolled, what were not. So we want to continue to look at that data, but we've been really digging into looking at historical data and now super excited that we're going to have the curriculum-based assessment so that we can really look throughout the year, what are those trends that we're seeing, which will also impact our curriculum too, and it'll impact any changes that we need to make to support and in our professional learning for teachers.
Thank you for that. Any further questions? All right, thank you so much for this. Really appreciate the information and look forward to learning more. So trustees, thank you for the conversation. Now we vote on whether or not we accept this monitoring report. And as a point of clarity, we're voting to accept this report as a formal acknowledgement that we had a satisfactory conversation with the superintendent and have a deeper understanding about how the current reality for students lines up with our vision for them. And I will entertain a motion to accept the report.
I move to accept the report.
Thank you, Secretary Gonzalez. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustees. Any discussion? Having a motion by Secretary Gonzalez and a second by Trustee Quintana to accept the monitoring report, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes on the dais, thank you. And thank you all for taking part in this process. Next up is our scorecard goal three, college career military readiness. Our goal project measure three, which is industry-based certification-aligned courses. We have a new team coming up, and this is also related to our commitment to student achievement. So before we hear our presentation, we need to confirm all the things we read during our last presentation that our report is complete and this report also, all of our reports going forward will look different. So considering the questions we, that have been shared, does anyone have any evidence that the elements of an effective report are not present? All right, thank you. So now we will turn the floor over to Superintendent Segura again.
Thank you, President Boswell. Tonight, I have joining me Dr. Mary Ann Maxwell, Assistant Superintendent of Academics, Ashley Binnaker, Executive Director of Secondary Outcomes, and Dr. Wilson, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary School Leadership. So as we kind of move into this report, I want to state the goal, Goal Three, CCMR. And again, just reminding everybody, this is a new reporting structure. Goal Three states the percent of annual graduates who demonstrate college career and military readiness, CCMR, by meeting Texas Success Initiative, TSI criteria, and at least, and at least of one of the following items, earning an associate's degree concurrent with graduation, enrolling at a post-secondary institution following graduation, earning an industry-based certification, or earning a Level One or Level Two certificate will increase from 43.7% for the class of 2022, to 54.6% in the class of 2027. The goal progress measure identified in our scorecard, GPM 3.3, IBC-aligned courses, states that the percent of 11th and 12th grade students who enroll in courses aligned with an industry-based certification or an IBC and persist to successfully course, to successful course completion will increase from 46.8% in June 2024 to 55% by June of 2029. The initiative that this most closely aligns to is the one that we've identified and named post-secondary success. Elements within it include college readiness, enrollment, CTE, and graduation. The new section, as stated just, you know, about an hour ago, is the superintendent's evaluation of progress. And again, there are many different things that influence the determination, not just the data that is pulled by the team, not just the conversations, but also analyzing systems we have in place, looking at historical trends and our overall trajectory. So the statement, or the goal progress measure monitoring provides evidence that the district is on track to meet CCMR goal targets 59.8% of all 11th and 12th grade students successfully completing, completed one or more courses aligned with an IBC, 20, IBC. 2024, 25 data exceeds the current year 47.2% and also five-year targets of 55%. Data suggests concurrent implementation of CTE programs of studies, of study are successful. Next steps include connecting the IBC alignment to individual graduation planning, IBC completion data digs, and building out with industry partners. So yes, this is one of the goal progress measure that exceeds not only the short-term goal, but already the five-year target. Some of the things that I wanted to kind of share that can help me determine that we were on track, which is just not the numbers, but also some of the work that we've done over the last two years. One of the ones that might, that our trustees might recall is all the work around the universal choice sheet. We spent a lot of time, you know, making sure that we had introduced that, but one of the things that was different this time around was the fact that CTE team actually kind of placed the courses on the universal course selection sheet opposed to the campuses identifying themselves. So that ensured that the, that our students that were potentially selecting a course knew that it existed, which is, which was something that we had not done previously. But again, you had to have the universal course sheet first, then you had to have the team in place, then you had to have the authority to do so. A lot of alignment in counseling and training, you know, the work that we've done over the last year and a half in restructuring. Additionally, we have really been focusing on making sure there's an awareness before a drop occurs. Our students, you know, are making lots of different decisions in their academic journey, and it's always important for us to, to ensure that they're making the decision with all the information available. And so last year, when we came to you, we talked about the fact that we have some controls in place now. It is not, it, just dropping a course is not something that is able to be done without the counselor signing off, notification to family, and that has allowed us to have that critical conversation before a drop is fully executed. We've found in the past that sometimes that was occurring and a pathway that a student was on is all of a sudden eliminated, and that's certainly not something we want to do as an organization. The last thing I'll say is about a year and a half ago, we also made a commitment to invest in a Salesforce product that assisted with not only CCMR, but also CTE, TSI. And a lot of that work has, has been done. Phase two, which is really focused on the CTE work, is underway. So with all of that and the fact that we've exceeded our goals, both short-term and long-term, can give me the confidence that we are truly on track. So wanted to kind of make that statement before we hand it over to the team to take us to the rest of the presentation. Off to you, Ashley, or Dr. Maxwell.
Thank you, Superintendent Segura. I'm pleased again to bring you a report tonight that we are noticing definitely some great trends in this area of our 11th and 12th graders. They've made great progress and some things that the team has put into place have been very effective. And some of them seem like very simple things, but once you get everyone working towards the same simple things in our align, you know, you've got some pathways for students and some courses that really work out for them that result in them being able to, if they choose this path, have industry-based certifications. So some of the things we'll talk about tonight are those, those things that have been done and also some, some next steps to continue that work, to make sure that we're continuing with IBC alignment in everything that we're offering in graduation plans and really talk a little bit more about how we're using the data to help campus, campus administrators and groups of people working on campuses that we make visits to, of using our CCMR dashboard with that data as a springboard and then really monitoring CCMR plans for students. So this is based on the overall goal that is college career and military readiness, multiple ways that students can achieve this, this goal and this work to be college career or military ready. This one that we're talking tonight, about tonight, of course, is any industry-based certifications. There are some other ways that we would continue to measure this throughout the year for students. And of course, students can hit CCMR readiness in multiple ways. Another way would be showing that they're college-ready through the Texas Success Initiative with the TSI 2.0 test in math or language arts. Another way, of course, is military readiness, some other things that we talk about in the year in progress, as a progress measure toward this goal. Specifically here, this goal progress measure does look at our 11th grade and 12th grade students completing an IBC-aligned course. The key component for this implementation is that the state-defined programs of study a few years ago, they established that in 2019 with expected implementation starting in 2021. So Austin ISD's response to that was to align our course sequences with TEA's series of learning so that we knew students, when they started those course sequences, they would be set up for success and in the right path. And we'll describe some of that work, not only with students and families, but with counselors at our schools to do that. You can see from our, hang on, scroll, align me to scroll. From our, from our line graph on this, that on the left side, we have past years of course completion, all the way up to this current year of 24, 25, at 59.8%. Next to that, in the darker blue, you have our yearly target. So you can see our yearly target this year underneath that was 47.2. So we definitely have met that target, and in fact, we've met the targets for the next five years for this GPM. So incredible work been, been done by the team. So it's, it's exciting news and it's definitely exciting news for our students and being able to reach this kind of readiness should they choose to get, to be, find this readiness through industry-based certifications. Ms. Binnaker?
Well, Superintendent Segura and Dr. Maxwell took all the fun things that I was going to tell you. So yeah, programs of study, when TEA instituted programs of study, essentially a program of study is a series of four courses, typically four courses, if a student could do it in three, but they're going to finish those courses, it's going to be three or more courses for four or more credits. Now, you know that this aligns also with our accountability measures. So now, moving forward, we need those students to be completers, which they would have four credits, and then also finish that IBC. So when TEA instituted that years ago, we've, you know, we've seen the writing on the wall, we've known that it's coming. So in response to that, Austin ISD needed to make a more strategic and systemic approach to where, how, when we offer CTE courses for students. Not only that, but we break those courses down into four levels. So TEA breaks it down in levels one to four, of course, level three and four are those higher levels. You're going to see the, the content, dig more into the career aspects of it, the rigor is going to be higher for those courses. So when we're going to walk through this data, I want you to think about, not only are those students, we're talking about those level three and four courses, but we're talking about the juniors and seniors from last school year, so school year 24, 25. And not only did they enroll in those courses, but they were successful in completing those courses. So I am proud to announce that our Austin ISD students have not only surpassed this year's target, but our five-year target quite well, in fact. So our target this year was 47.2%, and we surpassed that with 59.8%. But also, not only did we do that as a whole of Austin ISD, our, all of our students, student groups not only showed growth, but they met our target for this year, which is really outstanding. So our, for example, our Asian student group has surpassed that with 13.9 percentage points. And our African-American and our Hispanic student groups surpassed with 10.9 percentage points and 10.3 percentage points. While that is outstanding, we do recognize too, that some of our student groups, while they surpassed this year's targets, they haven't met that five-year target like some have. So an example of that- some have. So an example of that is our African-American students and our students receiving special education. So they're meeting our current targets, but we want to see the same growth that we see for others as well. So we're going to do more focused work with that student group across the district. I think it's important to note, too, that our IBC data shows that our students are making strong connections between not only the courses, but committing to that IBC. So of the 11th and 12th grade students who were enrolled in an IBC-aligned course last year, those level three and four courses, 38% of them earned the IBC that corresponds with those courses, which means that our 11th and 12th graders last year, over a fifth of them, at 23% earned an IBC, which is outstanding. It's shown a lot of growth through the last five years in CTE alone. So how did we get to this level of growth? TEA instituting those programs of study required us to make that systemic approach, and we've had to cultivate a culture of not only excitement around IBCs and CTE, but also an expectation of these students are going to take the IBCs. And that's not just for the students, that's for the administrators and the teachers, because it has been a culture shift and an expectation shift over the last few years, not just in Austin ISD, that's across the state. Superintendent Segura mentioned the universal course sheets, and I want to say that there's a clear impact in the data when universal course sheets went into effect, starting the 23-24 school year, and that was a direct ask from the trustees. We have seen a major shift in success in that factor. So by creating this standardized document that is district-wide, we've given parents and their families and students the ability to see a clear guidance on what that course sequence should look like, and also it helps us to avoid inadvertently limiting the access for any students to go into those courses. Like you also said, Mr. Segura, that we, CTE established a drop form so that anytime a student considers dropping out of a program of study, because if they're going to drop that course, it likely means that they would also be in the program. We want to make sure that the counselor has the opportunity to have that conversation with the student. It may not only be the counselor, maybe the teacher gets notified too to say, hey, like, what's going on? And so it's a more well-rounded approach to working with that student. I think all in all, you know, we talk a lot about messaging and communication and how important it is. And I think that that's where universal course sheets really came from, the heart of it, that we want to communicate with our families. And that is the good work that has come from that. And so now our families are consistently getting that messaging across the district with the work of the CTE team, who's worked really hard with campus administration and CTE at the campuses to align those programs to fit the campus and fit the student needs. Of course, I know that we've seen student success across the district, but it really could not be done without the hard work that's happening at our campuses as well. So our campuses are doing outstanding work, not only in administrative monitoring, but working with CTE. Our CTE programs and some of our PTEC programs are really strong because of that work. And I'd like to highlight a few outliers that we see across the district. The first of those is Akins High School. So Akins Early College High School, that one, you know, they just have such a strong academy model that they can support the extensive CTE course catalog that they have on that campus. They have a lot of programs, but they've got well wraparound service or great wraparound services for those students because of the academy model that they support students with. Also, Bowie High School, Bowie High School has a strong foundation of course sequencing. They're doing intentional work with four-year planning. So those families and those students, they're making those decisions as they go through, and the counselors are working hard to focus on the four-year planning. Also, Crockett Early College High School, these students have a fostering a culture of career readiness through cross-curricular work, mostly supported by their avid strategies. Those students are making real-world connections between their academic learning to the career opportunities ahead of them. And LBJ Early College High School, LBJ is making significant gains by strategically integrating the early college high school programs with CTE programs. And they've had results with impressive gains, particularly for their African-American students and their Hispanic students. And Dr. Maxwell will walk us through some next steps.
Thank you. So we really just want to make sure that we're continuing that consistency of the work with the programming, with the course sequencing, making sure things are really clear for campuses, and that our department continues to have a strong collaboration and connection with counseling, and that they are part of all of this work, because they know they have, we know they have regular touches with students, not only in enrollment, but in the courses and working on that graduation plan, but also need to be part of that conversation if a student wants to drop a course, and understanding how that really will affect the outcome and the choices. So definitely want to keep that, strengthening that four-year planning and focusing on data to really help us make these decisions and know where our students are. So our our data is really focused on the larger picture of CCMR. And when the team goes out, we've already started these secondary outcomes meetings, the CCMR meetings at campuses. So we go out to campuses, we're specific with sitting with that staff and using the, talking through just, you know, everything that is CCMR, current updates, so that they make sure everyone's well-informed, but then also take some very explicit time with the staff, with administrators, to taking the data from the CCMR dashboard and then downloading that in an individual student data, to an individual student data level, particularly to the students at that campus. We worked on that structure with Dr. Wilson to make sure that we were providing principals, assistant principals, counselors, the staff at the campus, the time that they needed to really go through that data and see where the students are with CCMR readiness. Our students can find us, of course, and many do, and multiple can sort of check the CCMR box in multiple ways, but sometimes we look at that data and we see there may already be a sophomore or a junior that hasn't indicated CCMR readiness. And so that's an immediate plan, of course. We may notice that a sophomore isn't on a pathway to do so. And so that's that opportunity for them to really make individual decisions for students at their campus. Can't finish everything in that one meeting for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and thousands of students, but it does give them that process to be able to continue that. And then we continue our meetings with campus. So we go back out, we check on that progress, we pull the data again and see where the students are again, and see what paths have, what interventions have taken place, what conversations with students have taken place to make sure that they're on the path that they need to be. And that is the end of this report, and we welcome questions. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for this. It's nice to have two meetings of really exciting data in a row, so just want to call that out. I want to call it on page three. You wrote, "What we are doing is working," and now we can see it. And it's really, now we see it. So thank you. It's really exciting to have such strong results and such great big growth all at once. So thank you. So trustees, questions? Trustee Hunter?
Thank you. It's not a long question, but I'll make sure that it's, that you can get all the parts of it. So how is the district monitoring and supporting student performance in IBC-aligned courses to ensure that gains in enrollment translate into successful course completion and industry-based certifications for all student groups?
That is a good question. So to expound on what Superintendent Segura said earlier about the CCMR dashboard. So I was on a meeting just this morning. We are opening up the second phase of that, which we're calling CC pathways. So now, for the first time ever, our counselors, our administrators, we're actually going to be able to see where students are in that four-year plan for CTE. So it's going to track the course sequencing for us. So instead of having to go through student by student and see, hey, did they meet these four courses, it will show us that data. So that alone, just the man-hours included in that, will be so much more effective and efficient, but also working with our teachers to not only do professional learning with them, but there's more and more resources available to help students learn prior to taking the IBC. So we want to make sure that we're providing them the practice test. Some certifications come with practice exams. They come with a series of courses that the students go through. Every certification is different, but we make sure that those teachers also have the availability to do the professional learning to help the students pass those exams, too.
Okay. And then I just have a clarification question. Did you say that African-American students did not meet the five-year goal?
So no, they've met the current goal, but they have not surpassed the five-year goal.
Perhaps I'm reading this incorrectly. What is the five-year goal?
Oh, they sure did.
Okay, I'm not a math person. I'm a history person, but I can tell 50 is bigger than 40. Okay.
I should go back to the middle school algebra one.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't looking at something incorrectly. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Asked and answered.
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
I have a question.
Thank you.
I guess in hearing this wonderful report, I hate to be the Debbie Downer, but I guess I'm just wondering if you anticipate any changes happening in the future that could affect the success that we are seeing or will see?
I think, so, yeah, Trustee Cantana, one of the things that the team and I talked about, this comes around, well, you know, should we reset our goals or our targets because we've been successful? And I'm of the opinion that we need to at least keep them for one more year. And what could affect this is any changes from TEA, right? So we've talked about that, you know, the requirements for IBCs, what IBCs count versus don't count. Just a couple of years ago, there were some that dropped off, and so districts' numbers were shifted quite significantly. So that, to me, would be something that would impact this, but I think with the tools that we have in place, the awareness, the systems, we'd be able to manage that. So you might see like a shift, but I don't think you would see us move in the wrong direction, if that makes any sense. But that, to me, would be one thing that's outside of our control that could be an impact. I don't know, team, is that, I mean, we talked about that. I don't know if there's anything else. Forget about it? Okay.
A question. So, thank you, because that helped me crystallize what I was thinking there. So I think along those lines, and I appreciate the comment about extending, you know, at least for one more year. You know, my question was about, you know, given what we're seeing with the successes of the of the universal choice sheet and the initiatives that you've already done, is, you know, the expectation that the gains are going to carry over, or that, you know, whether, how do we know whether we've plateaued? You know, you've talked about other efforts to have further gains. And so I guess, you know, if you could speak a little bit more to, do you think the efforts that we've done still have room to bear more fruit? Or, you know, have we plateaued? Or, you know, how we're looking between that, if that makes sense, with the efforts that we've had, new efforts that we're going to have, you know, what is the further growth that we're anticipating or that we're targeting?
I think what we're focusing on with our principals and campus leaders is just drilling down to the student-specific level data, which is what Dr. Maxwell and Ms. Benneker talked about. So those individual campus-level conversations where Ms. Benneker's team meets with our principal, like their admin team, the special education chair is included, as well as the counselor, and events academics, and a lot of other departments and teams come together to drill down to student-level specific data. So this is great overall, but you know, success is never final, and that's something we tell our principals all of the time. And so just looking at the different student groups for that particular campus and individual students to see where that growth is needed. Also, CCMR is an incredibly large umbrella. So IBC is just one portion of it. And although we do want to see gains, either sustain the momentum or increase that, we do know there are other areas of opportunity under that umbrella, which you'll hear about in other board monitoring reports. So Ms. Benneker and her team, we met at Akins Early College High School yesterday for a high school principal-level meeting. We were able to have the interim principal, Ms. DeLeon, share out about all of the incredible things going on with the academies and the way that they are monitoring the work. But then we also drilled down to TSI, and we talked about academic readiness and identifying students to make sure that they are college-ready when it comes to math and reading with data. So there are other areas and points where we want to ensure success and growth across the board, but we are proud to stop and celebrate for a millisecond the work that's happened here.
I also want to add, this goal can only grow to so much, right? So not all students are CTE. We have students who are in athletics and don't have room for CTE in their schedule. We have students who are in fine arts and don't have room. So we can only grow to a certain point. So I think that to answer your question, we need to see, we need to maybe match our enrollment total in CTE with the way that they're persisting through as well, because if we only have 75% of our students enrolled in CTE courses, we could not possibly grow beyond that.
Okay. And then maybe, I appreciate that. Thank you. That does answer the question. And then just to drill down, I guess, on the drill-down point, am I correct in understanding? Then, I guess the way I'm interpreting that is some of the work that we've done is putting the systems in place that allow for that granular detail to be going to the students? So that's kind of the next step, is being able to use those systems to that degree?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions?
My questions have been asked and answered. Thank you.
Thank you. I have just two. One is, in the high schools, you highlighted, as the outliers in the highlights, it was really notable that the students, the percentages for students with economic disadvantage and students without were very close to each other. Do you have an understanding, much closer than we usually see, do you have an understanding of why those gaps are so small in this area?
I don't, to be honest with you. I think that what I love so much about CTE is that it's for all students. I think so often that we separate college and career, and in fact, CTE is both. I use health science as an example. You cannot graduate high school and be a doctor. Thankfully, you have to go to a lot of college before you get to do that. And so I think that's the beautiful thing about CTE, is it's for all students of all backgrounds, demographics, whatever their economically disadvantaged or advantaged situation is. And so I think that that's probably a big part of that.
Yeah. There's also a shared understanding and awareness on these campuses. So when you walk onto the campus for Akins, Bowie, Crockett, LBJ, those programs pop out. Superintendent Segura and team, we visited Crockett Early College High School, I think it was the second day of school, and we were able to visit with students. And there were some students that were in the cosmetology class we visited that were from Akins Early College High School. So they were, they're actually utilizing the student share program in order to come for first period on A-day to this course for cosmetology. We talked to the student that was money-carrying Superintendent Segura's nails, and she mentioned this is her third year in the program, and she really loves her teacher. We know that kids pick people, not necessarily courses. And so she's made that commitment to stay in this program and persist to completion, just because of that relationship with her teacher, with the other students that are present, and just the strong awareness. I asked her, "How did you get here?" My friend, you know, is a student at Crockett and told me about how wonderful this instructor was in the program. So just the strong awareness and the culture that's built around the CTE courses really helps to make it sustainable on campuses.
Good. Thank you. I love that. I have one more question, and then, Trustee Kaufman, do you want to, do you have a question, or have yours been answered?
No, I was watching from the back, and mine has been asked and answered.
Okay, thank you. So I just have one additional question, which is, do we have any understanding of how or whether our students use these certifications after they graduate, or is that something we don't track?
Good question.
That's a really good question. No, I, you know, I read an article today about how some of them are better than others. And as I think TEA is being responsive to that very thing, they review the list of industry-based certifications regularly and really make sure that those are answering labor market needs, not only within the state, but specific communities as well. What we see coming down in the next Accountability Handbook is probably that they're going to tier those IBCs by level. And so something like a cosmetology license, which is a license with the state, would be over something, for an example, of Microsoft Office, right? So you could be hired at a livable wage with the cosmetology license. However, with a Microsoft Office certification, you could be really great at APA whenever you go into college. So it just, everyone depends, but they are stackable credentials, and we know that they're good for kids regardless of the level that it is. And so we're going to keep working and getting those students those credentials.
And I think part of that is making sure that we, as a system, are always looking at what those high-wage, high-demand areas are, so that we are making sure we've got good enrollment in those, that we're promoting those programs, that we have what those programs need, which does increase the likelihood that they will be using that, they'll find employment in those industries, and that they'll go on to be successful with them.
One more thing. That's really where the work with our industry partners comes in play. So we've got industry partners throughout the city, throughout the area, that play a big part in looking at those industry that play a big part in looking at those industry needs, looking at the market needs and knowing, you know, this certification is great, but really in the industry, they're looking at this one. Okay, well, if that's one of the IBCs, let's shift that way. And so working with the community is a big part of what we do.
Thank you all for this. Any further questions? All right, thank you all so much, really appreciate it. And thank you to all my colleagues for this productive conversation. Again, we vote to accept, on whether we will accept this monitoring report. And again, as a point of clarity, we're voting to accept it as a former, a formal acknowledgement that we had a satisfactory conversation with the superintendent and have a deeper understanding about how the current reality for students lines up with our vision. And at this point, I will entertain a motion to accept this monitoring report.
I move to accept the report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Having a motion by Secretary Gonzalez and a second by Trustee Quintana to accept the monitoring report. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. Thank you so much. Next up is our information reports and updates. And Mr. Segura, will you please introduce the next item?
Yes, President Boswell. I have joining me Joshua John, Executive Director of Governance, Accountability, and Board Services, and Dr. Cherry Lee, Interim Assistant Superintendent of Special Education Programs, to share the TEA Special Education Agreed Order update.
All right. Good evening, President Boswell, Superintendent Segura, Board of Trustees. As part of the TEA Agreed Order, we committed to provide regular updates to the board and to the community. And this update includes an update on the required actions under the order. The order outlined 99 deliverables in the following categories: Lone Star Governance, Priority One, Satisfy Open Corrective Action Plans; Priority Two, Identify and Implement Effective Practices; Priority Three, Improve Data Systems; and Priority Four, Establish Apparent Outreach Campaign. Currently, out of the 99 deliverables under the order, we have completed 96 of them. Under Lone Star Governance, we do have one remaining. That's the LSG Quarterly Board Self-Evaluation in October. We also have one that is ongoing, which is to read into the record at the first board meeting each month, the percentage of time invested in student outcomes during the prior three months and the total time spent in closed session during the prior month. Under Priority Three, Improve Data Systems, we also have one ongoing deliverable, and that is to submit reports monthly to the agency and a summary report to the board that meets the requirements outlined in this section. Pursuant to the agreed order, the board engaged in quarterly self-evaluations using the LSG Implementation Integrity Instrument. And the board had to achieve a MEAT Focus Score within two years of the board completing the LSG workshop. And after reaching that MEAT Focus, the board was to work with the LSG coach to maintain a MEAT Focus Score that's 60 or better on the LSG Implementation Integrity Instrument for three consecutive quarters. And as you can see on the table here, the board has reached MEAT Focus for five consecutive quarters as of August 2025.
Okay, good evening. As part of our ongoing commitment to meeting the requirements of the TEA Agreed Order, we remain focused on Priority One, which is ensuring compliance with federal and state timelines for evaluations, reevaluations, and initial and annual ARD meetings. And we recognize this work requires sustained collaboration across all levels within our school district. Our case managers at the campus level, our speech therapists or related service providers, our diagnosticians, our school psychologists, our campus principals, and our executive directors who supervise principals, as well as our district-level special education staff. So as presented in August, the district has adopted the Frontline Special Programs Management System, which includes dashboards and reporting feature to help staff monitor compliance with the required timelines. We continue to partner with our vendor to make system improvements based on feedback from staff who are actively using the platform. We want to acknowledge the tremendous lift that Austin ISD staff members have engaged in as they learn and adopt and adapt to this new program. Systems change is not easy. Transitioning to a digital platform requires time, effort, and persistence, and ongoing training is critical to building confidence in all of the new workflows. And we want to extend gratitude to all staff for the additional efforts needed to transition systems. It's been a heavy lift. And despite past challenges, we've made progress in holding and documenting annual ARD meetings on time and we're closely tracking all reevaluations to ensure they're prioritized. The district remains committed to responding to current TEA complaints and will continue to prioritize compliance with annual ARD and reevaluation requirements as outlined by Superintendent Segura at our Leadership Institute for All Principals in July and in ongoing communication with campus leaders. As we review our progress tonight with the agreed order, we acknowledge our focus must move beyond compliance. The ARD Committee has a critical responsibility to develop IEPs that are individualized and aligned with each student's unique strengths and needs. This includes updating families on their child's progress and reconvening the ARD Committee when updates are necessary and annually is required. Our shared goal is not just compliance, but meaningful outcomes for students. Our focus remains on fostering engagement at ARD Committees where families feel heard and are included in the development of their child's IEP. Priority Two requires Austin ISD to identify and implement effective instructional practices, including targeted professional learning for staff. A central component within this priority required extensive training for all campus leaders and instructional staff on the MTSS process, high-quality instructional materials, specially-designed instruction, the special education legal framework, and a continuum of services for students with disabilities. It also requires the district to ensure ongoing professional learning development opportunities. Austin ISD's completed all 47 action items identified within the priority. To ensure our district builds upon the foundational training components within the order, our Austin ISD teaching, learning, and leading teams are working to ensure instructional delivery and implementation of high-quality services for all students across the district through the provision of strong Tier One curriculum and instruction. Our TLL team conducts routine instructional walks across campuses to support alignment, providing real-time feedback to campus leaders, which you heard earlier as well. I'd like to also share a few specific updates on our special education team's comprehensive calendar of PL opportunities, which builds upon the foundational training district staff completed as required by the order over the past two years. Our new monthly Learning Lab series offers real-time training for special education case managers. Attendance at our monthly learning labs is a new requirement for all special education teachers across the district. Tuesday, we held our first learning lab where almost 700 special education teachers attended one of three virtual sessions. Sessions are recorded for those staff members who are unable to attend. Additional professional learning sessions include sessions on frontline special programs management, as described earlier, high-quality IEP development, autism supports, behavior intervention, and transition planning for students with disabilities, along with focus sessions on functional behavior assessments, crisis de-escalation, and dyslexia intervention. We also offer monthly cohort meetings for teachers providing early childhood special education and life skill services. Our campus support coordinators will now be leading a monthly PLC on each campus to provide additional focus training specific to the needs of that campus. This layered, ongoing PD approach reflects our commitment to building staff capacity and sustaining improvements aligned with the TEA Agreed Order.
Under Priority Three, Austin ISD committed to improving our data and reporting systems and to submit monthly reports to TEA and the board outlined in this section. In the fall of 2024, as you may recall, we discovered the special education data management system that we had could not sufficiently produce the accurate and timely reports that we needed to support students and to ensure compliance. And we tried many avenues, but we reached an impasse in the fall with the system we had. And so in September 2024, we had to make an extremely difficult decision to transition to a new data management system. And after holding multiple listening sessions and reviewing survey data, we put out a request for codes in October 2024 and procured a new software frontline, Special Programs Management System, by the end of the year. This was a huge undertaking. We went from project kickoff mid-January to go live in July. That aggressive timeline was a challenge, like Dr. Lee mentioned, but the dedication and tireless work of our team made it happen. And as we have presented previously, we made training a top priority because it's the key to success. Our comprehensive training program was thoughtfully designed and delivered in multiple settings this summer and continued to be a focus as we started the new school year. We are thankful to the agency for the time granted us until September 1st to transition to this new data management system. We're thankful for the opportunity over the summer to collaborate with the monitors and Dr. O'Neill ahead of that September 1st submission. Last week, on September 12th, we submitted updated reports as requested and are waiting feedback. Our next steps include providing ongoing technical assistance to campus staff as well as conducting follow-up training. We will continue to monitor compliance at the district and campus level. And finally, we will continue to submit monthly reports to TEA and the board that meet the requirements of the order.
So moving on to Priority Four, we have met the 15 actions under Priority Four. And one of those actions required our district to establish a parent advisory group to gather and incorporate family feedback on the district's special education services. Our first special education family advisory committee meeting was held in January of 2024. And in the upcoming 25-26 school year, CFAC will convene six times to accomplish key objectives as outlined on the slide that include aligning the committee's work with the district's strategic plan for special education, developing new strategies for parent outreach, enhancing resources and training for families, and providing guidance on inclusive practices. Based on recent input from committee members, we have added a parent and a teacher co-chair for the 25-26 school year. Volunteers serving in these positions will not only develop the meeting agendas, but will define the scope of focus for key discussions, further empowering parent and community voices on the committee. Our first meeting of the school year is on Tuesday, September 30th, at HQ from 6:00 to 7:30. And at the beginning of each meeting, time will be provided for both member and community feedback and comments. More information on signing up to provide the public comment can be accessed through the Austin ISD CFAC website. And we currently have one opening for a parent member. And we do encourage Austin ISD parents interested in participating to apply through the standard application form for service on our district advisory bodies on the Austin ISD website. While Austin ISD has completed all of the requirements identified within Priority Four, our Childfind efforts continue. Childfind is a federal requirement that makes sure that public schools, including Austin ISD, identify and evaluate children who may have disabilities and need specially-designed instruction. When families of students attending Austin ISD have concerns about their child's learning, speech, or behavior, they can request an evaluation by contacting their child's campus, principal, or teacher. Families of students who are homeschooled or attending private schools in the Austin ISD attendance boundary can also request an evaluation for their child by visiting our Childfind page on our external website, as shown here on the slide, and completing a digital form. Our district Childfind contact is Ms. Amanda Reyes, who is our Director of Evaluations, and she can also answer additional questions regarding the special education evaluation process. Now, early intervention services are available for children from birth to age three who qualify. And our Austin ISD ECI specialist is Ms. Michelle McGeehee, and she meets regularly with our local ECI agencies that include Easter Seals and Any Baby Can to support families with the transition process from ECI services to school-based special education services. If families have more information on ECI, they should contact the Department of Health and Human Services and that information is also linked on our Childfind page. Our first Childfind session was held on September 3rd here. It was virtual and it provided families the chance to really learn and ask questions about the referral and evaluation process, and we had over 30 families in attendance. In short, our Childfind efforts are required, as required by Priority Four have been met, but outreach efforts continue. So the last component within Priority Four required Austin ISD to establish effective parent engagement. And I'll highlight a few of the following updates regarding family engagement efforts that are also featured on the slide. We've increased our reach to families through social media, the district newsletter, and the Family Connections newsletter. The first newsletter reached 15,000 families. The next quarterly newsletter will be sent out in mid-October. Our Family Empower Hour learning sessions are offered every Wednesday at noon and 6:00 PM through Zoom. And our sessions are designed with time for parents to explore materials and resources and ask questions to members of our special education team. October events include sessions on the Dyslexia Handbook and strategies to support students with dyslexia in honor of Dyslexia Awareness Month. We're also going to include a session on a parent's guide to our MAP Growth Platform, accessibility supports for Chromebooks, which will be led by our assistive technology team, and a student employment panel. Our team also has a Family Learning Opportunities page on our external website, which provides information on upcoming family events and archive newsletters. And we post events through Austin ISD social media as well. I'd also like to share that Bree Roth, who is a longtime Austin ISD staff member, is now serving as our team's family learning and engagement specialist. She has more than 20 years of experience as a teacher and an advocate, and she's partnering with our families, our parent support specialists, our schools and community organizations. And families and staff are encouraged to reach out to Bree to facilitate parent training on their campus and find additional support and resources. So as we close tonight's presentation, we would like to invite our community to our Second Annual In-Person Transition Fair on September 27th at Bowie High School from 10:00 to 12:00. We do thank Bowie High School for hosting this event for the second year in a row. Last year, we had over 100 families that attended. And this is an opportunity for families and students to explore post-secondary options and really make valuable community and agency connections. We're going to have over 50 agencies and vendors who are going to be participating, offering information on vocational training, higher education options, employment, and independent living opportunities. Austin Community College will be there as well. Registration is encouraged, but it's not required and it is open to all. So this does conclude our presentation tonight and we thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustees, any questions about this report? Trustee Kaufman?
Thank you for the continued work to fulfill all the expectations of the agreed order. I just wanted to check, I know that there was, there were a lot of things that had been due May 31st and additional ones due August 1st. And you, I think those were included in the chart, but we didn't really hear about those items that were submitted. If people are interested in the actual artifacts and the documents that were submitted, are those available for the public or for the board? Things like the Continuum of Services map or the protocols and processes for allocating resources? Like, are those submissions available so people can see what was, what AIC is doing?
Yes, we can make those available. We have not linked all of those resources to our external website, but those resources would be available for, you know, for review, including, you know, training documents that we have provided. And all of those have been reviewed by the monitors and we provided those to the state as well.
Awesome. I'll submit a tracker request then to get the ones I'm interested in. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any additional questions? All right. Thank you so much for this report, for the work. You know, I know it's been a whole lot of people and a whole lot of heavy lifts. So it's really exciting to see so many things delivered and taken care of and improved for our students. So thank you so much, really appreciate it. Any further comments, Superintendent?
I think just kind of reinforcing that, you know, this order does not end, you know, whenever we complete the work. You know, we have continued to say this and we are committed to it. You know, what's required by the state, what's required by federal law, compliance, that's like the foundation, that's like the minimum. I mean, we are striving to be much more than that. So, you know, our strategic plan is really kind of the heart of the work once we get hopefully past the TEA Agreed Order. There's no timelines yet set for when that'll be, but we're hopeful that as we get to the end of it, we just continue to reinforce that this is not stop. It continues on. But certainly want to thank the team for all the hard work. It was a gargantuan lift and just really proud of us being able to get to this point. Not through it yet, but very proud of the work thus far.
Moving in the right direction. So thank you very much, really appreciate the update and the work.
Thank you.
Okay, so this ends our section on the information reports from the administration. At this time, we will now move into the preview of agenda items that will be considered for a vote at the next regular that will be considered for a vote at the next regular board meeting next week on September 25th. Austin ISD staff is available to answer any questions for tonight's preview. And we will begin tonight with item seven, which is the agenda preview for upcoming academics and curriculum items. Any questions on these items? All right, next is section, oh yes, sorry, yes, trustee Hunter.
7.1, CAP City Fund for Education. Excuse me, I want to say that I did notice that last time we had a presentation, it was very sort of in the same structure, but it did not have as much rich information on it. And I noticed that this time they did include who they're serving. I liked it. I appreciated it. I would also just love a breakdown of that 96% which groups. But this is a much more in-depth report than we received the last time, and it helps to make those good decisions based on the services they're providing. Thank you.
So trustee Hunter, we can, would a board update be sufficient to provide it? Okay, we'll work with the vendor.
All right, thank you. Additional questions about section seven? All right, next up is section eight, Board Administration. And these are a lot of kind of tweaks and cleanups and adjustments and punch list and, you know, kind of tying up loose ends. A lot of work that we've done with our coach to bring us into kind of polishing of a lot of the work we've done through our Lone Star Governance work to really kind of, to address a lot of issues that have been raised. So it's a long list and another two-way communication meeting plan. So Ashley Paz is going to be here with us. Our coach, I think, is joining virtually to be here with us for any questions that we have. And I think my understanding when Ashley is here is I believe this all counts now under the new Lone Star Governance Guidelines as high-impact adult-focused time, I believe, is what the new term is. And hi, Ashley. Did I get that right? High-leverage adult-focused time. And we have quite a few things that are coming up. So I'll just kind of go through one by one so we can ask any questions. 8.1 is the Lone Star Governance Two-Way Communication Meeting Plan and Schedule. And the document you have there is a draft. This is a two-way communication plan really focused on our schools with two Fs going and talking about, we worked, Andrew and I had a conversation with Ashley on Monday, and we've talked with her in the past about engagement in our community that talks about not just district-level goals, but local campus performance. And the idea of doing that, we're hearing from families at some of our Target Turnaround Plan meetings of, you know, what can I do to help? And so really taking that local data that is closest to our families of what the data looked like, not just at the district level, but the campus level, and then partnering with campus administration to follow that presentation with a conversation led by administrators, by staff, about how families can best support their students' success. So we're going to be working, the script that is there is just a draft. We're going to be working before the next meeting to get a new script in that Ashley has had a lot of thoughts, and we had a good conversation about how to make it feel really useful, relevant, actionable to our families. So you'll have a new draft there. Do we have any questions for Ashley about that? Okay. Next is Appointment to the Board of Directors of the Austin ISD PFC. That's our Public Facility Corporation. That's not an Ashley item. Does anyone have questions about that? The PFC Board has recommended adding two new members to that, to our Public Facility Corporation. All right, 8.3 is an Ashley item. That's Approval Update to the District Scorecard and Targets. And before we talk about those adjustments themselves, we need to talk about what we consider on-track performance. And I think we got a good preview when we talked about our first scorecard item, where Superintendent Segura had the section where really it's not only stating whether we are on track or not, but really what that backing it up and explaining to us how that decision was made. And Ashley, I know you wanted us to have a shared agreement of what we consider on-track, off-track. Can you take a minute and explain to us what the expectation is with that?
Yeah, and so, so thank you. And so when the board is monitoring its goals, what you are trying to understand through your monitoring conversation is where you are today. So where students are today, so what is the current reality for students relative to the goal? And so when the board, the board monitors the goals, you do so by looking at goal progress measures. And the, I think Dr. Foster has said this very eloquently in the past. He talks about how the GPMs and the goals all work together to create kind of an ecosystem of how you are creating that systemic change. And so when the board thinks about on-track, you're not just thinking about whether or not the goal progress measure is on track. What you are actually wanting to understand is whether or not the goal is on track. The goal progress measures are good information to know what kind of progress you're making, but the main thing is the goal, because that is the student outcome that you're trying to accomplish. And that's what has been identified in collaboration with the community, all that work that you did last year to really drill down what the community's vision is, and then you codified it through your student outcome goals. So that's kind of the perspective that the board should be looking at as you are doing your monitoring. But you also need to, it's not, we also need to be clear that it's not just, you know, board members or, you know, someone in the community or really anyone who is reading the monitoring report. It shouldn't be up to them, or they shouldn't have to read through the entire report to try to understand whether or not the current vision or the current reality matches the vision. The superintendent is the one who really is expected to provide that interpretation. And I provided, I provided some additional documentation this morning to the board. It's a document called the Policy Governance Consistency Framework, and it talks about any reasonable interpretation. And so where the board sets the goals, the superintendent sets the goal progress measures. And those are the superintendent's interpretation of the goals. Where you are relative to the goals through the goal progress measures, it's the superintendent's responsibility to really explain to the board what that is and provide that evidence of why that is the interpretation. And so I know that was kind of a long-winded answer, but it is a little bit more complex than, you know, just kind of a surface-level understanding.
Thank you for that. Any questions about that? Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any questions about the updated scorecard? We have the updated scorecard, the current scorecard. We have a side-by-side that details all the changes, and then we have a revised updated scorecard and a revised side-by-side. So a lot of documentation here that explains the changes that were made. A lot of these came from the administration filling in, you know, some TBDs, some metrics that didn't exist yet, some things. We made some changes to language to align with some requirements and some other tweaks to it to really just kind of polish it. And we've been test-driving it for a year and to get it right with Ashley's guidance to both the administration and us as trustees. Do we have any questions about this? Any discussion? Yes, trustee Hoffman.
I didn't see any of the explanation of the revised targets and current data for the GPM on Students on Track, 5.2, I think, for Students on Track for achieving the dual-language seal of by literacy? Can you just help me understand the basis of those goals? Like, what, I mean, in particular, what is the denominator on those? Like, when we're looking at numbers that say that we have that our baseline is that 50.8% of ninth to 12th graders are on track in program coursework to earn an Austin ISD seal of by literacy? What is the denominator there? What is, what are we, what does that number mean?
I believe it's the students that have started that. So not all Austin ISD students, but students who started on that track.
Okay, and the goal five, the denominator there is all graduates, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and so those numbers will fit together in terms of monitoring the progress towards the goal?
Fit together, I think we would see a correlation. If the goal progress measure is progressing, then we would see a correlation that the goal would progress. And so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions about the scorecard? Anything you want us to know?
I think for our trustees, you know, this scorecard, you know, since I've been in Austin ISD for, I guess, seven, eight years now, has evolved. Remember, at one point, there was like 70 metrics and then 16. I've seen it kind of fluctuate over the years. And I very much appreciate the scorecard the trustees approved in the summer of 2024. I think it's a, it was a lot of great work went into it. And as we've used the scorecard for one year, there's refinements, as you just said, whether it's how we collect the data or changes in staffing, right, that has impacted our ability to collect information that we previously were able to collect easily. And so the one thing I maybe want to communicate to trustees is that, you know, there are lots of things outside of this report that we track, that we spend time and energy on. These reports do become sometimes kind of resource-consuming to produce. You know, when we think about when we actually pull the data, I want our trustees to understand, we pulled the data at the time that it's available. If it's tied to a certain milestone, you know, if it's in an assessment or some point of the year, we pull it, you know, we assess it. We then, the team begins to write and develop the analysis. We then pull it into a presentation, then review the presentation. We then refine it. We have to really understand, because I think our board, as expected, would want us to understand, do we really kind of recognize what the root cause is? Have we really addressed all the different things that could come out of this data? And that work is done by very few people. This is not something that is outsourced. It really has to be those who are leading the work to be able to connect all the dots. So I would just want our trustees to know that every time we present something, it may come across as, you know, maybe not a significant lift, but I can tell you that it is a very significant lift work-wise. And the challenge we have is sometimes, you know, we can say that, well, maybe don't spend as much time on it. But the reality of it all is anything that goes public-facing has to be a high-quality deliverable. Like, it's a large organization, the expectations are high, the responsibility is high. We have to check everything, and it has to be a high-quality deliverable, and it has to be accurate. And so if there was an opportunity for refinement in any way to reduce the number of reports, that would be something the administration would love for the trustees to consider. The work is getting done, and we're happy to report out on it in different ways, whether it's board update or posting online. But the actual effort associated with producing these is quite time-consuming, and given what we're tackling with accountability, with all the work and TEA's agreed order with special education, the work that we're doing with consolidations, I just, it's a lot of the same people, and we have fewer people. So I just wanted to say that. But it is kind of the way that it is because of, you know, we didn't also want to make changes or recommend changes and maybe communicate that these weren't important to us. They are all very important. But I at least wanted that to be said for the record. So that's it.
Thank you. Any comments, Vice President Willy Chu?
Yes. Ms. Paz, can I ask you, what is the minimum and maximum number of constraints that must be on the scorecard or can be?
Yeah, that's actually a really great question. The board needs to adopt at least one constraint, so a minimum of one, and no more than five. And a key, a key thing to understand is that for every, and this is for your goals as well, for goals, you need to have three to five. But for every additional goal that you adopt, for every additional constraint that you adopt, there is, there is a pull for resources. And so you're essentially taking, you know, the number of resources that you have, and you are spreading them out across, right now, across 10. If you were to reduce the number of constraints, then that would free up, free up additional resources to be spread out across others. But that really is an important thing for the board to discuss. You know, as long as you are with, as long as you are within that, within those boundaries, then I really don't have a whole lot of opinions. This is how you represent the community's values. And so the constraints are important, but how you focus and prioritize, that's really up to the board for how to do that.
Okay, thank you so much. That's helpful. So with that, I, you know, I really appreciate you talking about, you know, the resources of many kinds at these, I would say, like the monitoring. Because a lot of this is like teacher walkthroughs, teacher monitoring, classroom monitoring, or maybe extra assessment or time for our students as well as, you know, financial costs. So I would say I am supportive of having the minimum number of constraints on here. And I would say there even can be like unintended consequences when something is measured in a certain way. That might not, that could take resources from what we're actually trying to do. Because, like you said, everything does take resources and time and people. So if we're kind of finding the perfect way to measure if people are being engaged, if families are being engaged with limited resources, like my concern and something, you know, I felt like I saw as a teacher is it took away from like actual time to engage people. So I'm supportive of the minimum number of constraints.
And do you have a suggestion about which one we would keep? Or do you want to discuss?
I think my colleagues probably have really good ideas about that.
Trustee DeRioste?
I just wanted to make one note on the, on the old constraint 5.3, the sped restorative practices. I'm seeing that it's, saying that it's moved to CPM 1.3. And on the updated one, I just see a reference to economically disadvantaged means, but I don't see the sped reference in there. And so I wanted to just double-check if that was an oversight or if that's supposed to be included in that one?
It will continue to be disaggregated and presented with that constraint progress measure.
Okay, I just want to make sure as we kind of streamline some of these that we don't lose some of the sped-specific ones? Just because I do think there's value in having that be discreet.
Yeah, so one of the things that we did was, I think in alignment with just who we are, like, we disaggregate all data. And the way that some of the constraints were written, we were having the actual student group be at the constraint level.
Right.
And so in an effort to create some tightening, and also in an effort to add a fifth constraint, which is the one that tracks schools that have a series of unacceptable ratings, we collapsed, we didn't collapse, we rolled it into the constraint above it, or to constraint one. So now, when you go through, all the data will be there in the same way. It's just now It's just now a, a C P M versus a, a constraint. I mean, sorry, the natural constraint, a C P M 1.3 versus just constraint four, or constraint five. So there, there was kind of a lot of little tweaking to try to create space for the added of the, the adding of the fifth one.
Right. I just, just calling out, make sure that we're not moving, losing some of those populations. I did appreciate how in, on the old scorecard, you know, the old concern three for historically marginalized groups, it just described it as specific student populations. So that it was a little open-ended, but still had us focus on specific student populations as opposed to just one or the other. It's just every, every time I look at these, I go back to I U P goals and writing a, a goal that gives you enough, you know, wiggle room to, to be able to apply at all the places. So when, when we use this specific language, I just want to make sure we're choosing the right one.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. And so we're welcome, any input or ideas you have, Josh and I will certainly work through. The other thing that we are managing, trustees, is the board calendar. So there's a requirement for how many times we report out on the goals and the constraints. And so we have to kind of line it all up. And what's the number of requirement, required reports on each constraint?
Uh, once is a minimum.
Once is a minimum.
Each C P M.
Each C P M is, is once and then on a goal, it's
Four.
Four. And so if you have the same goal progress measure, then you're putting that same goal progress measure multiple times unless you have more goal progress measures. And so when you think about the data that we're collecting and when we collect it, I think it can create a, sometimes a frustrating experience for trustees because we either don't have the data yet and we're sharing something, or we've had it for a while, but because of the number of requirements that we have to meet, it ends up kind of creating this funky schedule. So anything that we do, we always have to align in that way and not get too far ahead or behind from when the data is actually available. So just, that's another kind of level of creativity that has to be applied to get this all to align.
Yeah. And I, I really appreciate that. I'm definitely, you know, defer to you on, on how you want to unpack those. I'm just, again, just reiterating, I, I love seeing those disaggregated.
Yeah.
We'll continue to disaggregate everything. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Maybe a question. Do we, like, want to look at, do we still feel like we should have five goals? Should we have four? Should we have three? Does anyone have any thoughts about that?
Constraints?
Um, so I guess going back to goals, since we have to have, we must have three to five.
Three for you.
Three, four, or five goals.
You have to have three, but you can have up to five.
And we have
More goals means less ability to focus on each one and more resources. So, um, yes.
So I just wanted to, to bring that question forward. Because, yeah, I, I'd be interested in talking about only three, but if, want to see if anyone else is interested in that.
And I think it's important, as we talk too, that if we only have three, the three we have to have no matter what are third grade literacy, which is measured by the Star Reading Assessment with the two G P Ms. Are with, I'm sorry, one G P M, second grade literacy now, the third grade numeracy measured by the third grade star, and we have a G P M about second grade numeracy. And then the third one, we have to have as a college career military readiness indicator. And that's, that has to be the goal. And we had some, some play in how we measured that, and that's part of what we talked about tonight. And we have three different G P Ms under that. And so I think, I, I think it's also an interesting question to, and I know you have the puzzle of monitoring it enough times during the year, but whether we also need all the G P Ms that we have, I think is a reasonable question to ask as well. Like, we know you're going to work on the T S I. Do we really need to talk about that? You know, kind of having those questions as well. And does that work with the calendar?
I'm not opposed to having the three, because it's the same thing that we tell our families and teachers when we go out to have these particular L S G meetings and they're like, whoa, you only have five. And what we tell them is, these are the five that we have chosen to put down, to focus on, to monitor. We are always working on things that are not here, always, because that's what districts do, that's what teachers do, that's what schools do. So just having the three, I think really clearly, just talking to our community and saying, just like we told you before with the five, these three are the ones we are going to monitor in this space. The administration is continually working on all the things.
Trustee Kaufman?
I support Trustee Willicue's idea of reducing the number of constraints. I think that the way constraints work in the system, they're not very helpful, because you convert like an important idea into a very unimportant piece of data, right? And so because the constraints require us to have constraint progress measures, instead of just saying, hey, when you're, this plan that you have for improving reading scores, does it include practices that excludes disproportionately impact or fail underserved students? No? Okay, good. That's a good plan. Rather than having to turn that into a constraint, which then narrows it down to a couple of things instead of the big picture. So I would rather just have some confidence that the superintendent we've selected and that the plans that they're presenting are addressing those important values of the district. Because I don't think that these measures that were created for them indicate whether those values are being followed in the district for most of them. And so I think, I think they're not very helpful to have these constraints, and I would support narrowing them, because I do think the lift from the administration of having to create those reports and for us to spend time at board meetings discussing them is not a good use of the administration's time. I'd rather have them focused on the student achievement.
Additional comments or thoughts?
Is there a particular constraint, given what you just said, Trustee Kaufman, that you feel would be the most useful to retain?
And before we do that, I want to flag that one of the changes we made, which we had discussed as a board, but I really want to highlight it because it's a new one, is we changed constraint five to one about accountability. And the language that I worked on with Ashley and, and that I want to be sure everyone sees and can weigh in on whether we keep it or don't keep it and whether if we keep it, we keep it as in this form, is the superintendent will not allow students to be in a school with consecutive unacceptable ratings count of three or more, based on the current rules of T E A's A through F accountability system. And it's tracking the number of campuses with an F rating under the state academic accountability. It, it says it will decrease from 29 to zero in 2029. And it goes back and looks at the past data. 2019, there were eight. 2023, under the new A through F system, there were 30. At 2024, 29. This year, 2023. And then a trajectory to get us to zero.
And what was the rationale behind creating that as a constraint when it's already the fundamental nature of the accountability system?
Um, the rationale was to make sure that we had opportunities to discuss it under our agreed order, which restricts what we can talk about. And, and so it's not time that costs us, that puts, that we have to find a way to not talk about other things.
Correct.
And that really, so we can talk about it within our, our 50% of allotted time in a way that gives it the space it needs, without putting ourselves at, at risk of not talking about other things.
Yes. In that case, I would support keeping constraint five. And, and potentially deleting the other four.
Do we have thoughts?
Can I just clarify? I want to make sure I understood this part, that part of the advantage of reducing those progress monitoring reports is that we would get more frequent progress monitoring on the goals and the other pieces? No?
There would be less time invested by the administration in creating reports that come to the board rather than getting sleep and doing their work.
Okay.
I would like to express agreement with retaining constraint number five. I've been to four turnaround planned meetings in the past two days, and that has been a very loud and frequent question, is why wasn't this discussed immediately after the system allowed a campus to receive its first F rating? So personally, that's how I feel.
Okay. Other thoughts? Interest in other constraints is the thought that we go down to one.
I, I would suggest that constraint one would be one that I would keep.
Trustee Kaufman?
So my challenge with constraint one is that, again, it covers a very important principle about not excluding or disproportionately impacting or failing our understaffed student groups. But then it turns into a backdoor, two additional goals, three additional goals. Because now we're saying, and we also want to improve attendance, we also want to ensure evaluations of students, and we want to improve our discipline to be less, you know, disproportionate. None of which helps us when we're looking at a reading plan to see, does this plan actually equitably address all of our campuses and particularly those campuses who deserve the more support out of, you know, neglect in the past? So I just, I agree. And then I look at where are the other checks and balances for this? Well, chronic absenteeism affects all the other academic goals. So that really, I would expect our administration would target absenteeism as part of the improvement plans for all the other goals. So there's already an incentive and there's already a, a desire, I think, to address those. With the special education evaluations, that's, again, a fundamental component of ensuring that our students are getting the services they need is that. And it's part of our agree, upon, our agreed order. So that's also being addressed through another system. So while I think the, all three of those pieces under there are extremely important, I, I also see that those are creating literally three more goals that we're putting in addition to the five. Because now we're saying, these are the eight things that are most important. And I think in the spirit of reducing the number of, not, not reducing the number of things that A I C is working hard to improve, but in reducing the number of things that the board is investing our time and demanding time from the administration to do additional work, I think I'm comfortable with those being removed for that reason. I support the idea that those are important. I, I don't think that the process of constraints is the way to, to make them important.
Yeah. I, I think just to rear in mind, very specifically with the special education community, I know that, you know, the families that I've engaged with, you know, the concerns around discipline and pulling students out of the learning environment and the, you know, long history with the sped backlog, that, you know, for me, these are two constraints that that data is reinforcing to the families that have been asking so much to, you know, know that things are getting better in sped and they're looking for a specific data on it. And it's so hard to give specific data points to those people. And even with these constraints in place, you know, these are still both concerns. Like, I still have families asking me about their evals or still asking about, you know, discipline concerns. So, you know, I, I, I agree with the, the, you know, idea that these are goals that we're going to be working towards anyway. You know, for me, the point is more in the, the reinforcement to the community that they have something concrete to look at.
Let me say one more word on that.
Yeah, please.
In that case, I would recommend that we revisit that constraint as being specific to those things, that we will not, the superintendent will not allow for special education community to be just affected disproportionately by discipline or to fail to have timely evaluations and make it specific to, somehow, whichever way we can word it properly, to make it specific to those things.
And that would take the absenteeism off, and I think it would address Fernando's concern, reduce some of the load, and also keep us focused as we, you know, kind of address a lot of the things in the agreed order. Make sure that we maintain a focus, that we don't let that backslide. I think there's an argument to be made on that, too.
I know you're not supposed to keep going when you are getting a yes, but I
Keep going.
No, I agree. I mean, I think as we, you know, potentially are going beyond the agreed, agreed upon order, this would also be a way to maintain the spirit of, of the work that we were doing there. So I appreciate the conversation around it.
And it is a large percentage of our students as well. It's a population, it's a significant number. Ashley, if that, is there consensus on this? How do we feel about this? Yeah?
Yeah, I feel it.
Okay. So Ashley, can you help us with language? Do you want to help us with language right here, right now? Or should we work on that offline and bring it?
Yeah, please committee that.
Okay. We will committee that. You good with that, Ashley?
I'm good, I'm good with that.
Committee, that means I will talk to you.
But I may ask her about timeline, because if this is on, would that then move it away from next voting meeting? Because there would not be time to post it.
I think, well, I think we will revise, we will probably make an amendment to what's been posted, right? Would that be lawyers, the proper way to do that? To make an amendment to the scorecard? If we put a draft up?
Because we'll be posting next Thursday's meeting tomorrow, right?
Tomorrow. So we would have to post it as is, put a revised draft up early next week, probably after Ashley and I have a chance to talk.
Certainly not an open meetings issue. It's just more of like your informational expectations, but it's, it's on the information session agenda, I would think, for the purpose of having these conversations and taking the feedback and making the changes as you need.
Exactly.
I don't think that's inconsistent.
Okay. So does that work for everybody? Okay. So Ashley, you and I will work on language about that. We will plan to drop the chronic absenteeism. Josh?
And I want to, I want to add just one thing for the board, just to kind of, I think, solidify this, this conversation. I don't have the feedback from your most recent community engagement in front of me, but I pretty much have the feedback memorized from the first time that you all did it, when you adopted the scorecard in the first, in the first place. And those were the two most, most compelling values that came from your community. It was around historically marginalized students and special education. And so if you were going to keep, if you were going to keep an area, those are probably the, the two that makes the most sense for, for you and for your community. So I love this conversation.
Thank you for that. All right. So I am making some notes here. And Ashley, you and I will get together and work on some draft language that we can post and a new headline for that constraint. And we will not create anything that requires new calculations or new constraint progress measures from the administration. We won't require you to come up with a new way of measuring things. We're going to keep what's already there, the second one and the third one, correct? And get rid of the absenteeism. Okay?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Good on that one. And let's just go through these one by one, then. I think it'll be the most effective way to do it.
And I would just say, I do support keeping all five goals, however. I feel like we already have measures and momentum on those, and I think that they are, I would, I would like to keep all five goals.
Okay. Thank you. And I support keeping all five goals really because I think one of the other strong things we heard from our community when we did engagement is they want our schools to be more than star scores. They want our students to have a deeper set of, of skills. And I know we worked really hard to think carefully and creatively about how to capture some of what our community told us about critical thinking, you know, kind of deeper skills than can be measured on a standardized test. And I, I think that's how we got to some of those. So I support that as well. Other people, any thoughts?
I do want to ask just the, the, some of the issues that were identified, and again, not in terms of the content of the goal and a value statement on that, but how the reporting structure affects the utility of the goal and the discussion that we're having with the two that are beyond H B three. Are there issues with the timeline, with the structure of the reporting with those two goals that might warrant rethinking how at least they're structured or whether we should retain them at all?
I think that's a question. I mean, you know the calendar and, and when data is available in a way we don't. Do you have thoughts about that?
So I think generally speaking, you know, all, all the goals are, 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 the administration's no concern, no concerns no concern, no concerns with how they're written. I would say that goal four, if there was one to be considered for modification or dropping, to me, would be the middle school algebra, primarily because of kind of where, as a system, we are, and how the laws come into place to make it to where we are going to be successful, we're already being successful. The group that supports middle school algebra is also the same group that's doing all the work around middle school academics, school leadership. And so I have no problem reporting on this as frequently as the trustees would like. It really comes down to purporting it in this way, because you only have one goal progress measure. So I have to report one goal progress measure multiple times a year. It just ends up becoming, you know, I would think it'd be frustrating for the trustees to hear, really, a report that doesn't get updated, because you only have one goal progress measure. If you had multiple goal progress measures over the course of the year, then I would come back, you know, and update the board on the goal with a different goal progress measure. In this case, I have one. So it just, it's one of those ones where we're already trending, there's all the support behind it, we're very focused on it, it's a lot of the same people who are leading a lot of the important work. It is time consuming, happy to post, provide as board updates, but given that it's only one goal progress measure against the goal, and just kind of how it's structured, just doesn't feel, it's just hard. That's all I'm going to say, like, it's just hard. But that would be the only one I would maybe ask the trustees consider. Everything else, you know, I feel good about.
If I, if I can add, we, you have to present on that four times, one time is summative, but then three times is interim. And so we're talking about that sixth grade math. So you saw the line graph, but then in the middle of it, we had to put bar graphs so that we can somehow try to come up with ways to explain where we are. So it does make it tough to do it three times in the interim.
So I have a question about what might work, if we can lose the goal, reduce the work, and maybe still capture the information. I think one of the reasons there was interest in eighth grade algebra is that we know there is data out there really tying it to college attainment, to success in higher education. What if we got rid of the TSI as a GPM, and put that goal as a GPM under college career military readiness, and eliminated goal four? And had middle school algebra as our third college career readiness goal? Do we think that's predictive? Do we think that would count? I know that's the administration's kind of job to come up with GPMs. But do you think that would let us continue to monitor that in a way that was effective and reduce the work? And we could get rid of the TSI and replace it with that?
Well, the CCMR goal, I mean, I, yeah, I'd have to think about how that would actually, yeah, I don't, I'm trying to think about the goal itself and how it's written. Yeah, so, I mean, all the work that E3 Alliance does, I mean, we certainly know there's a strong correlation between eighth grade algebra and post-secondary success. So there's no doubt that that is important. How it fits in CCMR as one of the goal progress measures, I think I'd have to kind of think through with the team here, just to make sure. I don't know if it would require, like, a refinement of the actual goal, which can't change.
My guess is that algebra is important, like, helpful with TSI, that I might just ask that question, and maybe you can think about that this week and bring that to us. And we can figure out what to do with this in between? Or do we, do we feel like we just drop algebra and leave the other one like it is?
Yeah, I would say I'm-
I didn't know if Dr. Maxwell, that's why I was coming up, if she's coming up to do something important to say.
We were just talking about that idea back there. So one of the things we do report on is the college credit and finding multiple ways to do that. So part of that reporting could be when we see that kids are starting to earn advanced credit in high school, you can, as we're reporting, we can backtrack that pathway into who had enrolled in advanced math early in accelerated pathways in middle school, and look at the effect that has on how they're earning the credits, the advanced credits in high school. It just could be a way that we report it, rather than having, like, being a separate.
So what would that mean, as far as your, maybe, recommendation on how to structure that?
I think you'd have to think about that a little bit.
Okay. Okay. But it sounds like that's potentially one way we could do it.
I think we, I think we could do it, yeah.
Okay. So why don't we wait for a recommendation on that? Are we good with that? Okay.
So just to clarify, if that does work, then we would be eliminating the eighth grade algebra goal, and it would instead become a goal progress measure on the CCMR goal?
Yes. And we would drop the TS, we would replace the TSI goal with a goal related to-
I don't know that we would want to do that.
I think we, yeah.
We would keep the TSI goal, okay. Can we have four GPMs?
So-
Ashley? We can only have three.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Okay. Well, I will, do we want to ask for a recommendation from the administration about this whole situation? Okay.
I think we heard a recommendation.
Yeah, well, I think-
Yeah.
Is the recommendation to keep our CCMR goals like they are and get rid of eighth grade algebra? Is that?
That's the recommendation.
The recommendation? What's that?
I'm sorry.
No.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, I'm not sure if you can see me.
Oh, hi. Okay, that's, I couldn't, it sounded like a voice that wasn't Ashley's. Yes, I see you. You're very tiny. There you are.
Sorry, y'all. Is it appropriate now for me to kind of share some, a couple of thoughts on this?
Yes, it is.
Okay, cool. Thank you. So I, as I'm listening to this conversation, one thought that comes to mind is, you know, I definitely would hope that we keep algebra, you know, tracking that eighth grade algebra in here somehow, whether it's as, you know, a goal progress measure, or as its own separate goal. What, and this is going to sound odd, perhaps, coming from me, but when I think about the dual language and the bilingual education work that we do as a district, I am less concerned about, I'm less concerned about the seal of biliteracy as I am about ensuring that our dual language is implemented well, which is already a constraint progress measure. So for my purposes, if I had to choose between Algebra I by eighth grade or the seal of biliteracy, and as long as we continued and we kept the, the tracking of the implementation of the dual language program per our policy, because that is the thing that actually helps our emergent bilingual students the most, and where I believe the biggest challenges are right now, I would probably choose to, to keep, you know, to prioritize the Algebra I by eighth grade. So I just wanted to put my two cents in. Hopefully, we won't have to make that choice between the two, and we can keep it, keep both of them somehow. But I just wanted to say, like, especially when, when you look at the, the goal progress measures for our seal of biliteracy, we are actually, the numbers are interesting, because we actually have higher goals for students who are not native Spanish speakers than we do for emergent bilingual students. And so, to me, that doesn't feel as much like centering emergent bilingual students as much as I would have wanted. And so, for that reason, that's why I kind of, hopefully, that gives a little bit of background as to why, you know, I feel like, looking at the implementation of the dual language program, which is, I think, constraint progress measure three-point-something, I can't remember exactly, that, that work gets really reported on very closely, and the focus is there. I'm not saying, don't do the seal, seal biliteracy. I would say, carry on with that. But my bigger concern is making sure that we're getting, is monitoring the implementation of dual language, particularly for emergent bilingual students. So hopefully, that makes sense. But just wanted to put that out there, to make the discussion more complex. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thoughts, Trustee Kaufman?
Yeah, so I don't know if you weren't here for this part of the meeting, Trustee Singh, but we had discussed removing all of the constraints, with the exception of the new constraint five on F schools, and then revising constraint one to just address disproportionality of discipline and, and keeping up to date with evaluations for number one.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't catch all of, I did not hear that part, and I apologize.
Yeah, but I 100% agree that the dual language implementation is a more important piece. It goes back, again, to my concern about the limitations of constraints, because the goal, the constraint progress monitoring for that basically says, we will take one element of dual language implementation, a very important one, the language of instruction, but we'll take one element of dual language implementation, and in five years, we'll improve it a little bit. Right? That's not going to get our kids where they need to go either. So I don't feel like it has enough teeth to really be kind of doing the work it needs to do. But I do agree with the seal of biliteracy being a very important outcome, but again, it's kind of turned into something that's not quite going to move the work in itself the way that we want it to. So I agree.
That's right. I would, yeah, I mean, so do you think, so, Trustee Kaufman, you're kind of the resident expert on some of this. Would you, so, is, are we getting rid of tracking the dual language implementation as a constraint?
That was the recommendation, is that we, not, not, I mean, in the context of reducing constraints, it would be one that would go away.
Yeah, okay. So my-
And I think the idea, we haven't gone through all the constraints yet, so I think we can talk through them one by one.
Okay, so, so I would say, okay, that's helpful. Okay. So I think what I would say is, I don't want to get rid of any of the constraints. I actually feel like those are really important. But if we had to take, get rid of some to make the numbers work and include the new one, I'd be okay with that. But I really worry, because those are, that's where we do get to talk about our values, and those are really so important. And so I would be really, I would need to really think about getting rid of too many of the constraints. I would rather lose the seal of biliteracy goal, because it would guarantee that we, because it would allow, if I had to choose between the two that deal with dual language, I would definitely pick the one that talks about dual language implementation. That just affects so many more students, and is just more foundational to early literacy. And so that's, that would be my two cents. But I'll just wait till we go through all the constraints.
Thank you. And I don't know if you caught the beginning of the conversation where Superintendent Segura explained that, that the process of creating reports and preparing the data, and then, yeah, okay.
Okay, I mean, I did catch him in the meeting, but I've talked to him about that, so, yeah.
Okay. Perfect. And then, Trustee Willicue suggested paring it down to just one, because that's all that we have to have. So that's how we, you know, that was our gateway into this conversation.
Yeah. I mean, the way, my understanding of a scorecard is, and, you know, this is like the fifth version of the scorecard I've gone through, and we keep changing it based on external factors. And so that just makes it so hard. You know, that's, that's why I'm reticent, is to change the constraints again, because, like, those, we, we did so much work in identifying those values, and we have set up the infrastructure to track them. And I think it would personally, I don't want to lose the opportunity to talk about those things in depth on the dais. I think those are things that our community cares a lot about. And I believe those are, so, so I don't know. But I do think that the new constraint is really critical, so I don't know if I would do a complete overhaul and just reduce it to, like, one constraint. So, but that's where I am now, and I might, I might change my mind, but I just, I don't want us to get in the habit of just changing the scorecard based on external factors, because then we'll be just changing them, changing it all the time. And this seems like it's a pretty decent overhaul. It's not just a tweak, so, thank you.
Thank you. So let's come back to, and we'll come back to the constraints, I think. So let's come back to our, the scorecard. We have to have one, two, and three. We've heard the administration speak about what they think the constraint progress measure should be for our CCMR goals, to leave them as they are. And then we've had a proposal that if we're going to lose a goal, that we lose the seal of biliteracy goal, the biliteracy goal, rather than the algebra goal. What do we think? What's that? Oh, down the road? Yeah. Do we want to, how do we feel about that? Anyone? I like the idea. If that's, Trustee Kaufman, if you think the constraint is more meaningful, but I would love to hear from you. I think hearing your thoughts is important.
So I think they're, they're both important, but I would, I agree with Trustee Singh. If we're looking at trying to reduce total numbers, but still have maximum impact, I would say, taking out the goal and keeping, and turning the constraint into a single constraint would be better.
Okay. Trustee Willicue?
Yes. So I'm supportive of eliminating both goals. I think the, the middle school algebra constraint, especially because of the new law that requires the administration to do it, and they're doing a good job of it, and at the superintendent's and the administrative recommendation, I support eliminating goals four and five.
Okay. Anyone else?
I mean, I think for my part, the rationale between, for both of those seemed like they make sense. You know, I don't know. I'm straining to speak on the value of how much reporting we're getting from those two. I mean, the constraint part makes a lot of sense. I think the math, I, yeah, I'm probably on the fence on.
Okay.
The math goal seems clear cut to me because of the issues with the reporting, the repetitive nature of the goal progress measure. I guess I'm still going back and forth on the goal and the constraint. I think I would need to see what it would be, what the revised constraint would look like. But I think right now, given the points that Trustee Hunter made, I would be in favor of retaining just one through three, the HB3 goals.
Okay. Trustee Quintana, thoughts?
But if we have to monitor the HB3 goals anyway, then do, should we make, I just don't understand how that makes sense to bring to our space, if they're already doing the work. Shouldn't we do something that's not mandated already?
You're saying, speaking in favor of doing something that isn't already mandated? Okay. So I'm not sure we have consensus. I'd love to hear, would this look like a motion? Bring the full scorecard and make a motion? We'll make some drafts, maybe keep both of them for the moment? Or are we, do we have consensus that if we keep one, it would be algebra, not biliteracy, and then we can?
So you're not voting tonight, so the question, I guess, is, and if there's like a deadline to do this, and it's next week, then-
What does that look like?
We're going to have to figure out a quick way to get where you want to go-
Yes.
-without meeting again between now and-
Correct.
-next Thursday. So I guess it looks like a motion, yeah. I mean, you don't have to have a unanimous vote.
Right.
That might be one thing to keep in mind. But, yeah.
Okay.
If there's additional work that's going to have to be done between now and then, you at least should decide who's going to do that.
We'll make, I can work with Ashley to do the additional work based on our conversation today. And then if there's not clear consensus on biliteracy- And then if there's not clear consensus on by literacy and or algebra, we can come with one or both of those and then make a motion about approving it with or without. It's complicated, but we do have a deadline.
May I ask a question? So when it, with the repeated reporting, like, I'm kind of of the school of thought that when you don't have anything new to say, you just don't say much, right? So will we not be able to do, have it on the agenda and simply say, no new updates since last time? Or would they have to be performative with kind of going through the dance and pretending like we have questions and then, could we just say, we're gonna ask some really good questions the first time we hear that data? And we're gonna really dig in deep and make sure that we're attending to student results and making sure that we're passionately getting the work done. And then the next quarter, there's, you know, this was updated, that was updated, we ask a couple of questions, we move on. And then is that not an option?
I think that Dr. Kaufman brings up a good point. And this is one of the challenges with only having a single GPM for a goal.
That's the biggest problem.
Yeah, I mean, and it really is because you, you are, you do end up in this cycle of just repetition. And so that means that every single time that you monitor it, there, there should be an update. And that's one of the actual requirements of the GPM is that, that they are able to be updated multiple times throughout the year. And so if that's not possible, then, then it might be necessary to look at, if, if the board does decide to keep the goal, then it might be necessary for the administration to look at an additional GPM. And I don't know if that's, it doesn't sound like that's necessarily something that you're wanting to, wanting to do or that you feel is necessary. And so the question is always gonna be, what, what is the best thing for kids? What is going to move the system in the way, in the direction, closer in the direction of the vision? I'm not hearing a compelling, any compelling answers that, that at least the goal that only has the one GPM is making a lot that you, that it's really necessary to monitor. In terms of just monitoring, you do need to, so if you have a goal, it needs to be monitored four times throughout, throughout the year. And that, that is one of the requirements of LSG. But again, that usually also has three, three different things to monitor, so.
I'm sorry to cut you off there. Now, thank you, Ashley, because I mean, that, that again, kind of triggers my sped brain. You know, if I have an IEP goal that doesn't really require constant tracking, I'm gonna ask, is that a goal that I need to keep? Or should that be a subset of some other goal? And so I think we had that conversation about whether that would fit into the CCMR. And if it doesn't fit under that, if that's not a natural fit, I don't think we should be trying to force it in there. So I think along those lines, the fact that it doesn't have robust progress monitoring or it's not requiring it, that makes me question whether the, the goal is valuable to keep.
And then I have a question, superintendent Segura. If it, if this goal is not on the scorecard, is there anything stopping the administration from communicating the progress to the public in a transparent manner?
No, I think as a team, we've, we've committed to, I mean, this work is still gonna continue. And so we've talked about, can we do a supplemental board update and just say, like, we're gonna present on this, do an actual call out in the board update, post it online. That in itself is just a different level of effort and it's an order of magnitude level. Like, you know, a report to the community and to you all is very different than a report that has to be in a certain structure, has to have certain data sets, has, has a certain level of, you know, kind of quality control, detail analysis. I mean, we, like, one of the things we just talked about over the last two hours ago, maybe three hours ago, was the inconsistencies in the data associated with algebra and the advanced academic, or the, the academic, the academic pathways for sixth grader, sixth graders. And that was a function of us trying to parse together different data sets to say the same thing three times a year. Because we reported on a data and we, we're at a time of the year, we didn't have the complete data set, then we reported a little bit later, had a little bit different data set. And then we provided an update on the summative data at the end of the year, which we did now. So that's, that's what we're running into. So to your point, your question trustee Willie Chu, no, we will, we're still doing the work. We have no problem communicating to our board and to our, our community, we will submit this board, this report, you know, at this time in the year and do it twice, all right? Whatever we think makes sense, given the work, we're happy to do that. It's really just the lift associated with this and the redundancy. And to trustee Kaufman, your question, I don't think we could come back here and say we didn't do anything just because I think our board and just the nature of this atmosphere expects, you know, that dialogue and that conversation. That puts us in a difficult position if we just said, you know.
And I don't mean to do nothing. I mean, it's like, for example, like, but I mean, I can see easy things that if students are enrolled in math and we're wanting to see them succeed, why can't we report on nine-week rates to say that the kids are on track to passing this class? I mean, are there things that are smaller scale, easier to report that would allow us to, yeah, or, yeah, that's, I just, I just, I just don't, I, I can see both aspects of, if you, if it's not worth reporting, then it probably shouldn't be on the list. I can also see it's really important to do, but we don't need to force it into a framework that requires four times a year reporting. So if our current system requires us to have a four-time per year reporting and the element itself doesn't lend itself to that, then I would say we should take it off.
Okay, so what is our thought about leaving it on, taking it off? Is there enough, enough difference of opinion that we leave it on and make a motion to take it off or vote with or without to bring it next week? And how do we feel also about the by literacy goal? Is there consensus on this or not? Trying to figure out how to move forward efficiently.
Yeah.
Is there any disagreement with, with the voting meeting having goals one through three exclusively as the goals? Up for vote?
There was some disagreement. Trustee Singh had thoughts about algebra and had some thoughts about it. And, and I think I would love to hear some input from our community if people have thoughts. Just because I think when we were first creating the scorecard, our community had very strong feelings about reducing what we were talking about simply to standardized tests and, you know, the, the CCMR goals. And our community felt like we were being pushed, honestly, to be really candid, into a system that focused very heavily on test scores and didn't leave a lot of room for other, other things. And I think that was, you know, part of what we tried to get to with these goals and, and the process we went through and part of what we were working to get through with constraints, you know, with those other values. And so I think, I guess the possibility is we can bring it with three and make a motion to add, or we can bring it with four or five and make a motion to remove, you know, kind of approach it either way.
Because we're just sort of laboring it at this point. I don't feel like there's movement. Would it not be possible just to have the meeting, have what's on there, have the discussion part of the meeting and then vote, then we know?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was gonna suggest. And I also would maybe suggest that you consider the fact that because nobody's changed to the recommendation is carrying the day for the consensus, that perhaps, you know, that you ought to consider that as well.
Yeah, okay. So maybe we bring it with all five and someone makes a motion.
Yeah.
And that seems cleaner and that way they're there and removed, so we don't have to add on the fly.
We'll have some good Robert Stuels practice.
Okay, that works. And that seems simplest. Okay, let's run through the constraints. I think there was consensus on constraint one, that we change the language, the title change the language, get rid of chronic absenteeism and focus on the, the two special education items, special education evaluations and exclusionary discipline, which is not just students receiving special education services, but, but looking at discipline, exclusionary discipline across student groups, we could with that. Okay, next one is caregiver engagement and families in meaningful partnerships. Do we have thoughts about removing that? And I know trustee Singh had said, keeping the constraints, maybe our possibility is that we do the same thing and keep them unless we want to really, I would say three is easy because academics disparities, we talk about every time we talk about any academic goal. To me, that one is a pretty easy one to lose. How do we have thoughts about that?
And I have thoughts about constraint two again, which I think I'm repeating myself, but constraint two turned into goal six because it is now saying, we, you know, one of our goals is to effectively implement the dual capacity building framework on more campuses. So to me, that's, that's a goal. And if we're, if we are believing that, which I do believe, narrowing the focus to a smaller number of things that we attend to, not reducing the number of things that the district is doing, but reducing the number of things that we're attending to at the board meeting, then, then I'm uncomfortable continuing to keep ten goals.
I also do want to, I guess, go back to constraint one and the constraint progress measures and the points that trustee DeOrioste made. I think those are vital pieces of information that historically the community have not had access to or were misled on. And I think that there, could there be, I'm wondering, could there be perhaps another way, another avenue for the community to have that information that isn't through a constraint progress measure?
Thoughts?
I really like three. If we were gonna keep one, I would say.
You like three?
Yeah.
Okay. And trustee DeOrioste, do you have thoughts about trustee Gonzalez's question, secretary Gonzalez's question about number one and the special education items and whether there would be another way to share that?
You know, I guess for, for 1.2, I feel like that, that's already something that we had been reporting on and that we're doing. And so I feel like the efficiency on reporting, like, you know, I'm open to being wrong, but I don't see how it's particularly more laborious to continue to report on it than it already has been because it's, it's just a straight report number. And I feel like it's, you know, it does tie directly to something that the community's been asking for. And the disciplinary one, kind of, that one, I think in particular, specifically beyond just special education, the way that we've framed it so that it's, you know, specific demographics. I mean, that, it's just one that I hear so often from the community. I don't know about, to me, it symbolizes something to have that as, as a constraint that we're reporting on and, because it's a very clear one that the numbers just, just, you know, reflect. So.
Yeah, no, trustee DeOrioste, I appreciate that. And I don't think I mentioned, I don't think I said that it was laborious, like, as far as reporting, like, it is not difficult to report this one specific sub-constraint. And so, yeah, and it's gonna, I mean, really, it goes through 2025, 26. So at some point, we're gonna have to restructure it anyway. I mean, the way that it's written. So just for whatever it's worth. No, so that, that's not difficult to do.
Yeah, and I apologize. I didn't mean it to sound like you're trying to get our work.
Some of them are really, really hard. This, this, but I think chronic absenteeism, like that, like, you know, there are so many ways that we are tackling that for a variety of reasons. You know, to me, that would be one. Drops if the trustees would consider it.
I think we're there on that one. That, there, we have clear consensus on that.
Yeah, it's, okay, so then, but you said one, two, and one, three. You were the ones who were talking. So I just was kind of closing all of one, but.
Just to speak on the difference, because, you know, one, two, something that we're already reporting on is part of the agreed upon order. You know, this, this tends to tie into it and all of that. So I feel like that's already there. And one, three, between the different populations, I, just people talk about it so much. I feel like it's, it's worthwhile to keep on there. So, you know, those are really the main two that I'm focused within, within that piece. I just think the community would find a lot of value in continuing to see them.
I think given what we've been through with special education, I do support having that. Making sure that the progress is steady. We've, I think we've seen so many times a district get turned, a school get turned around and fall back into problems or, you know, we, we pay attention to it while we're paying attention to it and then we lose sight. And so I do think there's some value, at least for a little while maybe, especially if it's an easy thing to report. Having that there.
The last, just, just, because I do sit right next to trustee Kaufman. I, to me, I do see this as a constraint because it's, it's very much a barometer, you know, like, I don't think we're saying there's a goal to have this be zeros across the board or anything like that. It's, it's something that clearly reflects disparity in, in discipline is, you know, a good way to track, you know, what, what's happening in practice. And it's, involves so many other things that we're doing. You know, it really is kind of a litmus for all those other pieces that contribute to these scores that we're seeing.
Okay. So do we want to bring one with 1.2 and 1.3 and then we can take a vote, take, make a motion? Okay, let's look at number two. We have thoughts about number two? I mean, I will just point out that 5.2% had something that kind of fit with our, our family engagement policy and their campus improvement plan. We hear from families a lot that they aren't engaged in meaningful ways. That's not new in the district. And that number is really, really low. And I'm not sure that this constraint is going to fix what we hear from families. So just want to kind of put that out there, but really show that, you know, a campus improvement plan, family engagement, we believe is meaningful. Our community told us that was a value and that was meaningful and, and I'm not sure, as, as trustee Kaufman said, that this, you know, these constraints necessarily get us where we want to be. So I think it's worth considering.
Yeah, can I say something? So I'm right there with you as far as, you know, how valuable it is to, to recognize and engage with our communities and, and, you know, take their lived experience to inform our work and to do it in a true partnership. I think what makes this hard is that much of this will fall on the campus. And at a time when we're navigating lots of things on our campuses, because the way that it makes its way into is in the campus improvement plan, right? Campus improvement plans are by campus. Our principals work with our executive directors, they build them out, provide professional development. But at the end of the day, you know, we are asking our principals to, to, to lead this work because we have over 100 campuses. I mean, that's, you know, that's just part of how we would have to operationalize this. And so with everything going on, I worry about kind of having it be there in this way because it, it does create a little bit of time conflict as we think about reporting because of what we're asking to be done. So I think there's other ways. I think overall, we, we support it surely, but it is something that I at least want to be considered from that perspective. And maybe there's different ways we can build upon it and expand upon it in a different way, but the way that it's written and have it be in the campus improvement plan, it's just, it's just a different kind of feel locally.
And I think the flip side is that when things get really busy, I think our community, you know, feels like this is something that's sometimes seen as fluff and unnecessary. And I think working together, we chose the campus improvement plan because it's something the principals are doing anyway and that it, and that one of the levers that are to be considered is kind of that family engagement. be considered is kind of that family engagement. And I hear what you're saying. So, you know, this is not mine to decide, it's ours to decide, and I want it to be meaningful and I want it to be doable. Yeah, and I think it's, it's here because we heard from our community and I know we can't keep, you know, we're hearing you say we can't keep everything. So I think the question is what we move forward with? Do we move forward? Is it easier to move forward with everything we don't have consensus on and make a motion to only keep what we want? This is obviously, it's important, but it's important to, for you to do the work you need to do, right?
Yeah, and just to be, what I was wanting to, after we completed one full year with the monitoring report, sorry, the scorecard with our monitoring reports, I just wanted to communicate to our trustees just what it felt like and what it feels like tackling all the things, right? Special education, agreed order, consolidations, accountability, budget, and it's the same individuals leading much of this work. So I think really, all of these are great, like they all have a purpose, we work through them. So it's really a function of, if there's an opportunity to reduce, it would be meaningful because of what we're currently tackling. That is really the, I don't want anybody to walk away from this conversation that I feel a certain way about these, that they're all valuable and important.
We understand that. We understand that. And I know we're tackling big things with fewer people because there's a scarcity of resources. I understand that, of time, of money, of a lot of things. Okay, so caregiver engagement, where are people? Keep it on or take it off?
Off.
Yeah, I don't see how we're going to do any of the work that we have coming up if we aren't already doing 2, 4, and 5.
Okay, Candace?
Okay. I think if we don't, we need to move through. I think if we don't have, if we don't have consensus, we can keep it on, take it off with a motion when we come to our voting meeting because I don't, we could talk about this all night. Are we good if we don't have clear consensus leaving it on and waiting for a motion? Okay, number three.
Trustee Quintana has said keep.
Yeah, I agree. If we're losing the dual language on the goals, that we would keep something for dual language on the constraint.
Because this is the quality of our dual language instruction. Could we take only that and get rid of the gifted and talented, Ashley? How many times do we have to monitor? Each constraint is just once a year?
The constraints need to be, they just need to be monitored once per year and, but I do want to remind the board that it is a superintendent's, that the constraint progress measures are the superintendent's to identify. One of the things that I am, that I have heard on several of these is that they're not actually, they're kind of, you're, you're kind of maintaining the status quo almost it sounds, it sounds like, and maybe that's not their best wording, but it doesn't sound to me, I'm not hearing a compelling argument that some of these constraints or constraint progress measures are actually changing adult behaviors, which is what it's, what this is about. And so, you know, if they're, if adult behaviors aren't changing, then either the constraint progress measure is, maybe isn't actually reflective of the constraint or maybe it's, it's just not the right thing for the school system now that you've been, been through a full year of implementing. So take with that what you will.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I just, for, for a constraint, you know, I guess part of the way I'm interpreting some of this is to make sure that adult behavior stays changed, that it's not changing in the, in the wrong direction. Would that be fair?
In some, in some instances, that is, that is accurate, but that is very rare. Generally, generally, you want to, you want to, so if you, if something is happening and you don't want that thing that's happening to stop, then put a constraint around it. If there is something that is happening that you don't want the district to do anymore, then put a constraint around it. But generally, if, if things are working the way that they should be working and it's not something that is, that's really at risk of not happening if there isn't a constraint, then there isn't a compelling reason to have a constraint there. But ultimately, it is the board's decision on, on what constraints you decide to keep and which, which ones you decide to get rid of. I also, I just want to let the board know, I just shared a guidance document about constraints and guardrails with Josh and president Boswell to make sure that everyone gets that before the next, before the voting meeting so you can have a little more information about them.
Thank you. So looking at constraint three, I'm going back to our conversation about goal five, about the seal of biliteracy and having this CPM be more meaningful to us. And is there thought about keeping constraint three and that constraint progress measure and getting rid of goal five? And superintendent Segura, how would you feel if we kept only, if we turned this into a dual language goal and got rid of the gifted and talented? I understand the grant we had that was supporting that work may be gone. And that's going to maybe, I hope some of the work is baked in, but I don't know. How would you feel? What is the thought about making this, taking away one of the constraint progress measures and making this a dual language goal?
So 3.1, I very much appreciate, I, I think that's a great constraint progress measure. I think over the last year, we really learned how to balance the observations occurring by our principals versus the multilingual education department. And so, you know, I feel, I personally feel strongly that should be kept. You know, yes, I'll just say that, I don't want to.
And how do you feel about CPM 3.2? If we turn this into a dual language goal and got rid of 3.2, that would reduce some work?
Yes.
How do we feel, everybody?
It's not a goal.
If we kept the dual, turn it into a dual language constraint, thank you. And I could work with Ashley on language about the headline, the caption, the, the name of the constraint and the language.
President Boswell, I have a quick comment or maybe a question on this. So for this one, and this is, and I apologize, I missed the first part of this really important discussion. Is, is the reason we're doing this is because it's taking away the administration's attention from other compelling things that are happening right now in our district. Is that correct?
There are lots of heavy lifts and this is taking up a lot of time. Yes, and the question is how meaningful all of it is.
Okay. And then I want some clarity on, from the superintendent, like if we took away the GT, the GT constraint progress measure, does that mean that the GT work stops? Or does it mean it, it continues but maybe in a reduced fashion? Or does it mean it's, it's still going full force? You're just not writing the report and we're not talking about it in a board meeting?
So I would say it's, it's the latter but modified maybe slightly because as president Boswell mentioned, and I don't have my notes, we did provide it kind of internally when we were developing these documents, a lot of the things that were contributing to some of the pressures. In this instance, there were some grants that we had secured for quite a while that were helping us provide the supports to ensure that we could meet these goals. So even the targets when they were set, or I say targets, the constraint targets were set at a different time and we had different resources. Another example of that, I mean, not to change from 3.2, but 3.1, you know, when we first envisioned 3.1, we had actually more staff within the multi, multilegal education department than we have now. And, you know, the second part, the first, in the first year, the second observation was completed totally by the multilegal education department. And now we just simply don't have those individuals in the same way we had before because of the loss in Title II, III, and IV dollars. And those are going away in the next fiscal year. So it, it is in order to create some, a little bit of space to focus on the things that are at hand, but there are other things contributing to making this harder now that we've gone through one year of it. And I just gave you two examples of them. But so I just want to make it clear, it's not just because I don't want to report more, there are lots of other things contributing to this. But as far as the work, it will continue. The work will absolutely continue. The targets, if we have a target, we're going to hit that target, which means I have to deploy resources and kind of offset grants that have since dried up, right? So that's what we're struggling through.
That's really helpful. Okay, so I think that's, that's a really great connecting piece for me that I was kind of maybe missing. So I think like whatever we propose to cut, I think it'd be really helpful to identify kind of the options, like is it, are we cutting this because this work is being diminished because, you know, federal funds or state funds are being cut? And so we just don't have the resources now that we did before to really do this well? Or are we still going to do this work full force? We just want to save a little time here in the reporting piece of this and maybe we'll get this information out another way. I think it's really important to create that distinction because that's going to impact like how I feel about some of these things. And I really appreciate what secretary Gonzalez said earlier about like, okay, if there's something on here that maybe doesn't, no longer merits being a constraint progress measure, but we maybe have a community engagement session around it or like something like that, like we've got to tell folks, like I would, when we kind of finalize this, I would like to know what's going to happen with the things that we cut out and why. I think that transparency is going to be really important because otherwise, people are going to say, oh, look, the district cut out caregiver engagement. They don't care about, you know, see, like we told you they didn't care about family engagement. You know, like I want us to be really thoughtful about the rationale for these. And I would say in addition, I, I don't know if we can even do this, Ashley, maybe you can, I would love your guidance, but like, could the administration come up with like an easier progress measure or a more effective one now that we've had a year to sort of beta test some of these? So for like, for, you know, if people aren't really feeling like our constraint progress measure for caregiver engagement is really like changing the adult behaviors that we want, maybe the idea of like doing a dual capacity framework and a campus improvement plan is just too much talk and not enough action. Could we just simplify it to just say like, we're going to have an active PTA at every campus, which actually was one of our scorecard goals when I first came on the board or something like that? Because that is something that's super tangible, it's, it's a much easier to measure and it would allow us to direct things. I mean, our PTA is just absolutely critical right now in all these changes that we're creating and, and like, you know, so I'm just wondering if we maybe, if this is also an opportunity to simplify a CPM rather than getting rid of one altogether.
Yeah, so trustee Singh, three things. The comment around creating time and then not doing the work or not having the ability to do the work in the same way because the funds have been reduced in some way. There's, I think there's also a third component, which is we have the funds to do the work. I don't necessarily have the funds to track it in a way that actually is responsive to the target in the scorecard. Because, you know, if you're tracking something typically as an observation tool or there is a level of effort deployed across all your schools to ensure that you're actually scoring it a certain way and have it be calibrated. So the work can continue because we have the resources to do that, but how we track it and the ensuring kind of validity in how we do it is also resource consuming. So every time we do something, you know, the tools to track it and the resources to track it are also a significant expense. So that's the third thing that I think it really is part of this conversation that I don't want to get lost or maybe missed or maybe kind of not considered. And the other thing is for the dual capacity or for caregiver engagement, some of these were baseline years, right? So it was just the first year and so we learned a lot in that year. You know, we, that's the purpose of a baseline year. So you weren't going to see maybe the, the complete shift because we were just tracking where we are. So I just wanted to kind of share that as well because there are lots of things that we learned, we learned about how to collect data, we learned about what it really means when you put it in one place or another. So that also contributed to this because some of the things we're actually modifying are baseline years that once we get through it, you're like, hey, that wasn't actually what we intended. And maybe the way that we thought we were going to pull it isn't actually how we should pull it. So a lot of that is contributing to this as well. And absolutely, if there's a modification, we've already spent the time to think through kind of why we're leaning or maybe why our recommendation is a certain way. So we will provide that data and can call out maybe the things that are putting pressure on why we're making a recommendation to move away or not. So yes.
Thank you.
I don't know if that was helpful.
Appreciate that.
So do we have a thought, given what we've just heard about the administration saying they think the dual language goal is valuable? And the conversation we had earlier feeling like that was a more meaningful measure of real progress toward that? Not a perfect measure, obviously, a narrow measure, but also revealed that a lot of our classrooms weren't being faithful even to language of instruction. And then gifted and talented may not be something that makes a lot of sense right now. How do we feel about changing constraint three to a dual language constraint, keeping the first constraint progress measure and getting rid of the gifted and talented progress measure, given reality right now? I have a thumbs up? I have a thumbs up? I have a nod? Yes? Candace? Arthi? Okay. I have, we have another point of consensus for reducing some of the workload and a change. Okay, early learning constraint. Vice president Willie Chu is not here and I know this is one that had been important to her throughout. Do we want to discuss that, come back to that? Okay, and she's back there, she may, yeah.
I'm curious, the superintendent's thoughts on that?
Yeah, on the early learning?
Seems like a lot of work has been gone into developing that measure.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's lots of work in all of these. You know, I think when we built the constraint, we were trying to find this balance between something that was already familiar but something that hadn't been operationalized in the way that allows us to track it the way that we are. And so it was a baseline year, so we learned a lot. You know, it's kind of one of those ones where it'd be helpful. But again, the work's going to continue, it's a focus of ours, we've actually restructured ourselves to really, I think, invest in early learning. I mean, it is a big focus of ours. So for us, I mean, I would maybe ask Dr. Maxwell if she had anything to share, but I mean, generally speaking, it's, it's one that, you know, there's, there's significant, there's value in it, but it's also a lift. So I mean, I don't know, Dr. Maxwell, if you want to.
I think this is really, I mean, we've worked really heavily in this as a district initiative. So that work had, had already started. It presents itself in a lot of the things that we're doing really specifically for the early childhood classroom and pre-K, pre-K3 and pre-K4. And including the, the team and a lot of work and actually some of our campuses in improving practices in the early childhood classroom. Part of that is a grant from the Moody Foundation that allows us to work with the School Empowerment Network that's come in and started working mostly with some campuses. And then it's inherently integrated, I think, part of that early learning initiative too is really focusing on K2 practices in, through content. So that's part of, it's part of the work that's integrated into literacy and numeracy that, and the way that we focused on K2, of course, as we've talked many, many times, a big, a big part of that so that we're really looking at the pre-K through second grade classroom and all that. So I think most of that is really involved in our, our district initiative. That's on top of some of the other work that we did just to kind of stabilize some foundational work in pre-K3 and pre-K4 with some of the guidance, the curriculum, the training that we've provided to those teachers and how we've really amped that up. So it's part of the initiative, I would say, is a lot of that work.
Okay, we have thoughts about this, consensus on this? Do we think it's getting us toward what we want? Trust that it'll happen? Want to put it away for a moment? I think Catherine. I think Catherine was clear to go down to just one, so we probably have her answer. Trustee Willie Chu, but do we have thoughts? Yeah, trustee seeing?
Okay, sorry. And I seem to be the one that like, I'm like, I want to keep it, like, you know, yeah, because this is our chance to talk, I mean, that, I, I'm really just having a hard time getting my, just wrapping my arms around the idea of, it took us like six months to develop this scorecard, and now we're just like, you know, I worry about just like dropping things that are just so important to our work. And I know that we're being put in this position largely, you know, for so many, so many reasons I could list. But I just, I don't want us to take our eye off the ball for this one. So, you know, and that's why I get back to if we're not able to do the work anymore or do it to a lesser degree, that's one thing. But, sorry, I just realized my video is off. But if we are still going forward and we're doing the work and it's really just the reporting is, is a burden, like, I don't feel, I still, I'm like, well, you got to do the report. Like, you know, like that, like if you're doing the work, the report, maybe, then maybe we just say our report needs to be something simpler. But I, you know, if we are doing the work full force, then I would like us to continue keeping tabs on it and maybe reducing the effort in the report that comes to the board. But my understanding is like our constraints are neutral time, and that is really important time for us to talk about behavior changes. And I know that there's, I don't want to like throw the baby out with the bathwater is my concern, and I might be the minority here, and that's fine. But I can't, I can't not share what my worries are about taking, taking this one off, so.
I think that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do know that when we stop paying attention, some things sometimes start, stop happening. So, Dr. Maxwell, were you going to say something? Sorry.
I think we were trying to.
Yeah, I just think this is one of those ones where I think we're very much aligned to focus, Dr. Maxwell's hyper-focused on early learning, you know, it, I think, again, overall, I think any relief is helpful. There's, there's not any one that I think is less valuable necessarily. I just want to be really clear. So trustee seeing and everybody, like, that's, that's not it. It's just, when you have 10 things that you have to report on multiple times a year, that, that's really what I'm trying to address overall. So, you know, this, this stays, we're fine with it. It's not, I mean.
Yeah, I think this is work we're very excited about and want, want to continue in depth. There is a little bit of difficulty in trying to connect additional walkthroughs for teachers that's also connected to PPFT. And the validity of measuring walkthroughs is always very tough. So while I can easily say like, I enjoy the opportunity to really talk about that work that we're doing in early childhood, the, the measure itself is difficult, and I'm not sure that it's the best measure of how that work is happening or whether it's happening well, but it gives us the opportunity to talk about it.
And I will, I'll share just one perspective, which is, I know walkthroughs are stressful, and they're time-consuming for the walkers and they're stressful for the walkies, right? The people whose classrooms are visited. And to some degree, removing this could be a sign that we trust our teachers to do what they're good at and what they know how to do. And in that spirit, I would be open to getting rid of it because our teachers often want to be trusted to teach. And we are offering really strong training, we're offering really strong expectations. I know we're doing more of that in more thoughtful ways, and I would be supportive of removing this for that reason, if, if the lift is big and the stress is high. Thoughts?
I mean, I, I prefer to keep it, and I am okay with reducing to a minimum number. So I'm okay either way. I think it's important, I think there's a big difference between just focusing on grades pre-K through second and addressing developing appropriate practices. And we have somebody who believes in developing appropriate practices, but the purpose of board policy is to kind of enshrine things that represent the vision and values of the community over time so that it doesn't change with the next iteration. So I think, I do know, we've heard loudly and clearly from our community that, that they value developing appropriate practices in early, early learning. So I'm okay either way, I think it's an important goal. I think I'd like that they attended to how they can fit that measure into existing structures instead of creating something brand new. Teachers are going to get walkthroughs all the time. They were meant to be supportive, they're meant to be professional growth, not gotchas. So as long as we're doing them in a way that's supportive and not oppressive, then it's not a bad thing to do walkthroughs.
And we're doing them anyway. Absolutely fair. Okay, so I think we have consensus. Why don't we leave that on? We can make a motion. Number five for accountability, I think we're clear that there's value in that. That is, we are in that moment. Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. How do we feel keeping a dual language constraint? Do we want to go back and revisit goal number five by literacy and think about taking that goal off and focusing on the constraint in the spirit of saying we are absolutely reducing a burden somewhere, like bits and pieces and a goal? How do we feel? Yes, thumbs up? Yes? So we have, we had talked about the, the dual language education and bilinguism, and we had two places we were looking at that. One was in the goal, goal number five for bilinguism, which is looking at the seal of bilinguism or the global seal of bilinguism or the Texas measure. And then we had looked at measuring the fidelity, one measure of the fidelity of language of instruction as a constraint. And, and there was discussion that that constraint was actually probably made a bigger impact in the classroom than just measuring what happens at the end, basically. And the idea is that if we keep, we change our constraint to dual language, we've reduced the gifted and talented, we can accomplish what we're hoping by having, you know, strong bilinguism and leaving, leaning into dual language without the goal, but with the constraint. Does that make sense? And then we can lose goal number five and reduce the burden for the administration with that?
Yes.
Do we feel good about that? Okay. Okay, so I think we have a plan. That was a lot of conversation. Thank you all. I think we're hearing you and we'll come back, and there may be, we will start with these changes, and then we can vote on.
Can you summarize the net changes?
Yes, I am, I have a document that I have made, and I will summarize. So the changes that we will be considering are, third grade literacy stays the same. It's one that we have to have CCMR. Third grade numeracy goal two stays the same. It's one that we have to have, sorry, HB three goal. It is also an HB three goal. Goal three stays the same. At the administration's recommendation, we discussed changes, we are not making changes. And that is another one that we have to have, a college career military readiness goal. We are going to leave goal four on to bring it to the meeting next week, and we can take a vote with it on or with it off. We'll, we'll entertain a motion to approve it as presented or to make a change to it. Goal five, we are removing. Okay, so that's what we're doing.
The entire goal?
The entire goal of goal five, because we are going to focus our attention, our bilinguism attention on a constraint that measures the fidelity of language of instruction. So we're going to go through the constraints now. Does that make sense?
So you said.
We're going to get to the constraints now, and we'll go through.
Got it.
Yes, and hold on, I'm cleaning up my notes so I know that we are really, really clear on what we're going to be doing. And I will work with Ashley, and I will work with Josh to make sure this is all, and share it with the officers to make sure what we're putting forward is what we're talking about. Okay. First superintendent constraint. We are changing the title, it's going to be focused on special education. We are going to change the, the actual constraint itself. I will work with Ashley to make that happen. GPM number one is going away, chronic absenteeism, so that's the second thing we're removing. We are changing the constraint progress measures. We will, we are going to bring two for, for a potential vote. And they both focus, one focuses specifically on special education evaluations, the other is exclusionary discipline. Constrict two, caregiver engagement, there is no consensus, we'll leave it, and we can make a motion. Constrict three, instead of academic disparities, we're calling it specifically dual language. We will have to change the title and the language, I will work with Ashley on that. And we're keeping constraint progress measure three point one, the language of instruction. We're keeping that, and we are getting rid of CPM three point two for gifted and talented for many reasons, one of which that funding has been lost. The work will continue, but it will continue differently, and we don't have to have special reporting as a result. So that's a third thing we're removing. Constrict four, early learning, we will leave on for our meeting and decide through a motion what we do with that. Constrict five, accountability is the new one, and there seems to be clear consensus that that is a, something we want to have. We good on that? Am I accurate on that? Okay, that was a really long conversation. Thank you. Ashley, thank you for supporting us through it. That was very helpful. So appreciate that. We are going to move on, since we are still in agenda update. We're changing updates to the board monitoring calendar. This calendar that we have in front of us will now have to be changed. And Ashley, I have a question.
Okay.
We need to approve the board monitoring calendar this month, but we won't know how to make the monitoring calendar until we approve our scorecard. I've talked with Josh about an order of operations for voting separately on a lot of these. Can we change, but Josh, do you think we can change the calendar, have a couple of versions of the calendar ready to go, and we can approve the one that matches what we come up with?
Do you want me to have like the six permutations before the board meeting?
Uh huh, I'll work with you.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you. Ashley, does that work? And then we'll pick the one that matches the scorecard we come up with? It's a little choosier and adventure.
I'm happy to work with Josh as well.
Okay, thank you. Little choosier and adventure, but I think it will get it done by the deadline we have. Thank you.
And if you, you need to, so if, if you get in a pinch with that at the voting meeting, you can always table it, and, and it'll be fine.
It'll be fine, even though?
Yes, it'll, it'll be fine. Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's, we're going to call it extenuating circumstances.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll, we'll try the choosier and adventure route if we can make that work. Thank you for that grace. I appreciate that. Okay, so next item that we're going to talk about, that is one of our deliverables for September, is in our cleanup process, is approving amendments to our board guardrails. We have three, we have to have at least one. Guardrail two was faulty according to Lone Star Governance Rules because it had a double negative and it only needs one negative at the beginning and not one in the middle. And because it listed three things, and we can only list one. So we need to have at least one guardrail. We don't have to have three, but if we include two, it has to be reworded, and Ashley and I worked to come up with language that captured some of what we wanted. So we could keep just number one, we could have just number two, just number three, or we can keep all three. Do we have thoughts? You want all three? Thoughts? Okay. Any, any objection to this? Okay. Ashley, this language, we're good?
You're good.
Okay, perfect. We are moving quickly now. All right, approval of amendments to the board handbook. Josh, can you help me remember the changes we made? Because I, okay, there, here we go.
Yeah, I did redline it and.
Yes.
Added blue text for new.
Yes, so we're, yeah, updating the calendar in there. It's not many. Yeah, it's not many, and some of it's cleaning up language to match reality, new positions after reorganization.
I did change a little bit of the timing because of seventy-two hours versus three business day rule.
Mm-hmm, new laws. So it's really clean up, really as much as anything. And then, this is an important one to talk about, the general public comment. There has been, Superintendent Segura, can you explain a little bit about what you're hoping we will consider?
Yeah, so one of the challenges that we have observed over the last eighteen months is that we will get call, calls, community comment or public comment into the four o'clock hour. And what has happened is the time that it takes for us, when we get those late calls sometimes, to redact something that maybe needs to be redacted, or to make sure there's an interpretation, to really kind of go through the process that we need to make it public, has pushed us up against the board meeting. And so now with the law changing, and when we post agenda items and make our items public, instead of posting them on Friday, close the business at six, it's actually going to Monday. Sorry, we're wrong, my brain is melting here. Typically, it's Monday at six PM, now it's actually Friday. So we're picking up the entire weekend. So one of the things that Josh and I were talking about is, now that those documents will be public several days earlier than before, can we actually create more time for community to call in, but now make it for the two days before and then the day, yeah. So essentially, how do we write it down?
It's a nine to five the day before, and then nine to one the day of.
Yeah, so that's more hours total, but it gives you more of a window to actually do the work, especially as we, we have more and more callers.
Yeah, I would say the one thing I know we've heard from some of our staff is having that really early time, that seven forty-five is valuable to allow staff to comment before they go to work. So I would, I, I support those changes, you know, I support changing it so you have more time to do what you need to do. But I would like to keep that seven forty-five AM on that second day to honor what our staff have really specifically requested. And then I do think we need to be really conscious of communicating really thoroughly with our community because it's a moment when I think we have a lot going on, and people are going to want to be making a whole lot of public comment. And I don't want anyone to feel like we have kept them from commenting about some really, really, you know, some of the most important decisions we have ever made as a district. And I think it's really important that our community voice be heard and that we do have time to redact if anyone's named, if anyone, and I know we've had some comment when, like a couple of them today were flipped and didn't match the time, or we had one a few months ago where we were worried that one had gotten dropped.
So seven forty-five to eleven forty-five, the second day?
She's saying seventy-fourty-five to one.
To one, okay.
And, and how do we feel about that change to one on the second day when people are accustomed to being able to call later in this moment? Where are we? And do you need all the way back to one o'clock to have the time you really need? Like, is there a balance?
I mean, if, I, I think what I've, we've realized, four thirty is very tight.
Four thirty is very tight.
There's been, there's been several instances this year where we just didn't have the time to get through the volume.
Yeah, four thirty is very tight.
You know, one, there, there's not like a whole team, just to be clear, there's, there's literally one person, you know, that's kind of managing this on our behalf. And then as support is required, we, we back him. But, you know, it's, it's, it's not a, a large group. So, so really, more time is helpful. If one doesn't work, then maybe get to two o'clock, but I, I would really get worried about kind of getting close. Are we adding more hours total?
He was arguing with one, I think we're good with one, right?
One.
Yeah, we were saying not to move it back to eleven forty-five, but keep it, start it earlier.
Make it seven forty-five to one.
Yeah, so that would be fine with that.
Because teachers can't do it during their working day. They can do it during lunch, and they can do it before school.
Yes.
And that covers lunch and before school for most staff.
Yeah.
Okay, how, how do we feel? Okay, and then I think the question is just if you could let us know really Okay, and then I think the question is just if you could let us know really clearly how you'll be sharing it with the community and in this moment, just making sure we share it kind of widely and in a bunch of different ways and understanding that our community is not just people who get email from schools and are connected by text, but our community, we've heard from neighborhood associations today, we're hearing from grandparents, we're hearing from people who aren't necessarily going to be on a list. And I don't know if KUT would make an announcement, if, you know, the Statesman would print a small notice, you know, we could put it on our marquees, I don't know what. But I think just making sure our community is aware in a moment when we don't want to give anyone a reason to believe that we're trying to keep from hearing from our community, that we're trying to actually make it more effective and more supportive of our staff. So, okay, thank you.
I guess one question I have is, is it possible to say, put in a, I'm looking at Kenneth, an effective date? Or would that not be appropriate? I certainly recognize that, you know, this handbook goes effective the minute y'all vote on it. So, is there, you know, should we wait till like, you know, I mean, the next couple of board meetings, we'll make it work if we have to, but could we say, starting December 1st, 2025, that gives community certainty over the next several meetings before we get through some bigger votes? And then we start kind of at the end of the semester into the new year with those bigger votes behind us, but then, you know, so I don't want to create any confusion in our community, certainly, I don't want to disrupt things, but long-term, this would be the preferred solution, but I certainly recognize-
Yeah.
I guess, I'm curious, whose authority is this? Because it's also in BED regulation as an administrative decision and it's in our handbook as a board. So, really, who's, I mean, which comes first, changing the board handbook or changing the BED regulation?
Handbook, I would say. If you're going to vote on the handbook, the regulations, not something you'd vote on.
Okay.
So, if you vote on the handbook to say this is how we want to do it going forward and administratively, they say, they pick a date of when that's going to be effective. Yeah, I think that's an administrative decision in my opinion.
Okay, so I could do that. So, we could, the board could approve it and then I could have an effective date to be effective later than when the handbook is approved, just to address that concern, because it is a concern about-
Yeah, I mean, if you need time to transition the process, it's pretty big and affects a huge amount of people, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And can you get the support you need to make, get this done, like an extra person to help?
Yeah.
Would we know the volume's going to be big for a bit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we were-
Thank you. Okay, we good with that? Okay. And then we will, part of the order of operations is that once we approve the scorecard, we will amend the handbook also to have our updated scorecard, updated calendar, all of that. Okay, thank you. Next one, and we are almost finished. That's it for that. So, anything else in this section to talk about board administration? Those are all the deliverables we have. Ashley, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much for helping us through that. And I know you've had a lot of very clear lists and information, so thank you. I'll be glad to have that ticked and tied. Okay. Next is agenda preview for business and finance. Any questions? I know Trustee Singh has requested that the budget development calendar be pulled at our meeting for a separate vote. Trustee Singh, do you have anything you want to share about that right now?
Yeah, there were a few things. I guess I wanted to ask the administration if they could talk, you know, I'm happy to mention the things that I had raised, but if you wanted to-
Yeah.
Kind of share what you'd be willing, you know, your thoughts on the issues that I had raised.
Yeah, so there were certainly some milestones we wanted to incorporate into the calendar and the administration is happy to accommodate the ones that were pretty straightforward. The one that I want to make sure our trustees are aware of and certainly one that the administration is supportive of is creating milestones around the work associated with the progression of the academic vision framework. Because really what we're talking about is consolidations and we've talked about, you know, the need to progress the academic vision and academic framework, academic philosophy. And we've gone, we've talked about that for quite some time and because of all the pressures and because of the time required, it's kind of gotten to a point now where we want to make some meaningful progress, but we know that we can't complete, you know, a year-and-a-half effort or a yearly effort in, you know, in weeks' time. And so, it's a commitment for the administration to have certainty in that work and identify certain milestones that create consensus around why we're doing what we're going to do as far as freeing up resources to ensure that we have well-resourced schools to provide a learning experience that meet the expectations of the board and the administration. But having that as a milestone so our trustees know, hey, when we vote on this budget, it's going to include for '26, '27 reductions tied to some difficult decisions we're going to make and we're doing that because this is what we believe in. So, that's what Trustee Singh and I talked about. There was, Dr. Maxwell and I have had a couple of conversations about kind of what the work looks like. I know we've socialized it with some trustees. And so, we're prepared to take that work forward, but that's what Trustee Singh and I've been talking about. So, we wanted to bring that to the board just so that there's awareness and we'll make those adjustments and then work to get the work done or progress the work.
Thank you. And I would say just to, so, just to clarify my specific, I'll just go down my specific proposed amendments. One was on Row 24 to add something like phase one of the baseline academic plan and associated budget would be part of the package that comes to us as part of the consolidation plan. So, that was the very specific request there. That is something that we've been talking about for months. It's like, you know, folks need to know that there's going to be an exchange, you know, if we close some schools, what's going to happen? And I know that the idea here is like, okay, we're going to be financially more stable and we can strengthen our neighborhood schools, but this is putting some specificity around that and it is derived directly from our long-range plan. And so, I think that's, so that was the one request is to include the baseline academic program as part of Row 24, as part of that consolidation plan that we vote on in November. And then the other thing I wanted to see in here was whatever the next phase, like at the phase two of that baseline academic plan, because I know that is a large lift. And so, you know, if there is something that we can vote on with the associated budget so people can see, okay, we're saving this much money by closing schools and this is what it's freeing up to do to strengthen our schools or to strengthen our district, that needs to, that connection, I think is going to be really helpful for us to ensure that we are meeting our scorecard goals, that we are drawing a direct line between school consolidations and student outcomes. And that's the way to do it. And then I would, the other requests were for adding somewhere, maybe in December 2025, board approval of a three-year plan to restore the fund balance to 20%. I don't know what the actual date would be for that, but I don't want to lose that. When we voted for this budget in June, we said, you know, basically, and when we changed our policy to the 15% fund balance, we were pretty clear that the administration would bring to us a three-year plan to restore the fund balance. And so, I did not see that in the budget calendar for this year. So, I wanted to make sure that was in there. I also wanted to, I noticed that there were several references to the Budget Ad Hoc Committee and, but there weren't any deliverables associated with it. And I think that's really important for whatever they're going to be charged to do, that we include those milestones in there so that the board can know what to expect coming out of the Budget Ad Hoc Committee. Also, there was a request to add a vote on the consultation agreement a month prior to the budget vote. That would give us enough time to make an attention for that because that is such a huge part of the budget and it is a practice that we've had in the past in the district and one I wanted to have us all consider. So, again, these are proposed amendments, you know, and so, I think that it would warrant some, I would hope that it would warrant some discussion.
Yeah, Trustee Singh, so, the three-year budget unassigned fund balance recovery plan, so Katrina Montgomery and I have been talking about that. I have a plan, I have not lost, trust me, that is the last thing I've lost track of. So, we've already been planning through, I think the challenge we have is we kind of started from a traditional budget and there are things that typically wouldn't fall in the budget that we're now going to be kind of aligning and we understand why that makes sense. So, we will be sure to make sure that we hit those milestones. Also, I would want to be really, really clear, I don't want the message to be that because we're consolidating, all of a sudden, we will get all of these things. We're operating at a budget deficit now, so we can't afford what we have now. I just want to be really clear, so it will be a step, step towards, multiple steps, you know, as we get to a stable budget, as we get aligned and continue to provide quality education and actually even improve it. So, I just want to be really, really clear because I don't want the community or trustees to think that, oh, if we do all of these things and all of a sudden, this will happen in the next year. We, if that, if we were baseline, then that would be the case because we'd free up funds and be able to allocate those funds. In this case, we're operating from a deficit, so we have to make up that deficit and then take the next step. So, I hear you, but that is why I think the academic work is important because it tells you that there is multiple steps to get there. Everything we're doing is kind of in that vein to move further. But I'm just going to continue to reinforce that just because I think it can get lost sometimes. But yes, no, we will make adjustments. I hear you. Katrina, I've already talked about many of these. I'll have some maybe proposals back for the amendments to the, because of how I think they maybe could align a little bit, if that's helpful.
Okay, good, thank you. Anything else on the budget calendar? Anything else in Section 9? All right, anything in Section 10, facilities? Getting a bunch of new buses. Anything in Agenda, Section 11, talent strategy? Okay, 12, policy. I want to flag under AE Local, that is another thing that we owed this month for Lone Star Governance kind of cleanup. We had to change AE Local educational philosophy to remove a lot of things that were considered advice and make lots of other changes. You have a redlined version. And again, that one will be an order of operations issue. Or we are, no, our scorecard and calendar will go into it as exhibits. So, that will be included after we vote on that, to amend that. Okay, anything, any conversation for Agenda Preview other? All right. And I do notice in other, there's 13.6, which looks like talent strategy termination, 13.6, but it's under other? For a separate conversation. Okay, thank you. Okay, good. Okay, that is it. This will end our regular Agenda Preview. And now, we will now recess the open meeting at 11:30 PM, move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. When we finish with the executive session, we will briefly return to the open session to formally adjourn the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and will be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. Thank you for joining us and have a good evening. And thank you all for being here with us. We will now reconvene into the open meeting at 1:51 AM. Secretary Gonzalez, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
The meeting is adjourned at 1:51 AM.